...comedy, televisions. Hello? Oh. Yeah, I find it. Okay, I think we're good. And we're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. We want to welcome everybody. Thank you all for being here and attending and participating in today's meeting. I'm excited to be a part of this this year and really kind of set a pathway for our city in the direction where we're going to be going over next year, whether you're participating and being a part of that. So welcome and thank you for being here. I'd like to turn it over to City Manager Christina Turner to say a few words before we get into the agenda itself.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my teammates. Sound off here, Sergio. Okay. Just want to welcome everybody here today. I'm truly excited. We haven't been in-person for goal-setting since January of 2020, so it's good to see everybody in the audience, my teammates who are here. This is one of my favorite days of the year where we get to have some time together as the council, the leadership team for the community to kind of step back, step back and not have the formalities of a council meeting, talk about this, talk about norms. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Mayor to kind of break them.
Thank you. City Clerk, we've got talks that we call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please take hold.
Mayor Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Spring?
Here.
Levers?
Here.
Borgioli?
Here.
Martinez Beltran?
Here.
...their jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to cityclerk@ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to receive a response.
Thank you, Mayor Turner. And I just want to clarify, because this is a workshop, we have a little bit more leeway with that.
Oh.
But we do have our general public comment for items not on the agenda, and then as we go through the agenda, we'll open public comment a couple of times. Is there anybody that would like to offer a public comment at this juncture? Okay.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll go ahead and get into our first item. I want to turn again back over to City Manager Christina Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we're going to do now is I want to just make sure for the community that's out there that's watching, each of the council members are just going to introduce themselves, and then we're going to get into an icebreaker. And so maybe we'll start with Mayor Protem.
Oh. Didn't realize that was me.
On the spot.
Needed my breakfast here. Good morning, everyone. The running Spring council member and this year Mayor Protem. Got elected in 2016. I have my fan clip there in the background.
Mr. Sergio.
What do you want me to say?
That's it. Just yes.
Well, welcome, everyone. Have a good day.
Marilyn.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marilyn Levers. I'm on the City Council, taking a rerun here. Served eight years, off four, and now I'm back. Have a good day. I'm looking forward to working with my teammates from all departments and, of course, my council members. Thank you.
Gino.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Gino Borgioli, City Council member. Just like to welcome everyone today for our first in-person workshop in a long time. So thank you for being here.
Good morning. Yvonne Martinez Beltran, Councilwoman for District B. I've been on the council for four years, and I'm back. Good morning. All right, thank you, council. All right, if I can ask, is it Sergio that's going to do the slides? What do you want to do quicker? Oh, awesome. Okay, so we have just a little icebreaker. And I know the word "icebreaker" gets people nervous, but this should be fairly tame. All right, so this slide shows each of the sister cities of Morgan Hill. So take a look at that. We'll come back to this slide. But those are our five sister cities. So here are the questions for you on this next slide, council, to think about, and you have a few minutes to think about them. What city would you visit? What is a word to describe your goal or hope for 2023? What is one item you would share about yourself with your Morgan Hill and your New International friends? And how would you describe Morgan Hill? So just to get you thinking for a moment, if I were to answer this, I would have to tell you that I want to visit our sister city in Japan, Zuhou. I was a foreign exchange student when I was about 15, 16 years old, and I want to go back as an adult and enjoy it. And a word to describe your goal or hope for 2023, for me, the word is "purposeful." If anybody's interested in more about that, I can share later. What is one item you would share about yourself with your Morgan Hill and New International friends? My one, you'll probably hear this again, accomplishment is just our amazing team, our leadership team, and all those that are represented by our 200-plus teammates and the great work that they do. And then how I would describe Morgan Hill is just, I'm just going to use the word "special," and I know it's special to each of you, and it all needs something different. So take a few minutes, think about how you would answer those questions. There's our sister cities. And then I'm going to keep that up for a moment. About one more minute, and we'll get started. All right, well, the first person that made eye contact with me is Councilwoman Yvonne Martinez Beltran.
Do you want the cities?
Sure.
Okay, so I would go to, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, I would go to Turkey. I would go to Sepahar. And then, thank you. The questions again were, what is a word to describe your goal or hope for 2023? I would say strength and appreciation. And what is one item you would share about yourself with your Morgan Hill and New International friends? Would probably be laughter. And how would you describe Morgan Hill? It is the most wonderful place to be.
Oh, that's awesome. My CPA brain, when you said "appreciation," I heard "depreciation," and you may be wondering, like, what does that mean? Does it relate to infrastructure? Yes, yes. Excellent. Okay, who's next?
I'll go.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I would go to Hedford, Ireland. The word that I would use to describe our goal, my goal, I really was thinking more from a city perspective, would be competitive. And by that, I mean that we would not necessarily be competitive here amongst ourselves, but that we would be able to compete as a city within the Bay Area, to be that location, to live, work, or play. The, what one item would you share about? I love being a grandparent. Best thing going. And then how would you describe Morgan Hill? I put welcoming.
Great. Who's next?
I can go next.
Okay.
What city would you visit? People probably know, I love the travels. I would go to any of them, and many more. But my number-one pick might be Italy. Then I could go, it's not that far away from where my side of the family lives, and I could go to Switzerland too on the way back, so. But I have been in several of those countries anyways. Great choice. Word to describe your goal? I love to be successful, no matter what I do. And my hope, that's another word, I always hope for peace. Peace in our community, in our country, and across the world. One item you would share by yourself? Morgan Hill knows I love cats. The more the merrier, especially mancoons. How would you describe Morgan Hill? I've said it over and over again, it's home, it's home, it's home. And also a little bit Treasure Island of Silicon Valley nowadays. We have so many good things going on here.
And not to jump to our accomplishments, but the peace project ties in very nicely with your hope for peace.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, Gino?
Thank you, Christina. I would love to go to Hedford, Ireland also. When I was a technology officer for Veritas Software in the late 1990s, I went to Ireland, and it's one of the most beautiful countries I have ever seen, and the people there are just so wonderful. So that's why I'd like to go back there. What is, what is a word to describe your goal for 2023 is kindness, truth, and respect going forward in 2023? What is the one item I'd like to share about myself with my international friends is Rebecca back there knows, I have two Dalmatian dogs, and they are just like Councilmember Spring's cats. They're just a phenomenal gift from God, these two animals that I have. And their names is Morny and Finn, if you're interested. So how would you describe Morgan Hill? You know, almost everywhere I go, especially some of the outside meetings, some of us were at a conference down in Santa Cruz a couple months ago, and they described Morgan Hill as, you know, the hidden gem, and one of our key anchors is the outdoor facility. But everywhere I go, people talk about Morgan Hill. And so I think we are and should be proud of everything that the city has accomplished and the people have accomplished in Morgan Hill, because it's a great little gem in the South Bank.
It sounds like Gino and I are planning a trip to Ireland. Anyone interested, let us know after the meeting.
Awesome.
Thank you, Christina. I personally, through Sister Cities, when I was in office before, have been to our sister city, both in Turkey and Hartford, Ireland. I loved the adventure. One of the other things that allowed me to do when I was on that committee was I attended one of Obama's election balls in Washington, DC with Sister Cities. So I always feel very blessed to have reached out through the world to meet new friends. One word, let's see, for my goal is I want to accomplish a lot and represent my district well. And what would I say? We have had the mayor of our sister city in Turkey come to Morgan Hill, and I was here as part of the greeting of that committee, and we toured him around the city. He has now become the mayor of a much bigger city called Ismore, and that was pretty exciting for him. I still stay in touch with a person in Turkey and a person in Ireland, so that's kind of cool. They're kind of pen pals, so. And what would I, word would I use about Morgan Hill is, I love Morgan Hill. This is my home also, not going anywhere, and I do believe it is really a hidden gem in all of Silicon Valley. We're very fortunate all to be in this lovely city.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for sharing. Okay, well, the next part is just to kind of go through the agenda. So if you can open up your detailed agenda that's part of our packet, so it starts with City Council Goal Setting Workshop, it's a detailed agenda, and I just want to walk through that.
I can get to it for somebody.
Okay, I'm going to put this right here, and you can look at it as I go. Okay, so after we kind of go through the goal-setting workshop agenda, we're going to jump into accomplishments. You're going to meet and hear from our leadership team on a couple of their most favorite accomplishments for 2022. And then we're going to, at the end of each section, open it up for public comment. We're going to go through council's norms that were established back in 2019 and then re-adopted in 2021. We're going to talk about our policy 9701 that just talks about how a council meeting goes and what some of the rules and protocols are, and then we'll talk about our meeting schedule for future goal settings. The council will then move on to outside assignments, and we'll look at council's assignments to outside committees and get those assigned out. And then after a lunch break, we'll return, and you'll look at our strategic priorities work plan. And then we'll look at the items that have been identified by council at our agenda meetings under the future council-initiated items. We'll go through a few of those to see if a majority of the council wants to see those items. We'll go through a few of those to see if a majority of the council wants to see those items come back. And then we'll go through the full list just to talk about timing. And then we'll look at the Sustainable Morgan Hill document, which shows our vision, our ongoing priorities and our strategic priorities. It was adopted in January of 2022, so last year, and it was intended to be a two-year document. But it is council's time to look at Sustainable Morgan Hill to validate whether those continue to be the ongoing priorities and strategic priorities for the council. And then after that, we will open it up for public comment. And then our very own city attorney, Mr. Don Larkin, will lead us in ethics training. The first 20 to 30 minutes is going to be very Morgan Hill specific and then a broader sort of ethics training. Our second day for the goal setting will be on Friday, March 3. And so the tentative topics are also listed on the detailed agenda. Okay, so now what we're going to do is move on to the accomplishments section. And you're going to be hearing from our leadership team. And so there's just a few pictures from 2022. And so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn it over to the leadership team. And each of them are going to introduce who they are, what departments and divisions they represent, and then one to two accomplishments. And I promise they'll be brief. We're going to start with Edith Ramirez.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Edith Ramirez, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. I support the teams of Housing, Economic Development, and Planning. I'll invite my teammates, if this is how you want to do this, Christina, to come and introduce themselves and share their goals or their accomplishments. In addition to the Housing, Economic Development, and Planning accomplishments, another effort that we took on this last year was diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the accomplishment for us this last year was we surveyed the teammates at City Hall and successfully received nearly 100% responses from our teammates to provide us feedback on how we're doing. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Rebecca Garcia, Housing Director. We have lots of accomplishments, but to focus on one, we've increased our communication with our local service providers by hosting a monthly meeting. And really the focus is really to housing problem solve at the local level. We've processed 174 referrals that we've received on homelessness and connected with 155 of them and housed 25 of those families.
Thank you, Rebecca. And as I'm walking over to Jennifer Carman, I just want to make sure the community members know that included in the packet for today is a really long thorough list that's broken out by department and division. So please take a look at that because there's a lot of amazing things that are captured.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer Carman. I'm the Development Services Director. I oversee planning and building under Edith. And for as far as accomplishments, we had our major accomplishment for our planning division or division before you on Wednesday with the housing element. Thank you very much for that adoption. We're moving forward with getting those comments back to the state. Our building team is looking constantly for efficiencies. We were able to add a permit tech and a new code enforcement officer this year. And they are doing an amazing job with the number of permits we are processing every year. Those numbers are in your accomplishments list. It's a very small but very mighty team. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now to Matt.
Good morning, council members. I think I'll come over here so everybody can see me. Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director. Our Economic Development Department had several multiple accomplishments in 2022. I think the one that I'd like to highlight the most is probably the city council's approval of our industrial preservation and optimization policy and the zoning changes that went along with that change. That allows us to optimize our industrial lands moving forward, to limit some of the uses that could have occurred within those properties and then opened them up for additional medical uses. It also kind of put to rest the discussion that the community had been having for many years around industrial zoning with warehousing and distribution, allowing us to really move forward and focus on those high-quality jobs to protect our city's quality of life and focus on long-term economic vitality.
Thank you, Matt. Edith, anything else? Okay, and we're going to pass the mic to Chief Wong.
Good morning, good morning, everybody. Council members, general public, and city manager teammates as well. My name is George Vaughn. I serve as Santa Clara Unit Chief. And more importantly, I serve as your Morgan Hill City Fire Chief. Accomplishments that we have achieved in 2022 is one that is near and dear to me because it's very close to my house. But it's been a long time coming in that we have a tentative plan to have our third fire station on Butterfield and Diana. And the work that was put into there was long and detailed because we wanted to make sure that the type of fire station met the community's needs as well as location. And then all the studies that we, that were put forward is going to meet the needs of the whole city. So I'm glad to see things moving forward and I hope to see a groundbreaking tentative date of fall 2023 this year. And the next achievement that I am proud to say is that I work with Public Service Director Chris Kioni, is that we have entered our stages with the Morgan Hill Fire Department and the Aquatic Center for CPR and EMS staff training. I think with all of our kids and we have so many family members that swim and go out there just for occasions, is that Fire Department, we should be training together. We should be able to teach paramedic skills, EMS skills, and hopefully someday have kids grow from lifeguards to possibly explorers within the city and then become firefighters themselves. So kind of a leeway path to give direction and then just an overall goal for our younger generations that's grown up throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Kioni.
Morning, council members. Chris Kioni, I'm the Public Services Director. I support five of our operating divisions, which is our Engineering Division, our Maintenance Division, our Utilities Division, our Environmental Services Division, and our Recreation Division, Recreation Community Services Division. And then also support our internal division on GIS as well. Couple accomplishments. So I think the biggest, the biggest one from the past year is opening our Magical Bridge Playground that I want to share. And that was an effort of many of the divisions that I oversee, as well as other divisions and departments in the city that supported that grant funding. And why we think that is such a big accomplishment is not the actual construction of it, but what it's actually become since it's been opened and a place for our community to come together for anyone. And we call it an inclusive playground or an all-inclusive playground, which means for people of all abilities, which took a lot of work to construct it for that. But then also the investment that our community made, not only our city council, but our community members in fundraising. Because it's all-inclusive also because it costs nothing. And anyone in the community can come at any time and use it. And it's a gem for our community that many of our teammates put a lot of effort into. So we're super, super proud of getting that open. And then the next one, I would say the majority of it, a big part of it happened after the end of the year. But one of the biggest events was the flooding that we had on New Year's Eve. And our teams at the courtyard came together when most people were off, except of course, our public safety reps and helped keep the city safe from flooding. Did the best to preserve property. But what also isn't always known is we're not just working on flooding that everyone sees. We're working on making sure that our utility systems continue to operate through this. If, I think people read in many newspapers that dozens and dozens and dozens of communities had sewage running through their streets during these floods and flooding into creeks in the oceans. We had none of that, so we're super proud of that accomplishment as well. And then I'll add just a real quick one. Our department applied for 12 major grants in the last year. We did not get all of them, but we got several, including one that we applied for last year that we were just notified. We got $4 million for OBG, which was a competitive grant across the entire region. And we're going to be hopefully getting $4 million to help improve our roadways in the coming years. So super proud of that.
Morning, I'm Donald Larkin. I am the city attorney. And you may, may not, may or may not know that I am also the city's risk manager. And so I, as city attorney, my accomplishments are my teammates' accomplishments. My main priority is supporting my teammates. As risk manager, though, I'm very proud of the fact, and this is also a testament to our Public Services and Public Safety Department, that we have an extremely low rate of litigation historically in Morgan Hill and also as compared to some of our other cities that are part of our risk pool. We, we have very little litigation. But I do want to highlight the accomplishments of our department. We, this year, we had two cases go to trial that I personally represented and we prevailed on both of those, which I'm not, I'm not a trial attorney. These are cases we don't have insurance for, which is why I try them. So, and so I'm really proud of that. Another sort of more personal accomplishment, you may or may not know that I chaired the Public Records Act Committee for the League of California Cities. And this year, for the first time in 10 years, we updated the practice guide that's used by city attorneys and city clerks throughout the state. And I, and I was the editor of that practice guide, which has now been published on the League of California Cities website and is now available for city clerks and city attorneys throughout the state to use. And I, and we've gotten, our committee, it's a group effort, has gotten a lot of great feedback for the usefulness of that practice guide. So those are two accomplishments that I'm proud of.
And Don, the latter one is huge, right? So several of us were at the League of California Cities, listening to you, watching you, teach all of the city attorneys and those who showed up to listen to the session. And so Don basically was teaching attorneys on where all the new laws are. And they're not easy and the book is huge. So kudos to Don. All right, I'm going to walk over to Dat Nguyen, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Dat Nguyen, Finance Director. As Christina said, one of the accomplishments that I'm pretty proud of, or proud of on behalf of the city, was that we worked with the city teammates, Assistant City Manager and Monica, the Gado, which is a budget manager, as well as Minnesota advisor, to be able to sell Morgan Hill stories to the standard poor S and P rating. So they upgraded the city grade rating to AAA. So this is something that not happen overnight. And it's a work of the city, the CUI, that's over the years to set up all the policies and policies and procedures in place and all the sacrifice that our teammates put together. And well, the question they actually asked at the presentation was that, because it happened at the, at the beginning of summer, at the peak of the inflation, they asked us how the city could address the cost of the staffing, staffing costs. And we told them our history of the teammates that make a sacrifice, especially that when things went wrong or not in our way, economically wise, teammates step up and share the cost of the city's pension cost. So we highlighted some of the things that, you know, historically our teammates have done. So I believe that's one of the reasons that they, they gave us the AAA that we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dat. And then I'm going to head over to Michael Hort, our HR Director.
Hi, good morning. My name is Michael Hort. I'm the HR Director. One of our, are some of our biggest accomplishments, as you saw the other night, we've hired 25 new teammates to the city of Morgan Hill. You saw the long list on Wednesday. And also with that, we've promoted several, a lot of our teammates, so giving them opportunity within our organization. But also being able to bring back events that build morale and also bring our teammates closer together. So we were proud of that in 2022, along with managing all our COVID and making sure everyone continued to be safe and getting what they need. So thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And now, Michelle, our City Clerk and PIO.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, community. It's nice to be back in person after three long years. It feels a lot longer, but it's really nice to be back in here with all of you. I am the City Clerk and Public Information Officer. And so looking at our City Clerk team, one of our biggest accomplishments that we're really proud of is being able to transition from our virtual-only meetings to hybrid meetings. This workshop is an exception because of how this building is set up and our limited capacity with cameras. It would not be a positive experience for the folks on Zoom. And so we really wanted to make it collaborative and engaging for the folks that wanted to participate. So we chose to keep it in person for this event. But that was quite a big undertaking and we had many teammates help throughout the organization. So we're really proud of that. And then we also went through our first redistricting process, which was a big lift. We had a really significant community engagement and outreach process that went along with that. We held community meetings throughout the city, several here before council meetings. We had town halls and we did get a ton of community feedback. Looking at our communication side of the house, this year, really exciting, we were able to kind of build out the first communications team. Prior to this, we had one really head communications position and through some changes that the City Manager's Office made, we were able to bring on Amanda Castañeda, who is our Communications and Engagement Coordinator and an incredible asset to this team. And Sergio Covarubias, who has been with us in a temporary capacity for many years. We were able to make that a permanent full-time position and really expand the capacity of our team. And so not only does he make sure all of these meetings run and that the public can see them, but he's also out at events, taking videos, photographs, helping us in a multitude of ways so we can really build out our communications and engagement work. And a part of that, which is really exciting is this year, again, kind of coming out of COVID a little, if you will, we led in conjunction with our Police Department and our Fire Department and many other teammates, our first national night out together here on our Civic Center campus was a tremendous event. It was estimated that we had over 2,000 people in attendance. We had amazing feedback. The community really appreciated the opportunity to come and gather and learn about resources. So we're working on what that's going to look like this coming year. It'll probably be very similar. And we're looking at different community groups to invite. And then I'll just finish up with the added capacity that we've had through bringing on Amanda and Sergio has allowed us to create a social media playbook for our team. We are working on getting our social media sources authenticated, which is a big deal because it adds to credibility for the messaging that's coming from us. We've worked with many departments, including Economic Development and Housing, to put together different materials, flyers, handouts. And Amanda worked with our housing team to put together, it's an affordable housing roadmap that really spells out for the community how they can go about accessing affordable housing. And that's also in Spanish. And part of the beauty of our added team is that both of our new teammates are bilingual. And so we've really been able to add a lot more resources in Spanish and that's a goal we're continuing to work on. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. And last, but of course not least, Chief Palsgrove.
Good morning, everyone. Shane Palsgrove, Morgan Hill Police Chief. I also oversee our IT Division. So I've selected two items from, or one from each. I want to highlight our successful flock camera accomplishment because it incorporates everybody in the city. We implemented 25 cameras in August 2021. It was because we had the city council's support. We had the community's trust and confidence and their support in allowing us to implement these license plate readers. And as a police chief, it was important for me to find technology to reduce crime in the city while maintaining a fair, equitable, just, and unbiased solution in order to do that. A few months later, we had so much success with the flock cameras. The city council and the community allowed us to install 25 more for a total of 50 flock cameras. Since August of 2021 to December of 2022, well, before I say that, we averaged each year recovering 12 stolen vehicles in Morgan Hill. So when we installed the flock cameras from August 2021 to December 2022, we recovered 137 stolen vehicles. That doesn't include the vehicles that we chased with lights and sirens out of Morgan Hill. We arrested 178 suspects and we charged those suspects with 634 criminal offenses, suggesting that they were here in a stolen car to commit other crimes, property crimes, violent crimes. And the flock camera incorporates our officers, our records clerks who are processing the reports, our detectives that are doing follow-up, and our dispatchers. So again, a huge accomplishment with the flock cameras. I think everybody from council, community, city teammates should be patting themselves on the back for the increased safety in Morgan Hill. on the back for the increased safety in Morgan Hill. Moving to IT, we're really proud of our accomplishment regarding cybersecurity advancements. We have 12 major cybersecurity advancements, but the two I'll highlight also incorporate everybody in the city, and that has to do with the multi-factor authentication and our new security email. Everybody's participated in the training, everybody's working on safe practices for using our technology to keep ourselves and our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so that concludes our accomplishments that we wanted to highlight as a leadership team. And so, Mr. Mayor, what I recommend now is that we ask the council if there are any things on their mind, like, oh, what about, and they can highlight a quick accomplishment that might come to mind? And then we can open it up for public comment, for general public comment, but we have members in the community here that are pretty active, and they might want to highlight something. And then we go into a 10-minute break.
Okay, you got it. Counsel, any, and this is a more informal meeting. Is the council okay if we address one another by first name? You good with that? Okay, very good. Any comments by the council? Yvonne?
Thank you, Mayor.
You can call me by, you can call me more.
Sorry, Hannah. I'm just reading through this and hearing everything. I just want to, I want to thank the team that we've had since we haven't been in person. We've had some incredible years that have come by us, and there were some really tough times. And I lean on you tremendously, as I know that my colleagues do and have. But I hope that you understand, and I hope that the community understands what people are doing every day. I mean, we're, these are just people. We're just people. You know, and a lot of the time, we get these requests, and I do it too, and we forget that, you know, this isn't a machine. It's really just a bunch of great people who are making things work. So I want to thank you. Some of the things that came to mind, you know, as you're going around, I mean, I was looking through the list, and there's so many, if you drill into like planning and environmental services. But I mean, with, you know, Michelle was talking, and I was thinking about, when I came on as council, we didn't have a lot in Spanish, and that was one of the things that I really pushed, and I started just translating it on my own. I'm really grateful that you have taken that and made it what it is now, because I know with the events that I do and people getting the information, they tell me they never felt included, and now they do. Now they feel like, you know, it actually matters what they think, or they can be involved. So I want you to know how much I appreciate that. I think you do a great job with the, with our Facebook and getting the word out there. And I know that you were under incredible stress with COVID and trying to get things done, moving us to virtual. And this has been, this is amazing. We were able to include people and give them the option, who can't leave home, to be involved and have a say, and that's really powerful. So thank you to that, all of the group for making that happen. Edith, when I first came on, you were probably one of the first people that really struck me with your commitment and your passion that you always bring to this job, is like you live it, and it's very impressive. So I want to thank you for all the work you've done. I know sometimes, you know, we're on different sides, but I never doubt your professionalism or your commitment to it. And I mean, as we just saw last night, you guys are doing amazing things, you know, Matt, Brittany, in economic development and bringing the Panthers last night. I'm really excited to see where we go from here. Chief, you know, I hope we get a chance to work together more. We haven't yet, and we're just now getting to come together after COVID, but I think you've got all the right foundations in place. Chris, I, I mean, during the storms, I can't tell you how many times I thought about you and I heard about you being out there and people calling. I remember last year when there were the floods and, you know, people needed sandbags. You're just, you're always, you're always a step or two ahead of where we need to be. And you don't get the recognition that I think you should, and I just want you to know that people notice. So, I mean, you know, you often shy away when we do try and recognize it, so.
Yvonne, real quick, I think, I think what we do with Chris, no, no, I think what we want to do with Chris is we want to get him out in the public more often. It was fun last night.
Yes.
But yeah, he's a very shy guy and very humble, and we appreciate that. Just to make sure, are you going down the line for each person?
I'm just going to do the chief and Don.
Yeah, just want to double check.
And Don, I wanted, I really want to publicly tell you that I know what a great lift it was for redistricting, and I've seen your work at the League of Cities as well. And I think you're an incredible professional, you know, and we were completely on opposite sides of that. But I love the way that you approach things and that you handled that whole situation. You were completely transparent and professional, and I really, really appreciate it. So thank you for bringing us through that. Chief, and your whole team, you guys are doing an amazing job. I hope that we've, you know, given you some of the support that you all need, and the flock cameras are working fantastic. But seeing these, you know, the two of you guys working together with Michelle's team, I just think that it really strengthens us. And I've told you this before, but, you know, I've had a chance to kind of grow into my role and watch you grow into the role too, and you've really taken off with it. So I'm excited to see, you know, where this department goes. But I thank you for your leadership. I think you're very brave in all senses of the word, you know, maybe taking some, giving that trust to your team and to us as well, and listening to the feedback and then applying it where it goes. Well, I see you, and I want, I hope that we continue to encourage our staff, all the things that you did during HR, to make sure that people could get to work and do the work that they needed. But I hope that this council will realize we've done some things with our SVCE board, and I really support remote working. I think it was a wonderful thing that came out of COVID for people's life and their balance, their families, and we need to value that because we are right now in, you know, there's a lot of competition, and we see, you know, people moving around all the time from cities. I think that's one way where we can help keep our people here. So I hope to my colleagues that that's something that we can continue to support, is remote working for everybody. And then to our chief, what a chief you are. So it's been really a pleasure to watch you, you know, take the lead. I don't think people understand how important it is, your finance background and what you have brought as far as strength to our city. So I thank you for that. I think you're a completely emotionally intelligent human being who really understands the dynamics of working with such a demanding, intelligent, and passionate group like your council, and making all of that work with your team is, it's really quite a dance that you do, Christina. So thank you very much. Thank you. Yvonne, thank you. This leadership team appreciates everything that you've said, and I'm just going to say on behalf of all of you that I'm sure you have similar comments, and I know you do because you've said them before. Don't feel like we need to, you know, recognize everybody. I think Yvonne probably speaks on behalf of all of you. I'm going to, I'm going to take that risk and say that. So, Mr. Mayor, maybe just a couple more things on accomplishments so that we can kind of stay on the schedule.
Yes, no, it's okay. No, thank you. Appreciate that.
If I may, I'd like to add a couple things that I remember. Nights like last night, or when we had the event about Ukrainian war out here, the peace poll event reveal, all these kinds of community events really show us that no matter how apart we might be on individual issues, these are always the events when we come together. And for me, those are wonderful accomplishments, and I think we need to do more of those. The more, what I call, community-building events we can have and us as a city participate, I think the better. For us as a family of Morgan Hill, we are, right? We might fight occasionally, but then when we have fun, we also know to have fun. And I think we need more fun now that COVID hopefully is a little bit behind us. Huge accomplishment, we cannot forget about is just how we got through the past two years with our city finances. We haven't raised taxes, we've dealt with the money we have, our staff has dealt with the, from what limited resources they get, and we still accomplished so much, and most of it wasn't even mentioned that was accomplished. But, you know, without our finances intact and us being able to pay for it, none of those accomplishments would happen, right? And number one, and I keep saying it over and over again, this is one of the safest cities to live in and to work in and to go out in, and no matter what you might hear or no matter the bad things that happen, and they happen everywhere across the globe, this is a safe city, and we need to keep repeating that. We need to be living it, we need to be out there. And then that really goes, thank you, to the fire chief or PD chief, but everyone involved, you know. In the summer, I feel safe when fires might happen in the area, right? When we have the storms, I might not be able to leave the house, but I feel safe. Because I know eventually we'll go away, thanks to our city water. But so many things happening, and, you know, let's not focus on the things we disagree. Let's focus on the things we work together, we can do together, and also let's make sure we'll have as much fun as we can as a community.
Thank you, Renee. Any other comments? Gina, Marilyn? Well, I just want to say how much I appreciate the team's commitment and dedication to our organization and our city's success, so thank you for that. So I think now we'll turn it over to the public and see, just, Christina, you want to just kind of walk through and see?
Any members of the public have general public comment or want to mention any accomplishments?
Thank you. It's nice to be back in person. Couple of quick things.
Do you want to give your name so we all know who you are?
Well, this is a Brown Act meeting, so I could be anonymous.
Yeah, that's true. You could, you absolutely can.
But in fact, my name is Doug Beerhead, and I am a resident of Morgan Hill. Thank you for the reminder, Mayor. One thing is that many of you know I'm very linear, I like to see where I'm going. So Mr. Gianni constantly drives me nuts because he does this random walk looking for grants. The good news for the city is he's successful. The bad news for me is I never know where we're going. But I can live with that. I also wanted to remind you that I'm visual rather than verbal, and so I have a great interest in things like GIS. And we have this program started in 2019 that promised eventually the public would benefit from this with a public data portal. You know, I look for the GIS items in your accomplishments and in your yearly budget items, so I know you're doing things, but I'd kind of like it to be a little more visible. And my last, basically, just two quick questions for the fire chief. One, you mentioned a green climber. I have no idea what a green climber is. And the other thing I would like to do, and I mentioned this several years ago to Mr. Gianni, is, well, you're talking about designing a new engine, type one engine. In Europe, they have recognized that pedestrians, people not in cars, actually, are at risk with these large vehicles with very limited views. And so they have started building garbage trucks, fire engines, and other large vehicles with bug-eyed windows, ball bouts. So you have a much better view of what's going on around you, and this increases public safety. So if it's possible to incorporate that into your design, I would be thrilled. Thank you for the opportunity. You will likely hear from me again later.
Thank you, Doug. Chief, can I ask you to just briefly describe what a green climber is?
Chris would probably be the best to describe that, because it was a partnership between, between Chris and CAL FIRE on the CAL FIRE side. And the green climber we tested out, it's like a remote control, almost lawnmower, that actually goes through and takes out brush. So all of the areas throughout the city that we tested it, where we need the drains, we need the water to actually drain through the systems, we used it there. And then in the interim, Chris has been using it throughout the community to kind of clear brush, clear defensible space, clear areas where it's very difficult to find personnel to go out there, and with the blades and with the capacity of the remote control lawnmower, a really big tank lawnmower, it actually took out a lot of fields and vegetations in areas that we were unable to actually access. So that was a, how much was it, Chris? About a $150,000 grant that the city was received from there, so that's what we've been using it for. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? No? Okay, so I think we're ready for a 10-minute break, Mr. Mayor.
And, okay, we'll adjourn for a 10-minute break. Thank you.
Yes. There are three in there. I know, one, because the one I drive is the tea over the one. I used to drive the white, and the one that's on the bottom, that one is dairy, the one is totally plant-based. And the other one, for life, people here will talk about, and my son brings those, so I thought I'd bring it.
Well, you've got the bologna sandwich. I've got the peanut butter and shit. How'd I know?
No, 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 no.
But I only have one, and they're all the same flavors.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm excited about it.
All right, everybody, I think we're going to get back to our workshop here. We are now going to move into 2.1, where we're going to be reviewing our council norms. So I think one of the things, Christina, do you want to walk us through that? Or you and I can kind of work together on this?
Yes. Yeah, so this is the section where we kind of go through our norms and then some of the policies. And so over the last six months to the year, some items were brought forward from the council. The council decided that, yes, they want to talk about some of these things, and so that, this is the section we'll do that. And so on the screen right now...
to come forward with the very best policies for our community. But we do want to, again, these are the city council norms that I think were adopted by the three of you for sure. And so, with that, I just want to put it out there and ask the questions. Are these norms being adhered to? What are your thoughts on that? Feel free. Gino?
Well, I'd like to share something that, I mean, I actually brought this forward as a future agenda item. Last year, especially the first six months of last year, many of these norms were not being adhered to. And it just caused a lot of dysfunction on the council. And there were many nights I, after the meeting, I reached out to the mayor and I apologized to him. I mean, he got, he got beat up real bad sometime. And, you know, either we commit to adhere to these or let's get rid of them, because it's not fair to everybody. It's called DEI, equity. It's not fair to everybody that some adhere to the norms and some don't. Either you adhere to it or you don't. It's simple. Just go, go look at the first six months of last year. It was, some meetings were, for me, very embarrassing.
And Gino, can I clarify too? When you talk about the fact that the mayor got beat up, are you saying that there was some very heated discussion going on, or did it cross the line and now become personal?
No, no. He was trying to manage the meeting.
Okay.
The chair manages the meeting.
Right.
And it was very difficult for him to manage the meeting because of, you know, discussions and non-compliance with the norms. So, you know, again, either we comply or we don't, but I don't think it's fair for some to adhere to these and, you know, some don't. So, if you make a commitment, make it. If you don't, let's get rid of them. So, it's a fair playing field for everybody.
Okay. Any other comments?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Gino, thank you. And so, if I want to make the statement, I don't want the council to get rid of these norms, right? I think they're best practice, and I think all five of you probably would agree, but we get your point. So, let's try to be a little bit more granular. I think come prepared was one that you brought forward and, you know, was one of the future initiated items, and so...
Yeah, so let me interrupt. So, come prepared. So, if you come prepared, many of the questions were in the supplements, and those same questions were asked by members of the council. That's telling me that they didn't look at the supplements and come prepared for the meeting because why are you asking a question that has been answered already?
Got it. Okay.
It's things like that.
Sure, sure. And I will say, from an efficiency standpoint, and we're going to get into this discussion a little bit later today about, because again, I want to make sure that we're managing our meetings in a way that we, we are able to get through it, be respectful to the community so that we end meetings at a reasonable timeframe. So, I think you're talking about, from an efficiency standpoint, being prepared certainly, in my opinion, certainly plays into that, into that goal. So, okay, so people not reading supplements is part of that?
Yeah, I mean, I even heard, you know, in open session, well, we only get the agenda on a Friday, and I got things to do on the weekend, and I don't have time, all the time to read 1,000 pages of stuff. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I understand that.
Yeah.
But that's what you signed up for the job to do, is, you know, do your job. So, it's things like that that took me back.
Okay, okay. Any other comments? Even pertaining to that? Anybody's got any comments on that?
Look, and I agree, we should keep, there are, many of them are common sense ones, right? There was not one single council member that didn't violate any of them on occasion, without going into details, including myself. But it's good to remind ourselves. The problem is, you know, with our meetings, and that's where it becomes tough, depending on the topic, especially controversial topics, you can't really have a discussion, right? I can't talk with Gino on an issue. I always have to go through the mayor and back, and we only have a couple of minutes to make a statement or so. That's not a discussion, right?
Right.
So, that's throwing something out there and hoping something sticks, right? Discussions, that's the nature of, I guess, Brown Act and the way we have to run meetings, but they're not meaningful discussions, right? I think discussions can happen, like today, in workshops where we can talk to each other in a normal way and not, not so boxed in. And for me, that's extremely hard. I admit that's...
Yeah.
Sometimes you would like to make a comment to a colleague, and you can't, right? Can't just say, no, that's not right. Yvonne, no, you were wrong. We discussed it, and/or what do you think about it? That would be a discussion, but you can't talk to each other like that because it always has to go through the chair.
Well, and I think too, real quickly, Renee, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do think we can, because it has come to the chair, I think the, I think I could say, hey, you guys okay with opening this up for discussion? And I don't mind you speaking directly to one another. Is that, that's something we can do.
You're literally reading my mind, and I think that the role of the chair is key, right?
Right.
It's a really tough spot, right? I don't envy anyone sitting at that spot. Again, we're, we got elected, right? We didn't choose each other, right? We all have different personality, bit different style, and it's hard to become as one team when we're all so different, right?
Yeah.
But I also don't think we should be the same, right? That would be boring for everyone, and we reflect the diversity that we see in the community too. But let's not get rid of it. Let's just, let's just remind ourselves occasionally that we have those, and that includes closed session or so, or there were events when people just leave a meeting or so. I think, find that extremely disrespectful, and then the same people say, oh, no, or the others are not following the norms. We all didn't, right? Let's just be honest, right? And I think too, to me, it's important, you know, how are we being seen by those looking at us, right? And the worse we deal with each other, the worse we are being seen in the community, right? And I think that we need to, to make sure we're cognizant of how we handle it.
Yeah, and I think there will be those topics from time to time where we do need to sort of have an open discussion with one another because, like you said, we don't, we don't get to go into a boardroom and hash it out. Ours is done in public, and so they get to see the best and the worst of our discussions. But it's part of how we then develop a strategy and policy. And so, I think we do need to find a way where we can have those discussions, even as uncomfortable or as ugly as they might appear. As the chair, I can certainly manage that if it gets a little out of control and rein it back in. But I think if there's a topic, and what I would ask of my colleagues is that, if there's a topic, you're saying, hey, can we, can we have this open discussion? I'm, yeah, let's do it. Let's have the conversation. Because I do think we need to talk to one another in order to, because I have a thought on something, you've got a thought on something, I may not have thought of your particular perspective, but now suddenly, I get it. It's changing my opinion on that. So, I think we need to have this dialogue. So, I'm open to doing that. And I think, and I think we need to make sure that we feel comfortable with one another. And if we, and again, if it starts to get heated or a little disrespectful, I'll just say, hey, whoa, let's tamp it down a little bit. And I, I think we can be respectful of one another in that, in that regard. But part of that then is coming prepared in order to have those discussions so that we can become more efficient. And so, to Gino's point, and again, I would look at this list and go, this is a big list. I'm wondering, are there three to five of those we would say, these are the priority, these are the five most important we should be... We've got to adhere to all of them, but these are the five we're going to say are our greatest priority. Being prepared probably is one of them. Being respectful, punctual, I mean, that would be like number two, right? I mean, those are the things. So, so we could go through this list and say, what are our top five? And then, and then we do the best we can to manage the rest as we go along. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I have some comments too.
Okay. Marilyn, and then Yvonne's got a few comments.
I've only attended, actually, two, I think, official meetings, but I was in the audience for several before the election. I would like to stress more in our meetings, efficiency as far as time management. This is not a time for grandstanding and monopolizing the audience, the council's time, while you express your opinions. When I was sworn in, we all had a chance to say something up there, and, you know, I thanked everybody and I was done. This was not my personal time to go on and on and on and talk, okay? Everybody loves to hear themselves talk, but this is not the situation that should. So, I don't know how we're going to rein that in, but I find it very inefficient, very disrespectful for the other council members and for those at home that are listening. If you want to hold a private conference on Facebook or something, then talk away, but not during city council. I think time management is extremely important.
Thank you. Yvonne?
Thank you. I think that, as, you know, Renee had said, I think we have all, I mean, I know that you guys are now joining us, and I think we're all hopeful that this is going to go well, I admit it, from, from, you know, the discussions that I've had. But I also think that, yeah, we, I mean, when you're getting into conversations and everybody has a different value that they're coming from, they, we hold different values and we are looking to advocate and advance different values, and that's something that is real. You know, it's in real time. So, while it sounds good on the piece of paper, absolutely every single person has been very, you know, has broken all of these, and some of them that I felt absolutely crossed the line. But we're here, and as they say in Spanish, "braví de nuevo." So, we erase and we start again, fresh. I think that value judgment even comes with be prepared. You know, there needs to be patience in our discussions, and I think that patience is something that would go a long way going forward. So, for example, come prepared. If you, you know, I often feel like people are asking a question that they already know the answer to, trying to drill into what it is that they want to have heard. I often will ask questions that are very clearly spelled out. I've said this many times and I'll say it again, and I will continue to do that because I do feel that the public does not, it is not their job to go through what we go through. It is not their job to look and pull out all of those details, to highlight something from the consent calendar, to do these things. That is our job. And so, often, you know, we may be stating something for the benefit of the public that is well-known to the staff and well-known to the council, and I do think that that's very important to do. So, where somebody may feel that repetition of that is not being prepared, there's absolutely been a lot of preparation that's gone into that, and those are being asked specifically. So, I just wanted, you know, to, to level it out, and we're all coming from different, again, value basis. So, I want to make sure that we're thinking about that when we look at this. And, you know, if you want to pull out five, I mean, I guess we could do that, but again, I think we're going to have to probably negotiate, you know, what is most important to everybody.
Right.
And I think respect is probably one of them. I really take heart to what Marilyn said, and I, you know, think we can keep that in order. And that's, I guess, those are some of the things that I'll, I'll share.
Okay. When I talked about the top five, I didn't mean to eliminate everything else, but, but just to prioritize maybe five of them. And I do think, I get, I get it, what you're saying is sometimes you, you ask a question that we may already know, but you're asking it for the public's certification...
Absolutely.
...as opposed to ours. So, I understand that. Yeah, okay. Is there anything else on that list? So, come prepared, obviously, very important. We all understand that. Read the package, be prepared, read the supplements, those sorts of things. Anything else on that list that, you know, I think, let's see here, I had some... Okay, be punctual is one. Send questions in advance of the meeting. Let the city manager know. That's right underneath, be punctual. Let the city manager know if you plan to pull a consent item, and so that we have a little bit, I think more importantly, and Christina may speak to this, it really does help the staff to be more prepared if we're going to be pulling a consent item. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So, getting advanced notice of a consent calendar item being pulled is super helpful along with just asking... Oh, thank you.
Yes, having advanced notification, if possible, that an item's going to be pulled in advance, that's great. And then, questions in advance of the meeting too. That's the third to last bullet there. Send questions in advance of the meeting is always helpful, just, especially those background questions, you know, of history, you know, or just clarification questions. And sometimes those questions might help us put out information to clarify for the public as well, if something wasn't clear.
Okay. Is everybody doing that? Kind of sending questions in advance of, okay, because I've been...
I do it all the time.
Okay, okay.
That's my standard operating...
That's helpful. I've only, obviously, two meetings, and I think it's been great.
I appreciate that. Doing it as well, that helps me too, just want to mention it. You know, for me, a thing that I need, that I keep working on myself all the time is, is really, we have to listen to each other, right? Also during the meeting. And those norms are not a problem. Probably 90% of the items where we all five agree, right? It's the topics where we're passionate about or so, or where we really have very different opinions. And often, what I find missing is, then we stop listening to each other, right? Because we already have made up, made up our minds. And instead of trying to find, is there another way, an additional way of achieving something, we just stick to our guns, right? And I don't think that that is helpful at all. At the end of the day, it includes myself, right? Like, passionate too about certain topics. But I think if we can add to the listening also, really listen and think, let's use you as an example. I might disagree with Yvonne, but maybe there's something behind it and she's got a point, right? And me, me just shutting it down, saying, well, let's think about that, right?
Right.
So, listen to each other and think about what the other... So I wanna make sure that we're thinking about that when we look at this and, you know, you wanna pull out five, I mean, I guess we could do that, but again, I think we're gonna have to probably negotiate, you know, what is most important to everybody.
Right.
And I think respect is probably one of them. I really take heart to what Marilyn said and I, you know, think we can keep that in order. And that's, I guess those are some of the things that I'll, I'll share.
Okay. When I talked about the top five, I didn't mean to eliminate everything else, but, but just to prioritize maybe five of them. And I do think I get, I get it, what you're saying is sometimes you, you ask a question that we may already know, but you're asking it for the public certification.
Absolutely.
As opposed to ours, so I understand that. Yeah, okay. Is there anything else on that list? So come prepared, obviously very important. We all understand that. Read the package, prepared, read the supplements, those sorts of things. Anything else on that list that, you know, I think, let's see here, I had some, okay, be punctual is one. Send questions in advance of the meeting, let the city manager know, that's right underneath, be punctual. Let the city manager know if you plan to pull a consent item and so that we have a little bit, I think more importantly, and Christina may speak to this, it really does help the staff to be more prepared if we're gonna be pulling a consent item. Is that correct?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So getting advanced notice of a consent calendar item being pulled is super helpful along with just asking, oh, thank you.
Yes, having advanced notification if possible that an item's gonna be pulled in advance, that's great. And then questions in advance of the meeting too, that's the third to last bullet there. Send questions in advance of the meeting is always helpful, just especially those background questions, you know, of history, you know, or just clarification questions. And sometimes those questions might help us put out information to clarify for the public as well.
Right.
If something wasn't clear.
Okay. Is everybody doing that? Kind of sending in questions in advance of, okay, I've been.
I do it all the time.
Okay, okay.
That's my standard operating.
That's helpful. I've only, obviously, two meetings and I think it's been great.
Doing it as well, that helps me too, just wanna mention it. You know, for me, a thing that I need, that I keep working on myself all the time is, is really, we have to listen to each other, right? Also during the meeting. The, and, and those norms are not a problem, probably 90% of the items where we all five agree, right? It's, it's the topics where, where we're passionate about or so, or where we really have very different opinions. And often what I find missing is we, then we stop listening to each other, right? Because we already have made up, made up our minds. And instead of trying to find, is there another way, an additional way of achieving something, we just stick to our guns, right? And I don't think that, that is helpful at all. At the end of the day, it includes myself, right? Passionate too about certain topics. But I think if we can add to the listening also, really listen and think, let's use you as an example, I might disagree with Yvonne, but maybe there's something behind it and she's got a point, right? And me, me just shutting it down, saying, well, let's think about that, right?
Right.
So listen to each other and think about what the other person said, right?
Yeah.
And why that person said it. I think, I think that will come a long way down the road to more find compromise and less be that, you know, like that, at certain times.
Right. Is, is that one of the norms, listening, listening?
Listening is, yeah.
Yeah, obviously, very important.
Listening is not good enough, right? You have to think about what was said.
Right. Take it to heart. Yep, okay.
Although I understand what you're saying, you know, like pick the top five and concentrate, they're, they're all important.
Okay.
So the top five are in there.
That's a good point.
We're, I think we're adults and we're pretty well-educated, so they're in there.
Okay, I'm good with that.
No, one thing also, you know, be mindful of time. So there's a timer that's always right in front of you and going over that a lot of time. And I saw that again with the previous mayor, he had to remind the council person several times that their time is up, you know, and it's very rough. I mean, trying to, trying to say everything in five minutes, very difficult. I, I know it firsthand, but that timer is there for a reason. So having, having the mayor say your time is up and you keeping going for another 30 seconds or more is just not really even being respectful of the time.
And let me ask you guys, and how do you want me to handle that when we get to that point and the five minutes is up? And we did it the other evening with a public speaker at three, at the three minutes, I just said, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time is, your time is done. And he was respectful and walked away. How would you want me to handle that amongst our, ourselves?
I think, Mayor, isn't that on the next?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I think we're talking about that next.
Well, it's tied to the norms, right? And we had discussion in the past as well.
Yeah.
I think you were on the council already. The, and, and that's where, where some, some on the council forgot about our own norms and policies in place. Because yes, there are the five minutes, but you can add another five minutes in a round two.
Yeah.
And, and, but then when the mayor said, well, there is no round two, yeah, of course that pisses people off.
Yeah.
When they're being told, but then we're not following our own rules, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, it goes both ways, right?
Yep, yep, okay, makes sense.
So Mayor, one of the top five recommendations at the academy, applied to members of the public making a comment, and let me tell you what it is, but I think it might apply to council members as well. So the recommendation is, once they reach their time, don't just say, your time has, your time is up, please summarize. Because that will lead them to sort of think that they need to summarize their, what they just said and repeat themselves, right? So you just say, thank you, your time is up, you know, your time is up, thank you for your comments, okay? Now, as it applies to council, because there is another, as the policies now are, there is another bite at the apple, perhaps the same thing, thank you, council member Gino, your time is up, let's go on to, and then, and then if Gino needs another bite at the apple, he'll go back for it.
Okay, that seem, seem fair? All right, very good.
That was, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Yvonne.
That was definitely something that we talked about when we agreed to the five minutes, the understanding with some of us when we agreed to that was that we would have another opportunity if we felt that, that situation or conversation issue warranted it. Again, I think we're gonna differ in, you know, I mean, something that may be very important to Marilyn may not be as important to you. And so we have to negotiate that and have respect for, everybody's gonna have their different topic, similar to our constituents, everybody has a different, you know, topic. So I think that's something to, for us to just be mindful of when somebody is asking for that time, know that you're gonna need that time or want that time at some particular moment.
Yeah, okay, good point.
I think another thing, you know, I think that would be helpful is, and for me, really kind of erodes us working together is when we have a motion and we're working on consensus and we really can come to consensus, to then, you know, sabotage that motion purely for the sake of making the same similar type of emotion, instead of working together to get or, or forcing it to go to a vote where it doesn't really need to get there. I think we need to work together and I, that happened a few times and I really hope that we can, we can continue to try to work together so that we can get that consensus. It's, it's a great message for us to send to the community, right? I mean, we're able as professionals to come together and negotiate wherever we need to negotiate to come to something that we can all kind of get behind, rather than trying to erode, I guess, you know, where we're all going as one. And that, that happened a few times, it was very disappointing, so.
I just wanna be clear on that too. So are you saying what you're hoping to achieve in that is more, more oftentimes a 5-0 vote as opposed to a 4-1 or 3-2?
It doesn't have to, but what I'm saying is, you know, we've all been going one way as the council, we're working to get to that and then it's like, well, I'm gonna make a substitute motion because I don't, you know, I don't want you to make the motion or, I mean, that is just.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah, and if I can just sort of add to that, so I summarize as build consensus when possible. And so I think what you're kind of referring to is when there's a chance for the council to agree in general on this big topic. Right. Let's not be selfish or if there's just one little sticking point and because of that sticking point, you're gonna say no. Or give the opportunity, if there's the sticking point, then give your, the opportunity to the colleague to address it and see, can we work through that sticking point? You know, rather than just, well, I don't want them to make the motion, I'm gonna make the motion, it's the same type of emotion, I mean, it's ridiculous.
Oh, I think I see what you're saying. Okay, so, okay.
And that happened a few times.
Okay.
So that, that's one. And, you know, if we have the similar motions, let's just try to, let's try to make it work.
Yeah.
Another thing I would really like to bring up is, you know, walking out on your colleagues and walking out on a meeting and I don't think that, I, I, I don't see anything specifically in here. I never thought that we would need to have something in there. I don't know if we do, you know, but just giving up and walking out of a meeting is just, I don't, I don't think.
About a council meeting?
A, a meeting of the council.
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, unless there's an imminent threat, there's some type of danger, but, you know, if you're just frustrated, I think that, you know, we've gotta try to, we're all frustrated. We all can get very frustrated and it takes patience.
Yeah, that makes sense. I wouldn't think it would be appropriate for a council member to leave a meeting just based on a frustration. I wouldn't mind if someone said, hey, can we just take a five minute break here so I can collect my thoughts? That's, that's not bad, but yeah, to get a block out and then leave the conversation would not be well received.
I have one more thing too.
Please, Marilyn and then we'll go to Renee.
Yeah, one more thing I wanna add to the efficiency and time management of a meeting is after you, the council has voted, whether you voted for or against it, I don't think it is necessary for you to then take the additional five minutes to explain why you voted that way. I think that's another thing that needs to, if you feel really strongly that, that the public needs to know, I voted this way, then that's perhaps something you can do on your Facebook or to your, blast to your district or something like that. The vote's done, it's over, let's move on. I really don't think that's the right way to use your additional five minutes when the vote is already done. You do not need to explain yourself.
And just to clarify, so typically after a vote is done, we move on to the next item. So it's a very rare occasion when there should be discussion after a vote.
Well, I've just, I've witnessed it.
Okay, we'll be, we'll certainly be more mindful of that and careful about letting that happen.
You do not have to say, I'm sorry I didn't vote this way or.
Okay. I'm sorry I didn't listen to you more. Renee?
You know, I agree with everyone, Marilyn, everything Marilyn said as well, as well as Gino, right? But, but the crook sometimes it really is, and I am very honest, is, is the length of the agenda, right? And we had, you know, we had beginner's luck so far.
Yeah.
And I, you know, people know, I'm up by three, four o'clock in the morning and we're still trying to have a meaningful discussion at 10, 11, midnight. I'm sorry, my brain is just not working the way it does in the morning anymore.
Right.
And, and then probably all my manners go downhill as well, right? And, and, and that happens with all my colleagues too. The, no, let's be honest, you know, when you're tired, you know, you just.
A little more irritable.
You get irritated much more quickly, you're not as charming anymore and so on. But, but also I think it's a disservice to, to those who want to listen in.
Yeah.
And participate and I think you should not ask anyone in, in our, of our residents to stick around after 10 o'clock at night. I'm sorry, that's just disrespectful to our residents, right?
Yeah.
And then we can't be surprised if they say, well, you're not transparent. I'm not waiting until midnight until you make a decision, right?
Right. Glad you were mentioning that, yeah.
So we have to be cognizant of not just how we, what we do, but also if we want input and participation from the community, right? Then we, at some point we have to stop the meeting and say, okay, this is too late for most people.
Right, right. And I agree with that, Renee, and thank you for that. This is something that we're also gonna be talking about a little bit later as well because I do feel very strongly about the fact that it is disrespectful to our businesses and to our residents if we're going on beyond a reasonable hour for their participation because they've got jobs, families and work next day, they've got all of that going on. And I, and I'm like you, man, at a certain point, I'm done. And so I'm up early as well and so I think we need to be respectful about starting at a reasonable time and ending at a reasonable time. And we will be talking about that a little bit later. So thank you for that point, I think it is.
Those of you teammates that have been around for a while, I'm sure you remember the one o'clock meeting, so.
There's no, there's no, boy, I tell you, unless it is a major emergency, then it, there shouldn't be a reason for that. We need to end that and move on. Do you know, any other comments from you? Yvonne?
No.
Okay. Is there anything else on that list? Because what I'm sensing, what I'm hearing is, we like the list, we like everything on the list. There are a couple of things we wanna make sure we're staying focused on. Come prepared, be punctual and send in questions in advance. Those are the three things that I've heard us talk about. Be respectful, listen, be, you know, willing to, and which is our job, willing to change our mind if we've come with some decision in our minds, somebody else, be willing to have someone change our minds because of that perspective they come to the table with.
And, you know, we have two new members and I'm grateful for, for you being on the council now. For me, it's also important, you know, when we have conflicts or so, maybe let someone call for a closed session and let's just clear the air, right?
Right, okay.
Sometimes we just leave for reasons known or not known. We might be mad at each other, not even realizing it maybe, right? And, and we could probably clear it out quickly if only another evening we'll come together and just talk to each other.
We can't do a closed session unless it's posted though.
I, I don't know what.
That's when our, so that's when our city attorney jumps in and will tell us that we can only go into a closed session for very few exceptions, employee, performance evaluations, property negotiations, that sort of thing. But two people can talk, two council members can talk and.
Yeah.
Clear the air after the meeting if necessary.
After the meeting.
Yes, after the meeting, for sure.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, we wrote some notes here, but do, does the council feel like the norms as stated are fine or do we need to make any changes to them?
That's a good question. Council?
And so both, we have two boards up.
Yeah, do we need to change the wording in any way on any of these, these norms?
I, I think the add-on I made to listen, right, as it is, that if my colleagues were to agree, I think that's, I mean, that's an important one.
Okay, all right.
Listen, think about what is being said.
Yeah.
I didn't see patience, Mayor.
Didn't see patience.
Oh, okay.
He frustrated. No, I'm joking, get it? Lack of patience. Is it on there?
Yeah.
Punctual. Prepared.
Okay.
Professional. No, no, I don't. I think, yeah, we could be patient.
With one another.
You wanna add that, do you wanna add that to?
Be respectful and patient of each other?
Yeah, I think you can add that to, when it's existing, yeah. Yeah, be respectful and patient with one another, is that it? Yeah, okay. Any, anything else? Any changes we wanna make?
Okay, so we're gonna change the listen one and then we'll change the patience one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you going to like move these to the top and?
No, I think what I heard was, there was no need to prioritize any particular, because they're all important, right? Is that's what I'm hearing?
Well, Gino, that is well.
Yeah, yeah, the, the top five are in there, yeah. And I, and it sounds, again, like what we've, I think we've kind of identified them here. We don't need to formalize that, but again, I think it's important to be mindful of these before each meeting and make sure we're trying to adhere to them as best we can.
Yeah, and then before we wrap up, so typically in goal settings in the past, you know, the council kinda asked the mayor to, you know, hold each other accountable, but at the same time, there's also been comments about everyone holding each other accountable too. And it's not just your role, but it can be a shared role. So I don't know if they want to, you wanna have any dialogue on that. So the how, if somebody's not abiding by one of the norms, do you call each other out or not?
Yeah, that's a good question because again, it might be from my perspective, I didn't think that was a problem, but Gino, you somehow might have thought, well, that was disrespectful and I, I didn't pick up on that. How do you wanna handle that? Do you want to, Gino, say, hey, I've, I've got, that seemed a little bit beyond the, the line and we need to rein that in? How do, how do you wanna handle that?
Well, I mean, you could, you could do a point of order and, and clear the air, say, this is X and I don't think this is within the guidelines, something like that.
Okay, okay.
As one.
Sure, sure. Any thoughts on that, Yvonne?
I think it also helps that discussion later, I mean, that you're new and if it were to happen in one, then maybe we could have, I mean, unless it was egregious, I'm sure.
Yeah, and that's probably a, a good word. I mean, if it's egregious, we're probably, more than one of us will recognize it and maybe, you know, maybe we, we call that out. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think this is probably a little bit, I don't think it's as easily defined. Yeah. So I think we just need to kind of be, again, even, even being respectful of the fact that maybe someone crossed on, didn't realize it, okay, let's, let's let it go and we're just gonna move on and we'll have, you know, if it happens again, we'll, we'll address it.
Well, these are the tough ones, right? In the heat of the moment, right?
Yeah.
It's hard to get the temperature down, right? And then we all have said things that we regret at, at one point. But I think, I think if we can't meet us as a team, right, which one would do it in the outside world, maybe that's where you, as, as the mayor played key role and said, hey, and, and let's, let's say, Gino says, well, Renee said, this, and I really felt offended, he would tell you and then maybe he would say, hey, Gino told me or, or I heard.
Yeah.
And I have no problem with that.
Right, right.
With that style, the, and, and I know I'm not perfect, right? But someone needs to tell me, right? I might, I might say something and I, I've said it over and over again, English is not my first language, sometimes I pick a word that someone, that then reads in a way I didn't, I didn't intend it. So unintentionally you cause harm or insult someone or whatever happens, right, trigger reaction, you never intended, right? How do you get out of that if no one tells you?
That is a good point. I, I don't know if, if, if I've offended you but no one's brought it to my attention, how can I correct that action? So that is important. And I think again, outside the meeting, you know, two council members can get together and talk about those differences too. And if, and again, if someone needs me to say, hey, there was a, there was a situation So that is important, and I think, again, outside the meeting, you know, two council members can get together and talk about those differences too. And again, if someone needs me to say, "Hey, there was a, there was a situation that occurred that two of you might need to get together," I can certainly do that as well.
That's great.
I just can't join you in that conversation.
And Mayor, you know, I think sometimes, I mean, we're hoping that you're picking up on some of these things, but sometimes you don't, I mean, you're leading the meeting, right?
Right, right.
I believe exchanged glances with, you know, people like, "That was completely unacceptable," or, you know, and just, Mayor, can you, you know, others will speak up and say, "That's not okay," or, you know, and I think sometimes that just, that's going to happen.
And I do think, again, in those, in those moments where we're really expressing ourselves in something, to say, "I've done that, I've crossed the line," and someone might, "Hey, hey, Mayor, you really," I've got to be careful not to then respond negatively to that, you know, to being called out on that. So again, I, you know, just have to be careful. Michelle?
Just a reminder, the folks online who can't hear you, if your mic's turned on, so when you're meeting, please make sure your mic's on.
Sorry.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so to summarize, although I shouldn't say that, your time is up. No.
Yeah, so we'll make two modifications for these items right here related to patience and the active listening part. And then the last thing I just want to say on this, the glimmer of hope, is that most would think that meeting from Zoom to in-person meetings is going to make a big difference, right? Being face-to-face is a lot easier than being behind a screen.
Good point.
So with that, we'll move on.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, so the next item is to talk about the rule of five minutes, and so is this working? Do we want to, does the council want to modify it? So I'll just go ahead and read it. This comes from Council Policy 9701, under Procedures for the Conduct of Meeting. During both questions and discussions, so once again, we do questions that the council has, we open it up for public comment, and then there's discussion of the council. One, one council member has the floor, they are limited to five minutes. After each council member that wishes to speak is done so, a council member may speak up, may speak again for up to five minutes. So that last part was not working before, because we weren't having another bite at the apple, but that is how the policy is written. And so the question is, is this, is this working? Should five be a different number? Should there not be a bite at the apple?
Well, I don't think it should be the norm, at times' need, and I think we had a couple incidents where, I think it was the former mayor just said, "Well, we don't do that, or this is not our rule," and that pisses me off. We agreed to rules.
Yeah.
And then no one speaks up. At that point, I looked at our city manager, city attorney, and say, "That is your rule, Mayor, let them do that," right?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. I was reading that as you were talking, I wasn't ignoring you. No, I appreciate that, yeah, thank you. One of the things I will tell you, as I was tuning in and during the campaign, watching this, you know, just doing the math on this, I look at this and go, okay, each item, and we have, I've, long agendas, that's 10 minutes, you think, that's 10 minutes of my talking, not somebody else responding to the question, which could be an additional 10 minutes, but just, just alone, my 10 minutes of talking, and each of ours, makes one agenda item nearly an hour long. If we, if we consume those five minutes in both, in both those two areas. I would suggest, and I have a discussion here about maybe the, the second phase be three minutes, and even ask ourselves, do we need, the first five minutes, do we need five, or is three sufficient? But I think the second bite of the apple should be, should be closer to three minutes, again, so that we can create some efficiencies, because I do think that second, that second area there probably doesn't need a full five minutes. It could, I mean, but, but that's why I just want to have this conversation. Would three be sufficient? And so I just want to throw that out there and see what your thoughts are.
So, so you bring up a real good point. So you have five council members, and let's just say each have 10 minutes.
Yeah.
That's, that's almost an hour. And then if you go another round, that's, that's an additional five minutes, that's 25 minutes additional. So maybe, maybe you're right, maybe we should, the second round should be reduced to a lower amount of minutes. But, you know, in here, it also says in the norms, be tight. You know, again, I state that, it's not easy to get everything out in five minutes on a topic that you feel passionate about. So I, I get that, I understand that, and, but you do have to be concise in what you do. And so if you know you only have five minutes, use it wisely. Don't, don't bloviate in that five minutes.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to share that. I agree that maybe the second round should be reduced.
Yvonne, you had some thoughts?
I do. I know, you're shocked. We, you know, I think that maybe we should stay with what it is. I mean, to be fair, this new council, we really haven't done too much business, to be, you know, honest. And I think this, you know, what Renee is talking, I mean, this is something that we're thinking, this is not a norm where you would go back again for another five minutes. I mean, this is the, this is really an exception, right? There were some really big issues that we dealt with that probably took a bulk of our staff's time, and took a bulk of our time as, as council members out in the council, out in the community, and so, I mean, there, there were definitely times where we ran out, all of us, of, you know, asking questions or what have you. So I think in those exceptions, I think that would be necessary, so. And maybe we could just, you know, agree that, okay, we'll do another round that's three minutes, but we know we could go to five if there was something that was a real issue, for example, the downtown lanes or the redistricting. I mean, these were major, major issues that we had to work through. So that would be my recommendation, you know, or suggestion, is that we stick with what we have, and then maybe use, may I say, "Hey, we're going to, you know, does three minutes sound good? People need to go over," or whatever, and just give ourselves a little willow room, we'll be back this summer and another six months, and if we feel like it did, we could always look at it then, but that's just, that's just my.
That's a good point. I think, Dawn, before I go, Dawn raised his hand, I think that's illegal, or his risk management.
Illegal. I'm wearing my, I wore my city attorney hat today, but I wanted to, there's a couple of thoughts I had that I wanted to make sure I shared with the council. First is that the chair, the mayor, as the chair, under the broader set of rules you have, has the ability, I mean, also ultimately, it's the mayor's decision on how the rules are enforced, and all, and all of that under the policy. There are certain times when there's more flexibility, and certain times there isn't, and I think it's important for council to be aware of that. When you're dealing with land use issues, you're dealing with people's property rights, and we're going to talk more about this in the ethics training, but you, there is a due process requirement, and so one of the things that happens during the question five minutes is that council members have a tendency to use much of that five, their five minutes leading up to those questions.
Got it.
And that could get us into some trouble, because if the question, if, if the questions express too much support for a project, or too much opposition to a project, just in that question phase, it can create an appearance that the council members have already made up their minds.
Got it.
So that, that really, that really should be very, those question, during those question periods, the questions should be very tailored to very specific facts, not, no lead-up, no, you don't have to explain why you're asking the question, you can explain afterwards why you asked the question. There are other topics.
But when you say, "Explain afterwards," you mean after the vote?
Well, as, or explain why you're making the vote that you're making. So I'm going to vote against the project because, or I'm going to vote for the project because.
And that's during the discussion.
But that's during the discussion, after you've heard all of the testimony and listened to all of the, everything that's been brought forward from staff and from the applicant and from the community, then you can, then it's time to express the vote you're making and why. There are other types of actions, and Yvonne mentioned, like redistricting and lane reduction, those are legislative. You can, I mean, and we've, and Mayor, we've talked about this, and some of those things, it's perfectly okay to combine questions and comments, because you're making a legislative decision, you're not, you're, you may inadvertently be affecting, you know, some property interests with like a lane reduction issue, but those are legislative decisions, and, and it's okay to come into those with preconceived opinions. So it's a way for, that the mayor can maybe create some efficiencies is by saying, "Okay, we have this five-minute rule, but today we're going to just do your questions and comments, and maybe we can create some efficiencies that way."
Okay, that makes sense, you're pretty good with that. Okay.
Yeah, for me, that's, that's really a point where after six years, I still struggle. No, you know, when you have an agenda item, you get a report, right?
Yeah.
So, so do you have to ask questions yet? And then you can ask, make a comment? This is a good example, where you probably can combine it, right? But, but sometimes, depending on who's running the meeting, just reminds questions only, right? And, well, why? Doesn't make sense, right? Like, so let's use a little bit more common sense where appropriate, right? But also, when we're not following the appropriate rule, very important that you remind me, right?
Right.
This is question only.
Yeah, in fact, Dawn, I would be looking to you a little bit more for that, to say, "Hey, this, you know, let's, let's be careful here."
Yeah, and that, and on the quasi-judicial matters, that is, that's really my most important role at the council meeting.
Yep, okay, very good, thank you.
So, so Mayor.
Yeah.
So previously, the mayor would, would say during discussion time, I mean, question time.
Yeah.
Well, you, this is question time, so please limit your questions to questions only and not discussion. So the mayor would, would say that. So what Dawn is indicating, and also Councilmember Spring, is the flexibility to, in that five minutes, you could do both.
Right.
So I just want to make sure you understand that, and it's clarified.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that's only on certain types of issues, but, but, and so, so that's, that's what I think we, is important for the council to understand, when you're do, when you're in a, when you're wearing your robes, your judges' robes, and you're acting as judges, then you need to act as judges. When you're acting as legislators, you can act as legislators.
And if I could just add to that, so from a best practice perspective, though, I think most of the items should be questions and answers, and then let the public comment before comments are made. There'll be times where the mayor wants that flexibility to do questions and discussions, but for the most part, items should be questioned, so then the public gets their opportunity to comment before you start discussing.
Got it.
Because the public wants to provide input, but could and should, in cases where how you're going to vote.
Right, good point.
And Mayor, if I might.
Yeah, please.
Dawn and I had had a conversation, Dawn, I was hoping you could touch base on it. You know, a part of, a part of this process is for council to have the dialogue, which you brought up earlier, when it's appropriate. And one of the unintended consequences of the time is that it kind of eliminates the dialogue, because somebody speaks for five minutes, and then somebody else speaks for five minutes, and so I just wondered if you could touch on that, and we talked about perhaps discussion being three minutes to more allow a dialogue, rather than it being, for lack of a better word, kind of grandstanding on an item.
It is, it is something that I've noticed, not the last couple meetings, but since we adopted the five-minute timeline on, on discussion, it seems like there's five minute, five council members taking five minutes, and if, if there was shorter comments, but more opportunity to comment, I think it would create better, a better opportunity for dialogue, just based on my observations. And consistent with the rules of conduct, there is supposed to be an opportunity to, for debate, and if everybody is just speaking for five minutes, that's not debate, that's just speechifying. So, so I think having shorter periods of time where you are, as Yvonne said, where you're able to talk to each other, might, might serve the council better than the five minutes.
See, and that's, that, Renee, when you had mentioned earlier, and we talked about, "Hey, let's open this up for discussion," that would be the timeframe, right? When it came back, so we've basically really, if we say it's three minutes, that's like a 15-minute period of time, now we can begin to have this dialogue with one another and kind of open it up for discussion. One of those topics that comes to mind for me was when there was a conversation around the donations to the city. It seemed to me like there was opportunity there for discussion, everybody had their opinion, but no one talked about why they felt that way, and, you know, I would question somebody or about, "Why do you feel that way?" And I wanted some clarification or whatever. That would have been a great opportunity to discuss, because it could have then changed some minds, or solidified people's opinions. So do I, am I hearing that right? The first five minutes is about questions, and once it comes back after public comment, this can be an opportunity for us to discuss, and not just take three minutes each, or five minutes each, to have more questions, or our own personal comments. Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Am I hearing it? Okay.
Yes, and this was created, this was added to Council Policy 9701, in an effort to make the meetings more efficient.
Yeah.
Thinking that by limiting the time, setting a, you know, a max amount would help, and I think we've found it hasn't helped.
Okay.
So that's speaking to, you know, what you're potentially presenting.
What would, what would this, what would this look like? What is the concrete suggestion of what this in real-time practice looks like? For example, we have an issue, and it looks like what?
So for a given item, you have the ability to ask questions, and so they're clarifying questions.
We're talking about the downtown lane closure.
Okay, downtown lane closure, so questions that you have that potentially weren't asked in advance of the meeting, or questions for which you want the community to hear the response to.
Right.
Or you may have heard something after the, you know, the agenda was released, so you have, you have a question, and so you have five minutes in this case to ask your questions. The clock will pause for our teammates to answer the question, we try to be as succinct as possible. And then each one has five minutes max, right?
Ultimate, yeah.
And then the public comment.
Okay.
And then come back, and right now, it's a max of five minutes, but sort of what's being discussed is, well, one, should that five be three? But should it more be a discussion, where it's not like, just, let's set the timer up for the three minutes, but rather have that dialogue questioning the why for council members?
And just to add to that, and I, you could do five minutes for questions, so you each take your turn, you have up to five minutes to ask questions, public comment and discussion, and you could consider having five minutes, you could consider having three minutes, you could consider if it makes sense to not have a time limit on discussion, so it creates a space to actually have a discussion. You know, you're talking about being more succinct, being more thoughtful, respectful, you know, so that's the opportunity, right, another one to practice that, so that you can have that actual dialogue, so it's.
That's a good point. I do like the fact, though, that we'd have some time limit. If we said collectively, we have 15 minutes to have a discussion, if we felt it needed to go longer, I could simply say, "Let's extend the discussion," or someone could recommend that, but it also gives us some, some timeframe to try to keep the conversation within those confines.
And then, you know, best practices, heard at the academy, you don't have to ask a question for every item.
Right.
And you don't need to say, "I agree with council member X, Y, and Z."
Right.
You, you don't even have to, you know, make a comment after public comment. It could go right to a vote if it's straightforward.
Which we actually did the other night.
Yes.
Yvonne, I didn't want to, you had mentioned, when you talked about asking questions, you said, "Or asking questions on behalf of the public," or people have asked you to ask for them?
Oh, absolutely, they will.
That in the first five minutes you're talking about, or?
When you ask questions, sure, people will always call, text, email, "Hey, I would like for you to ask about this."
During the actual meeting itself, you're saying?
No, beforehand, you have conversations with people, and, you know, "I really want to know this," or "I feel like this hasn't been answered, we've asked this many times, I'm not getting, can you please," you know?
Yeah, and again, in those first five minutes is where you would ask those questions, though.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I think, Renee, did you want, do you want to add something?
Yeah, you know, the time of taking out, I think, is still meaningful, right?
Yeah.
Because I totally get what Marilyn, I think, mentioned earlier, that not one of us just monopolizes the time, and then, and I think it's always worse in an election year than in the other year, for obvious reasons, right? But we have to be mindful of that, right? There's five of us and not just one of us, right, out there, and, and, again, not, I don't think it should be a standard for every agenda item, right? It should be agreed upon, "Hey, this is a controversial topic that we all know, it's not just controversial on the council, but also in the community, right? Where you rightly so have different opinions, and that's a good thing, right? But those should allow for more time to find possible consensus or closure, whereas the 90% of all the other agenda items, there's no need to do it, right?
Right, and, and maybe what we need to do then is, if we have a particular item, much like lane closure or something else that we know is going to be more controversial, we manage the agenda in such a way that we don't have, you know, 15 more agenda items to follow, because then you do feel somewhat compelled to quickly get through each of these items.
Yeah, and we do our very best at the staff level to manage the agendas, sometimes we have deadlines, and, you know, so we try our best.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so do you want to sort of summarize what your?
One last, you know, I think it's really important for us to be transparent about, you know, and that's why I keep talking about lane closure, and I keep talking about redistricting, because these were like.
Did you watch them?
Oh, yeah, it is, okay. These are, you know, head-banging issues that we had to go through, I mean, the flock camera got a lot of flack for that, too, in the beginning, and there was lots of education and there was lots of education that happened with that. Housing, these, you know, when you, when we don't talk about it, I think the public becomes frustrated that, why are they not talking about the biggest issues that we're all talking about on Facebook, on Nextdoor, on everything else? So if we just address it, and we talk about it, and we admit that we realize that these are divisive issues, these are huge issues, right there, we've got some buy-in from the public.
Sure, sure.
And so by us, I guess, pretending that it doesn't warrant the time that we need to dedicate to these, and the time that, quite frankly, we're all doing in the community, and the staff is putting in with community meetings, and everything else, and town halls, you know, we're doing a real disservice. And so that is where I see that this plays as an exception. And, you know, Mayor, I'm happy to try whatever it is that we're going to try. So, let's try it, let's do it. You know, I have no qualms with that. I just want to make sure that we're being respectful to our community who put us here.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And if I may throw in one more piece, it's not just us sometimes that are offenders. Really, something that really aggravates me is when we get a staff report for an hour before we even can start asking questions, right, and I'm exaggerating. So some of our teammates are really were good in providing a report very concise. And it gets even worse when you ask a question, and then you get a 10-minute response, right? And then it kind of, I feel that I am harking 45 minutes, even though I only ask two questions, right? So it goes to staff, too, right, that you really, your reports are concise, and your answers are crisp as well, right? Not just talking about the ones in here, but there's others. At times, this has not gone well, and we need to keep an eye on that.
And Renee, thank you. You know, that is something over time that we've worked on, and I've given my teammates the green light when questions are asked to be brief, to even just say, as mentioned, yes, we can do that, you know. And then if there's a follow-up question, then we provide more information. And so we try to keep the staff reports brief. I tell the team, it's okay to have a one-page or two-page staff report, but there's some items that need to have a larger, more in-depth, more detailed staff report. You know, and some of the agenda materials may be 1,000 pages, but that's because there's attachments, right? You know, so there's the staff report, and then the background information is typically an attachment. And so, you know, we'll continue to make sure we do our very best in brief responses. If you want more information, you ask for it. And then as far as presentations go, you know, the general rule of them is, a presentation should be five minutes, maybe 10, and then, of course, there's some, if it's a large development, you know, they need to be longer, but I'm very in support of a briefer presentation. Uh, teammates that give presentations, any comments? Thumbs up?
I totally agree. I just want to say, yes. And sometimes our team takes a long time to answer questions. I see that myself. And I think sometimes they're trying to make sure they get to what either they think you're asking, or what they're hearing. I think there's always room for us to work on that. And perhaps when you observe that, you can share that with Christina, you know, so we have specific examples. And then just a reminder that sometimes we do it strategically as well, because these meetings are for the community as much as they are for the council. And if it's something that we think, you know, they don't know as much as you or us know, we will provide more. So sometimes it is strategic, but I think there's plenty of room for us to keep working on it.
Yeah, and I hope you take the critique the right way. And the last thing is, another thing that I observe, when we get inputs from the public, right, that they ask a question or make a comment, and sometimes they get a response to the questions, and often they don't. And I find that disrespectful. So really, that's where I look at our city manager, or our city attorney, to say, hey, let's answer that question that was asked.
Yeah, and what I would ask is...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. And I don't have a problem, I work for the council, so, and so if the council want, and I know this was something that most of the time, they, you know, I wait for a council member to ask me, can you answer the question? Because I'm looking to you to tell me, because...
But I can't, it's not my turn, right?
Well, yeah, that's, yes, that's true. I think we can fix that. I think it's okay for, in my mind, it's okay for a council member to say, hey, can, you know, can the city attorney answer that, or can the, you know, staff answer that question? The issue I have is, you know, sometimes the questions are rhetorical or adversarial, and I don't want to get in the habit of, you know, what kind of an idiot are you? I'm not going to answer that question.
So if I could, if I could add to Dawn's response?
Fair enough.
So, on the agenda for matter, for matters that are not on the agenda. So for general public at the beginning, we have a statement that says we don't generally answer questions, and so you can send in your questions to CC Public Comment, and so Michelle and others get that, and then we respond. Now, if it's an item that's on the agenda, we don't typically respond, and so we do wait for council members to ask us.
Which we did the other night.
Yeah.
If you recall, there were a couple of questions from the public that I didn't actually ask the staff to respond to, so that they felt as though their questions were heard and answered. But I could also, you know, this could also, I mean, if we had 15 people lined up, and they were going to ask questions for three minutes on a particular agenda item, boy, that could ruin our efficiency, our timeframes, but...
Yeah, and the relevancy, too, you know. And so to determine the relevancy on the spot of the question that might be overarching, when the, you know, the topic is this, it becomes a little bit problematic.
Yeah, I think here and there, we can do that. I mean, again, I think, as I just described, the 15 people lined up, we'd just say, hey, could you guys, could you email us those questions, and we'll get, the one thing I do know is, boy, whenever I've got an email, someone asking a question, I've sent it on to Christina, goes to one of the teammates, and that gets answered. It gets addressed.
Absolutely.
So I really appreciate that. And then it takes that off of us, but also, they are responding to our residents and our business owners who are looking for information, so...
I think Edith might have a little tag to discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate the dialogue. I think it's a balancing act, right? What I'm hearing here today is, how can we be efficient? How can we end the meetings early so that more public can be engaged, but yet how do we have this conversation? I'm excited to see how this goes. I think for us, as staff, we want to be as responsive and as prepared as we can be. We appreciate when we get questions in advance, and then therefore it helps the meeting move faster, because a question has been asked and answered. As both Dawn and Christina mentioned, we will treat public comment as public comment, and not engage in answering questions for a number of reasons. It's not appropriate for us, it is public comment, it could extend the meeting forever, and we might not be prepared. And sometimes those questions are not questions that could be succinctly answered. So we will work with you.
Okay.
As you call on us to answer those questions, and as you are trying to manage both the time of the meeting and the direction of that meeting.
Yep, thank you.
And if I can add to that, so if a relevant question is being asked, and you want to ask that question of the team that would help in the decision-making for the item at hand, please do so. And, you know, the time would be during discussion after public comment is closed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yes, please, go ahead.
So, in terms of public comment, I would ask, because much of the time when we're having these discussions, you know, we've got our notes, and we're trying to cover different things. But if Dawn, Christina, Mayor, if you hear a public comment question asked, you know, I think, I would like to have that addressed, either here's the quick answer, or we'll get back to you, but so that the public feels heard, and they know that we've heard what they've said, and we're looking to get them a response. So we don't necessarily need to do it right then.
That's a good point.
If we're not, but letting them know that that is going to be answered, and that we heard it. Because, you know, we could be in discussion, and I think it's a very relevant point, but by the time we get there, I mean, you know, I've got my minutes, and I've got these things I've got to get.
Sure, and just, I mean, general public comment, Bob Bennet had to ask Chris to change his algorithms.
Right, yes, yes.
So, that evening, I sent an email to Bob Bennet, thanking him.
Yeah.
And letting him know that our finance director was already on it, and appreciated his comments in helping conservation.
And I know that you do. I know that you all do, because I, you know, we get copied on the emails, and so I'm very aware, they're like, at super speed. But I think it's important for us to acknowledge that publicly, so that everybody else knows that you do also. That's my point.
And I think what we'd need to do, if someone in the public did ask a question that we said, hey, we will get back with you on that, we'll need to find a way of capturing their contact information. So we'll just have them maybe fill out a card.
We have it in the speaker card, and that has been our past practice when we were in person. And for folks on Zoom, when there's a question, sometimes city manager will say, we'll get back to you, and I will say, please email us at CCPublicComment, you know.
Got it.
And we have had people send us their information, and we follow back up with them. And so we have that mechanism, and can continue to remind them.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, if I can, I've got some other code. So, as far as the staff reports, I do appreciate that they're detailed. I will often refer people to that if they have questions, because I think, you know, to your point, a lot of times, we are much more educated. I mean, just having the background on some of these issues, and so I feel like that's helpful for me, and I know what I need to drill into and not drill into. But I also do think sometimes you're putting stuff in there for their benefit. I want to say, asking us clarifying questions, if that's helpful, you know, because I think sometimes you're trying to answer our question, and maybe I'm not quite clear with what I'm asking, or somebody's not clear, or you're not sure where we're going. So, if that's helpful, to ask us, you know, to clarify a bit there. And then, the responses for council, oh, if we could correct responses. This has happened a couple of times, where there have been responses from either council members, or, you know, a comment has gone said, and it's kind of just been acknowledged as so, as a truthful and factual comment, when in fact it isn't. And if we could try to catch those, that would be great, because I feel like then that can snowball. And there's been a couple of those that have been a little bit big. But I know that it's hard, we're in discussion. And I just want to point out, Mayor, you know, we've been talking about the five-minute rule, and so I'm hoping this all goes well, and we finish really quick, but...
If I could just quickly comment, so, you're asking us to correct council members when they make inaccurate statements, and that's a slippery slope. And what I will tell you, that, you know, if we believe that something is said that's just grossly misstated, and that will impact how you make your decision, and making a good decision on behalf of the community, and when you realize that there's a mistake that has been made in the words, we will let you know. There's times where something is said, and we don't catch that you've shared the wrong number, and none of us catch it, no matter how closely we're listening, and so we can't catch everything. But it wouldn't be fair for us every time one of you says something to say, well, no, that's not right.
No, you're right, you're right. But there are times when we've had things that have been said, and it's been brought up numerous times, and we still have not corrected it. And I just want to make sure that we do that.
Yeah, and if you hear those, let me know.
Okay.
So I can address it.
Okay, so on the five minutes here, what I think I'm hearing is, we're okay with leaving it as is, and that you'll allow me sort of, you know, the option to get into a discussion, say, can we, let's keep the second round to three minutes, five if we need it. But everyone's good with the five minutes on the second round, we're just going to work to be very careful and cautious, and be efficient, and not use the five minutes just because it's there. Do I hear that? Right?
So we're going to go with the, kind of the three-minute?
Yeah, yeah, sort of in our minds, that's what we're going to work with. And again, if someone's going to get to that point, I'll just say, three minutes is going to be enough, three minutes, you okay? And we'll work in that. And then again, like you said, we come back in the summer, we can reevaluate if we want to make the change then, we certainly can. Okay.
Madam Clerk, as you and your team are the keepers of the infamous clock, do you understand the direction?
No, thank you for asking. So it sounds like you're going to aim for a three-minute discussion. Do you want a timer set for three minutes?
Yeah, I think so. And I think that we'll do, yes, and I think that's what we want to do, and then there'll just be some flexibility as we're there. I can just simply ask, you're coming up on three, are you okay to wrap it up in that time, or do you need a little more?
Also, I want to clarify the way the timer works. We can start and pause it. If I stop it, if you had a minute and 47 seconds left, and I stop it, I don't have any way of knowing that. And I know there has been conversations in the past where I had two minutes left, and it's, so we'll do our best guess to put that time back up, but it's just a start-and-stop timer, so we don't have a way to capture that. So I just want to set that expectation clearly.
And so do you see us rewarding that, so that questions are stated as five, and then discussions are three?
I think that, I think that would be appropriate, to restate that, as Christina has mentioned, and then you...
Three up to five.
Say again?
Three up to five.
And actually...
Those should be our standard.
Five for Q and A, and then three for discussion, and then another by the apple, is that up to five minutes, and you change that to three as well? Does that sound good?
With the understanding that the mayor is responsible for controlling the meeting, so...
That's right.
So he's got the discretion to make exceptions as warranted.
Yeah.
Good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so three.
Edith?
Yeah, I thought if I heard this right, I think the intention was, if possible, to bundle the minutes of the conversation, so that, say, one council member has a lot to say, somebody else maybe doesn't, so, but it all stays within the bundled timeframe. And I think that, again, if we ground ourselves with, even before discussion, just Q and A and presentation, we're over 35 minutes just before we get into discussion. So then the question is, how much time do you want to allocate for that bundled conversation?
Right.
And then at what point do you move the meeting forward?
Yes, thank you, Edith, because again, I think we'll have to, from my perspective, we'll have to manage that as we're watching the time and seeing how that is going. And if the conversation that we, as the council, are having seems productive, then we keep going. If we've now somehow lost our way, we just ring that in, say, it's time to move on.
And to Edith's point about the bundled conversation, you could say that you'll have 15 minutes collectively for discussion, and see how that goes, and see if everybody feels like they're getting their piece in that 15 minutes. So that's another option, if you don't want to do the five for Q and A, three for discussion, with a second by the apple.
Yeah, that's what I had in my mind, was just like you described it. You guys are okay?
Whatever you want to try.
Okay, let's try that.
All right, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. So, in terms of efficiency and the, whoop, there we go, figuring out how do we, how do we allow the public to be able to be heard before midnight. It has been suggested by a few of you, should we consider starting the meetings earlier, rather than seven, starting at six for the regular meeting. And if the council's will is to move to a six o'clock start, there would be an ordinance that would need to be made. And so, because in our municipal code, it states seven, and so it's pretty straightforward. We would come back and introduce an ordinance at the next meeting, and then come back for adoption, and it would be effective 30 days later. So, Mr. Mayor, a question at hand for the council to discuss is, is six o'clock, or seven o'clock, or some other time, the right time to start a meeting?
Right. And there was, I heard at one of our council meetings, I think Mr. Spring, Renee, actually had suggested six o'clock. It's something that I've spoken with Christina about, I don't know how others feel about that. I think starting, from my opinion, starting at six, and trying to set a timeframe of about 10 o'clock, makes it a very reasonable timeframe for these discussions to occur, and allows the residents and our businesses to participate and stay involved. But I would be open to your thoughts and suggestions. Yvonne?
I would just say that six o'clock is very problematic for me, and I think for most, probably parents. So, I mean, I understand, but I would like to keep it at seven o'clock, even if we have a hard cutoff, you know, at 11:00 or 10:00, or whatever it is, because it, I mean, people work, and, you know, it's very difficult to try and get here at six o'clock and picking up kids, and, I mean, it's, it's a crazy mad dash. So, and I know I'm not alone, there's lots of people who are doing that, and doing the commute, and, you know, doing the hustle. So, that's, that's my...
Okay.
See, I've heard that for years now, and then I'm kind of, I don't buy it anymore, especially now that people can join the meetings on Zoom, so they don't have to travel anymore to attend the meeting. And in reality, we're already doing that, right? Almost every meeting that we've had in the past starts at five or six o'clock, which is not on the books yet. But we had many meetings last year that we started early.
And so what council member Spring is referring to is typically, if we need a closed session, we're having somebody from the outside join us, or even not, we'll start the closed session before the meeting.
Right.
Or we may have a workshop, and we do it before the meeting. And so that leads to a five or six o'clock start. One of the upcoming meetings, we have commission interviews, so we're going to start at five o'clock.
Right, right.
Yes, I see the challenge that some parents possibly might have, but there's also people, and I'm the only one on this council who has a day job, right? And if we start late and then end late, right, that's impacting my day job, right? And if we, if we're not being cognizant of people on the council also having a day job, at one point, we're just all going to be retirees, or people can afford not having to work on this council. I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Well, I mean, I feel like it's more geared towards retirees to move it to six o'clock. Quite frankly, I mean, I don't have a job that I report to, but we do have a small business that I, you know, I help run and manage, and I'm on the phone all day long, and I'm on the phone doing this as well, and I'm running around, and, you know, I just think that, I mean, that's my personal opinion. It's down to a vote, I mean. So, you know, I understand, I do empathize, because I know we've gone very late, and I know it is frustrating, you know, to go that late. But we also haven't been very good with our hard stop. We all often say, okay, well, we'll go another half an hour, okay, we'll go another half an hour, okay.
And we're going to talk about that, too.
You know, and so maybe, I don't know, you know, could we try that, having a hard stop, where we don't go and go and go, and we actually agree that, you know, hey, we need to decide what we're going to do, because we're going to stop at a certain time? Or if not, you know, then we'll do what we, what the will of the council?
Okay, well, Gino and maybe Marilyn have some comments. Gino?
Yeah, so, you know, when you take this job, you know the hours ahead of time, you know. So, I, I'm not sure if I agree with, you know, all the comments. You know the timeframe, and you know what you have to do, so...
Well, the timeframe has been seven. Is that what you're stating?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, no, I agree with council member Spring. Six o'clock is fine. I certainly don't mind that time, and I'm willing to do that time. You know, the reason we're having some of this discussion, though, is because we've already went to 11:00. already went to 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock and beyond in the last two years many times.
Yeah.
And so that's what Councilmember Spring is saying, you know, at 10:30, 11 o'clock, after, you know, working for four hours, because we come in and close sessions sometime, you know, it's rough making those decisions. So running the meeting efficiently, I'm getting back to running the meeting efficiently, efficiently, efficiently will really help the situation in the end time.
Right.
And coming prepared, you know, I, many times, I don't use even my five minutes for questions because my questions have been answered before the meeting. I don't have to bloviate to the community, you know, these questions, and they're in the supplements anyway.
Right.
So I don't use a lot of my question time because the staff does an excellent job in answering them in detail for me enough to be satisfied, so.
I'm saying that six o'clock.
That time you're okay with?
I'm okay with it, but again, I just want to hook that into running the meeting efficiently, that end time will help us out tremendously.
Right.
So yes, I know we went a roundabout way in saying six o'clock, but yeah, I'm okay with six o'clock.
Okay, Marilyn?
Personally, I don't really care if it's six or seven, but the one thing I think we all should consider is if we do have the closed session, if we change to six, we have closed session, then that makes it 5:00 P. M. Is that okay with everybody? Can you make the 5:00 P. M.? So I can make the 5:00 P. M., but I just want everyone to think that part of it, too.
Well, the option, unless the closed session impacts a decision in the council meeting, the closed session could be done after the council meeting.
Mayor?
We've had that before, and yes, but you're kind of burnt out by that, and usually closed sessions are pretty important.
Yes, I would agree. Michelle?
So adding to Marilyn's comments, sometimes we have closed session ahead of time because we have outside counsel, and if the closed session is at the end, we're often paying them throughout that time because we can't predict a closed session time, so that's one thing to consider. Second is, we haven't done it so much in the last year, but, you know, in the past, when we had big items, we would have workshops so that we could really sit down and go through a media item and not take up the council meeting time, and so that's something to consider. And then the last piece is, for example, at our February 15 meeting, we'll have commission interviews. We have those currently slated to start at 5:30 because depending on the number of applicants we get, or five, excuse me, thank you, because depending on the number of applicants we get, you know, we need to give them time to talk to you and for you to interview them. And so those are just other things that also happen before and maybe think about what we'd want to do about those.
Got it, okay.
And those can take place during the regular meeting, they don't have to take place ahead of time, but because we often have business that we need to get to on the council meeting, that's why we do it outside of the regular meeting, so we can do the commission interviews or the workshop and still get to the business items that need to be addressed.
Right. Do we do those many times throughout the year?
Yeah.
Commission interviews take place typically every couple of years, but it also depends if we have an unexpected vacancy, which we have no way of predicting, which is the case for the recruitment we have right now for the PRC. We'll have another recruitment coming up in June for planning commission. And then closed sessions, you know, do happen pretty regularly.
Closed sessions, I understand, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but appointments and interviews for commissions is not a.
It's typically like twice a year we see that.
Got it, so we could adjust if we needed to there, okay.
And also, you have to see how many people are applying. I mean, sometimes it's two people applying. I've been in interviews where there's seven people applying, so.
Right.
Yeah, and we all get a chance to ask that person that's applying a question. We usually take turns asking a question, you know, so.
Sure, sure.
So it's not just like, hi, I want to be it, and that's the end of it, yeah.
Right, right. Okay, and again, incorporating that into the meeting, again, it could be one of those. Of course, we don't always know what important issues are going to be on the agenda, but if we can manage that in such a way that if we're going to have interviews and we manage the agenda a little bit differently as well, okay. So I'm hearing, hey, everyone's flexible here, everyone, I say, there's some flexibility here. Should we take a vote?
Yes, so we would need direction if we want to change the time, if so, we would bring back at our next meeting an introduction of the ordinance.
Okay, I would look for a motion to begin the council meetings at 6:00 P. M.
Motion. I'll second it.
Motion by Gino, second by Renee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, do you have a question?
Oh, Michelle, forgive me, forgive me.
I just wanted to, you know, as the council is considering this motion, I'd like to remind my colleague and then also, colleagues, sorry, you were also on the council. I had brought or asked to have as an agenda item come before council that we be reimbursed for our childcare, and so if we are going to move to a six o'clock, I would ask that we consider reconsider doing that and see if we can have this council review that, because I certainly will be having childcare if we're going to be starting at 6:00 P. M.
Okay, got it, thank you, Yvonne. So with that then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes four to one. We'll begin, so you'll then begin the paperwork and the process?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, council.
Okay, so this was brought up by Yvonne about extending meetings, and so today she brought it up, but this is also an item that was brought forward as a follow-up item that council wanted to talk about. And so what I have here is an excerpt from our policy that talks about this 10 o'clock versus 11 o'clock, and so what was recently added was at 10 o'clock, the status of the agenda would be reviewed, and so if anybody wants to just take a moment and read that, 11 o'clock is the time where we need a motion if we're going to continue it.
I'm sorry, can you?
Yeah, I was just giving everybody a moment to read through it, and then I'll talk a little bit more.
And of course, that is with the, with meetings beginning at seven, with them at six, that could change this a little bit as well, right? Yeah, okay.
Quickly, Mayor, if I may, just thinking through this, we don't do a lot of motions at workshops, but it may be a good idea to open public comment since we are doing a motion for that specific discussion.
Got it. So can we go back and ask for any comments by the public? Is that, would that be acceptable?
I think to at least open it and it should weigh into the decision.
Okay, so we'll ask then if there are any public comments with regard to beginning the meetings at 6:00 P. M. Cecilia? I think we're going to get you a microphone here.
So beginning the meetings at six would be really helpful, you know, and it's not just about me, but, you know, a lot of people want to join the meetings, they don't because the meetings go too long. I have even gone to bed with my cell phone, and I joined because there's something on the agenda I want to hear about, but it turns out, there's so much talking, we're talking about things that are on on the agenda and it's going on and on, and before I know it, I wake up at three in the morning, my cell phone is thrown off the bed because it just went so long, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't take it anymore. So if we were to start at six, I think you would have even more people here to come, because if they're interested in what's going on, they're going to show up, but, you know, like people say, you never know when the meeting's going to end, and this has been for the last few years that I know, you know, that I can remember. And so I think it's important to not only, I mean, I understand all of you have jobs, you have children, you have obligations, but when you signed up for this, you knew what you were doing, and things do change within time, and so I think you need to also think about the community and what everybody else out there is doing. So I think six o'clock would be great. It's not just about me, it's about our community, because that's what I hear, that the meetings just go too long. If you start at six and at nine, I think people would be more open to that. So that's what I have to say about what's on the agenda right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Okay, so.
Well, quick, is there anyone else? Yep, oh, Nick?
Thank you for the opportunity. I would absolutely support the six o'clock start time as well, and we all have a multitude of things that we're doing, businesses, children's, other state of affairs that we have to manage, too, but I think six o'clock's a really good starting time, and I think based on now having a hybrid setting, whether you're here in person or you have the chance to be on the phone or on Zoom, I think you'll have greater attendance, and more importantly, I think you'll have an opportunity to have really depth conversation so it doesn't lead into the wee hours of the morning. And certainly over the last two years, we've got several council meetings that have bypassed 11 o'clock, and at that point, all of our energies, including your energies, get to a point where it starts to wind down. So if we're going to have really conscientious conversations, I think the adjustment to six o'clock is the right call.
Very good, thank you, Nick.
We have public comment open.
Is there a race? Is that coming back later as far as the norms?
We didn't vote on the norms, except to change some language, but we certainly, should there have been some public, I'm okay with it.
So typically for the workshops, we open it a few times throughout the meeting. I think it's appropriate if somebody has public comment on any of the things we've already discussed, go ahead and offer it if Dawn doesn't disagree.
That's the, yes, and just to be clarified, the role of the workshop, you're not actually voting on anything today, you're taking straw polls. So I understand something that's characterized as a vote while I was, sorry, I got, it was an important litigation phone call, but, but yes, straw polls are okay today, but your agenda doesn't allow you to take informal items.
They gave us direction to come back with the change to six o'clock.
Okay, so that was a straw poll. Okay, very good. So, please, Brian?
Thank you very much. Well, it is frustrating to sit through some of these meetings that go to 1:12 a.m. My comments are, I think you've outlined the four or five or six things that are important for city norms, but one is, in the past, we've seen people pull an item off the agenda to get a report because they haven't read the item in advance, and I know that's difficult. You have, sometimes you have 500 pages to go through, but that's the job you were elected to do, to represent the people that voted you in. So it's important to read the material beforehand, and if you do have some questions, get to staff before you come to the meeting, because that's going to save time in what we go through and we have to sit through, and the representatives that are on Zoom from your constituents have to listen to. So it's important, I think, to do that. Don't ask repetitive questions. That comes up quite often. It just drags time. Be respectful, that's very important, I think. Come prepared, I've already said. Be punctual, it's another thing that's been lacked sometimes, where people come in a little bit late for the meeting and they miss things. This is a very good discussion I think they've had today, and I think you've come across some things that you can correct, so I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Looks like Doug?
Oh, thank you again, Doug Muirhead, Morgan Hill. One of the things that was brought up early by Councilmember Borghiole was these large packets that we get dumped on a Friday afternoon. I have complained multiple times about treating the Brown Act minimum as a ceiling, and there is no reason other than staff time and schedules to not do something like the Water District does, which 10 days in advance, they put out an initial packet, there's a lot of information there because the reports have been created. And then three days, which is the Brown Act minimum, they do an update. You know, I have gotten to the point where I really resent having to spend half my weekend reading staff reports. Now, I also research and reflect and write responses, so I spend more time than a lot of people, but I really think you could allow both the council members and the public extra time to do the job that they need to do in order to have a productive meeting. I love this discussion about, you know, being brisk and explaining yourself on social media as opposed to having, you know, debates and discussions. I especially appreciated the city clerk and the city attorney trying to help us understand how you actually could have.
Hey Doug, if you could have you speak into the microphone for the folks at home?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I would characterize the split in views on this as, is this just your business meeting, or is it actually a meeting where you want to engage with the public? I want the latter, I like the discussions. I would say one thing you can do, because as I have mentioned, I'm visual, I like to read, staff reports could in fact include multiple options rather than just one solution that you're being asked to approve, and the reasons why, you know, this particular solution is better than the others that aren't. It's a little annoying to have the alternative action section in the staff report, and I'm doing a little bit of hyperbole, but they basically claim that if you don't do what they ask you to do, the world as we know it will end. And then my final comment really has to do with council reports. I don't know if you got to it, you kind of surprised me by taking public comment at this time, but those council reports are not just what outside meetings did you attend? It's anything that has to do with the business of the city where you are representing us and trying to make our lives better. And it just annoys the heck out of me when someone says, well, you know, I didn't have any outside meetings, so I have nothing to report. Well, you did nothing for an entire month to make our lives better? I just, it just really annoys me. One thing that Gilroy does is they actually list on their agenda the major outside assignments people have, so that we kind of know when you're out, you know, representing us. Anyway, but the most important thing, I think, is, you know, does the staff and the council members understand, are they hearing from the public? Do they want more of the involvement in the governance and the explanations? Or are they satisfied with just, you know, it's a business meeting, here's the recommendation, you know, pass it and move on? So this was just excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Nick, another one?
Yeah, he stopped when they came in, so he's just going to make.
Oh, okay, sure.
Now, again, thank you for your time, and please know that I'm just providing some observations out of full respect for the team here as well as the team behind me, but when it comes down to the first conversation regarding council norms, if you just take a look at the norms themselves, and I guess I'm saying this, let me take a deep breath because this is very meaningful for me. I've been privileged to work for many organizations, and no matter how we look at it as it relates to our operational efficiencies, culture trumps everything, and it really starts at the top, and it has to be then a dyad model that goes from the top to the bottom and from bottom to the top. And when I speak to that, I'm talking about from the community to the council and from the council back to the community. But when you take a hard look, I think we can do better, and it's not out of intent, but I think that we're marginalizing the discussion on council norms. And having an opportunity to observe many council meetings over the last two years, the discourse that sometimes we've seen during the meetings, it's hurtful, it's hard to listen to, and it just does not feel, it feels a little bit disingenuous as it relates to the total outcome of what we're expecting to see. But if I just do a quick review of the 26 council norms, about 11 of those relate to culture, and about 15 of those relate to operational protocols with the intention to be efficient as it relates to time management, et cetera. And why is this important? Because from my humble perspective, our values, right, shape our behaviors, our behaviors basically dictate our actions, and our actions really tell us the true essence of who we are as individuals and as professionals. So again, I don't think it's out of intent, but I think the council needs to take a hard look at what are the council's values? You need to take a hard look and really express what that looks like, and collecting together those values then are going to dictate the council norms that you want to adhere to. And although these are all inherently wonderful, and you read through them, without a definition of what it means to be respectful for each other, the community doesn't understand really what that means, is how do you deal with yourself internally, and then how that respect then transitions over to the council. So I would just humbly ask the council to spend more time on really defining what this really means, because it sets the essence of who you are as a council, and more importantly, it helps dictate the actions for the conversation we're having now as it relates to the rules for the conduct of meeting council settings. So the definitions of whether it's five minutes or three minutes, whether it's six o'clock or seven o'clock, still fall back on the values that you're setting for council norms. In my world, I consider them principles of commitment, and these are too many, they're all worthy, but unless you distill it down to five or six principal commitments of commitment as it relates to the values of who you are, you're not going to be able to execute towards the time management and all those other issues you've spoken to unless you address those. And out of full respect, I think over the last two years, this council needs to take some time and dedication to understand the values, to understand those principles of commitment that you can adhere to, create some statements around those. So we are all human, we may cross that line not out of intent, but then you can fall back to these guidelines and say, you know, we may have crossed the principles of commitment here, let's understand what we're speaking to, and more importantly, how we internally not only speak to each other, but then how that transcends over to the community. From a communication perspective, it would be wonderful. From a communication perspective, it would be wonderful, as wearing your communications hat, to have a visibility wall. So we not only understand and see the wonderful elected officials we have, but what are they committing to as it relates to those principles, not only at each meeting, but every interaction we have with the community. So again, I don't think it's out of intent, but I do suggest that you spend more time and understand what these norms, as we're calling them here, what I would call them principles of commitment, create some pledges around those, so the community can understand that you've all agreed in unison for unification really what that means. So those are my observations for the first two sessions.
Thank you, Nick. I like the idea of these, kind of defining these, but it would almost take another workshop to kind of work through that. Maybe that's something we can talk about.
Weekend.
Yeah, it just might, and we'd have to set that aside, but I, man, it might be worth, it might be worth considering, have a conversation around. So thank you, Nick, appreciate your comments.
And I'll just clarify that since we took public comment early, we won't do it again before lunch.
Okay, very good. I know we're getting close to, well, we're right up on lunch, but we do have to get back to, Christina and we were talking about an end time for the council, so.
Yeah, so, in light of the fact that it looks like we may be, oh, thank you, Michelle.
We may be moving towards a six o'clock start, so perhaps that changes the 10 to nine and the 11 to 10. Really, the thought here is, I think some of the council members have felt like 11 o'clock is in place as a time by which we, if we're going to go past 11, a motion needs to be made and voted on to continue, but it's been more just procedural, let's get a motion and then we keep extending it. And so one of the council members that brought this up was, we just keep extending it, we're not really sticking to that end time in this case at 11 o'clock. So it's, to open up the discussion, one, in this case, should we move an hour earlier? And then, two, is it really, should it be more of a hard stop with very few exceptions of why we'd go past, in this case, 10 o'clock?
Very good. Thoughts? Gino?
I happened to be on the school board when we came to something like this, and what we came up with was, I'll just take that time, but you can adjust the time. So at 10 o'clock, you make a motion to extend it for whatever time, 30 minutes or an hour, but you can only extend it one time. So in the past here, we went to 11 and extended it to 12, several times at least. So the discussion should be, how many times should we extend the time? I think it should be no more than one time. So if we say at 10 o'clock, should we, we look at the agenda, where are we? We're extended for an hour, and that's going to be it after that. So we have to figure out how to move all the items over to another meeting after that. I think that's one approach that we could take, that we actually put it in and only extend it one time. Otherwise, we can take a vote, because it's the option of the council to extend it again. And so we have to define that, how many times we extend that meeting. But whether it's 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
I hope, I kind of explained myself.
Yes, you did, very well. Thank you. Yvonne?
I think that if we're going to move to six, it should be a stop at 10. If it's going to be seven, it's stop at 11. I think it should be a hard stop and only an exception to 10.
I like that. Hard stop. Anybody else? Renee?
Yeah, no, the goal really has to be, not just for us, but also, again, we're not doing this just to make decision amongst us, right? We want people from the public to participate, and I agree, right? They have to know, well, they're going to discuss that no later than 9 o'clock or so, right? If we leave that end open-ended, right, whether it's one or several extensions, that doesn't help those who want to listen in, right? Then it leaves it open-ended for them as well. So I agree with you, the goal has to be hard stop unless there is a reason, and sometimes we have, agenda items that are time-sensitive and have to be, neither vote for whatever reasons, right, the city manager usually, or Don advises us when that happens. And those might not always be of the greatest interest to the public, but we still have to make a decision, right?
Yeah.
And so, yes, everything should move up by an hour for obvious reasons, and really, extension by exception only if there's a good reason. And we have been afraid in the past of really kicking down an agenda item down the road because we know then it will impact the next meeting and the next agenda, right?
Right, right.
I am more in favor of, you know, we have, I think it's in our code, there are three meetings per month. I'd rather have that third meeting if needed and a shorter one than two endless long meetings, right?
Yeah, good point.
And again, we have the three meetings already, they should be on our calendars.
Yeah.
They just often get canceled, right, and we only have two. But again, it's not just for us, right? I think anyone out there, whether they work or not, is just asking them to stick around after 9 o'clock at night. I'm sorry, that's just, that's not asking them to be involved, right? That's asking them to be excluded.
Right, good point. Okay, thank you, Renee. Marilyn?
I think it's fine to go to 10, and I actually like Gino's idea that we can extend it one time, and because, just like Renee said, otherwise we just keep kicking the bucket down the road to further meetings. So I think at 10, we need to look at what's left on the agenda, and if we perhaps have to change the order of what's left to address the next really important thing that must happen that evening, then we have that hour, but hard stop at 11.
Okay, so I'm hearing actually a couple different here. So what I'm hearing, again, if we moved things an hour, that the review would be at 9, we could extend to 10, and the 10 is the hard stop. We could do a 9 review, extend to 10, do a one-time extension, so that sort of a thing. You're saying at 10 o'clock, we review and do an extension till 11. If we start at 6, that's a four-hour meeting at 10 o'clock. I mean, three hours if we're trying to stop at 9. So any, I've got a couple mixed messages here, so Yvonne.
I've got an additional thought for you. When we're talking, the agenda would be helpful if we could maybe have those items identified on the agenda when it's put out, what is time-sensitive? We shouldn't be reviewing this at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock and deciding what is time-sensitive. So if we have that ahead of time, this is time-sensitive, then that's what, you know, we're going to have to look at. I mean, I think we're being asked for concessions, I think we should have concessions all the way around to if we want to make it work, you know, that's, that's something that would be really helpful to know.
Thoughts on that, Christina?
Well, the agenda's built on, you know, the importance of probably what's happening. They don't just pick the agenda item out of a hat and say, this is the first agenda item.
Right, but some of those, like, we have to vote on them if we're going for a grant or there's a deadline for Rena, like, we have to do it then. We can't, we don't have the luxury of extending it. So it would be helpful for us to know, we've got to hear this item.
And what I'm saying is, hopefully, the staff will build the agenda on the things that have to happen that evening.
Well, maybe Christina, could you, would you mind addressing that?
Yeah, so consent calendar, well, so there's the consent calendar, and some of those might be timely, and so the thought is, is that there could be discussion on those, you know, and so we could let you know in the staff report if they're time-sensitive. Right now, there's only a few times where we've said that this is, has to be adopted by X date. We could, in the staff report, add something if that's the will of the council.
That's, I mean, it's, doesn't seem to be putting anybody out by doing that, right? I mean, we certainly knew like the last meeting, the housing element had to be adopted. We knew full well, it was very time-sensitive. So I don't think what Yvonne's asking is too difficult.
Is that, do you think that's problematic?
Yeah, teammates, any thoughts on that?
One thing, just to keep in the back of the mind, is that I don't think this is what anybody's saying, but the idea that because something's not time-sensitive, we can just keep kicking it down the road, because sometimes we're paying staff to be here, so if we're going to kick it down the road, we want to know earlier rather than later, because, you know, for most of us here, most of the teams here right now, we're not hourly, we're paid, whether it's an 18-hour day or an eight-hour day, we're being paid the same. But we do have people that are being here, being paid on time and a half, so.
Right.
Kicking things down the road just increases costs, so. But that said, I think it is easy to know, you know, when we have something on for public hearing, it's usually because it's a development project, and those development projects, we have, we have, not only do we have a limit on the number of times, we can bring them back. So if we bring them here and we continue them, that's, we can only do that, but also we have timeframes in which we have to get those approvals done. So those are the types of things that we usually put earlier on the agenda, and we let you know you've got to do them tonight.
Okay, okay, that'd be helpful to know. So go to Edith, and then Chris.
Thank you. I think the other thing to be mindful of is that often, there could be items that have a lot of public participation, and we are mindful of that. If we know that there's going to be a lot of public participation, we try to stack it up in a way that we can be respectful of the community's time, and often, they're asking us, what time is this item going to be heard? And they're making time to be here with us, so if the item is going to get moved, then it's counterproductive for our public engagement efforts.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
And I just note, too, sometimes when the meetings get delayed or go longer, the consent calendar goes for an hour and a half into the meeting, and those are items that maybe the public's not as interested in or take time. So when the consent calendar goes that long, you're pulling items off the consent calendar, that pushes the meeting back. Then those consent calendar items are heard, and those may not be the priority items, they take up a lot of the time, and then you get to the other items at the end of the meeting that actually are a bigger priority, and you have less time for them. So that, looking at the consent calendar, I think is important when you're thinking about that as well.
Can we, is it possible to move the consent calendar toward the end of the agenda? Would that be appropriate or would that not?
Yeah, I mean, there's pros and cons, we've talked about it before, Chris.
One, I was going to say on the consent calendar, I think it's important to put the consent calendar itself up front.
Front, okay.
But what, because, because there are people who may have, you know, they may have an item on consent, and they're going to wait to see if it gets pulled. What they want is to make sure it goes through both staff and the, you know, if it's a third party.
Okay, yeah.
But there's nothing that says that the item has to be, like, if it's pulled from consent, there's nothing that says it can't be moved to the end of the agenda.
I see.
So to be heard.
And we did that recently at a meeting where we knew we had some other important things to get to, and so that could be a practice or in the policy that consent is first, if items are pulled, they're heard after all of the other business and public hearing items.
I like that. That's not bad.
That's an option.
Is that something we can do on a case-by-case basis, or should we say we are going to agree here that that's what would happen on a consent item that's pulled?
Again, the reason is, why do they get pulled? If it's just to get a short report or to answer questions, then I don't think it should be pushed to the end of the evening.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that's needed. Sometimes there are items on the consent calendar where we know there is no consent on that, and then they shouldn't even show up there, right? I think those are the ones you're referring to in some of the cases, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but we had those cases. Again, the, coming back to the time, I think we should move it up, right, just to be.
To move it up, move it up to 9?
To 9, but whether or not, you know, if you need me until 2 o'clock in the morning, I'll stick around if the business requires that, right? And that's, my point is not that I want to go to bed early, but again, it's for me, people want to know, do I have to stick around until 9 o'clock, or do I have to stick around 11 or later, right?
Right.
And that's important for those who want to participate, right? And if they have some certainty that it's probably not going later than 9 o'clock, that might maybe drive up the participation from public.
I would agree, yeah.
Consent, one second.
All right, Gino?
Sorry, I just wanted to go back to consent really quickly.
Yeah.
And response to what Renee said is, we don't always know, like, we think, we might put something on consent that we don't think's controversial, but it is with council members, and that's why it's really important to tell us early if you're going to pull something.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that.
Because that way, we can, we know, and if you tell us we're going to pull it for a question, then we, then, I just have a quick question, I'm going to pull it because I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Then we can, then we know how to address it.
Right, that's a good point, Don, because actually, we could just take that immediately. If it's to pull it and get a report, we could move that to the end, right? Is that what you're saying? So we could do that really on a case-by-case basis. Okay, so we've got that settled. Yvonne? Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, Gino was first, forgive me.
So again, I like Mr. Lawken's suggestion to put the consent, if you pull consent, put it to the end. Don't forget the consent have staff reports in them, so you can read the staff reports. You can email the city manager, asking questions about consent. I've done that. So a lot of that could be done, you know, prior to the meeting. So many times, pulling a consent item, sometimes they were pulled, I couldn't figure out why they were pulled. Now, again, I'm for moving it to the end, because it's, you know, we get the report, we can get all our questions answered before the meeting, so, anyway, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, okay. As it stands, and I appreciate your comment, I think what we've agreed upon is if it's a quick question, we'll address it immediately, if it's beyond that, we'll move it toward the end. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
We're good? Okay, Yvonne?
I think that sounds good. I mean, hearing, you know, what Michelle was saying about putting it, the suggestion to put it at the end, I thought that was a great suggestion, but then as Renee was talking about, well, some of these are a very quick question, or they're a quick report, or somebody in the audience is, where, I think that's also a great point. So this is where, you know, hearing what people have to say makes a difference in what you think. So if we're going to try, what I hear you saying, I think, is, if it's quick, we'll hear it up front, if not, then we'll put it on the end, is that?
That's where I'm going with it, and I think that's what everyone's agreeing to. I think Edith maybe has a comment on that before we.
Let me, if I could just, the other piece with consent is, you know, I would say again, there are some things that I agree, maybe you don't know, that are, but there are certainly things that we do know that are controversial that do show up on consent, because we feel like it's just a quick, you know, vote, and I really want to ask that we do not put things on the consent. If there is a hint that there is going to be controversy about it, I always, always will have people call me, text me, email me, and ask me to pull things off of consent, usually the day before, the night before. They are not studying this, you know, days before, so I think it's really helpful if we can get that. And I know you try, but if you can, you know, maybe even put out a feeler, if you're not quite sure about an issue, hey, have you guys heard about this? Or, you know, ask anybody from the council, do you think this could be, that would be helpful in getting us to get some of these controversial things that, and quite frankly, would help us as well.
Sure, okay, appreciate that. Edith?
Sure, thank you. So two good points of conversation. I think that we ground ourselves with the fact that consent items, by practice, we put items that are routine business of the city, and we know that if there is anything that requires that conversation, we try to put it as part of that discussion. Often, if there is a conversation that has taken place at the council, and there has been maybe, maybe a not unanimous vote, but there has been direction to staff to proceed with items, that is the direction that, and the vote that has been taking place, and that is how we act to, on behalf of the city council. So I really do appreciate that this council is trying really hard to be unanimous. It's not always the case, and once a direction has been given, and maybe there has been not a 5-0 vote, we proceed with that direction, and then sometimes those items come back in consent because it's just kind of closing the loop on that item.
And to add to that, an item can be, a council member can ask for a separate vote on an item, so they can register a no vote, but a yes on everything else. Don?
Got it, okay. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's the practice, because if it's a second reading of an ordinance and the positions haven't changed, there isn't really a need to rehash the arguments, it's really just, I voted no to introduce it, and I'm still going to vote no to adopt it is appropriate.
And that's a simple comment, that's not pull the item, right?
Yeah, so when you, when you ask for a vote on consent, a council member can raise their hand and say, I want to register a no vote on items 3, 4, and 7, because I wasn't in support of those to begin with. And then sometimes things go on consent where they might be controversial in the public, but the council has absolutely zero discretion, and so those are the kinds of things that I can see where, and, you know, we maybe need to do a better job in our staff reports of explaining that the council has no discretion.
Got it.
It's ministerial, but, but those are the kinds of things where, where the public might, if we haven't done a good job of explaining it to the public, might think, this is really controversial, and we, but it's not something that really needs to take a lot of time at council, because there's not a lot for you to do.
Okay, Edith, you have one more?
So thank you, so that's what I wanted to clarify, that, what was just said. We administer at the direction of the council, and maybe that this is going to help us going forward if you do. If you do still have an objection to some of the items, just state those as you approve the conversation. I do think that council member Martinez-Bern brings up a good point regarding items and consent that get pulled by the public, in which time I do think it warrants a conversation, whether you then want to kick it to 10:00 or address it right there and then.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Yvonne?
And so for clarity, so if we have an item that we voted on, for example, the downtown lanes, and there is definitely, you know, not unanimous decision on the council. And then we have items come back on consent that are related to the downtown lanes, I think that we should have that on as a public hearing rather than just continuing to put that on. And what I'm hearing is, well, the council has voted on it and so we're just going to continue to put these items that are related on consent calendar. And that is a big, that's something where you will hear very much about, you know, because if there's distension in the community, they want to discuss it. So if there's something that's being expanded on or what have you. So I think that's something to think about.
Sure. Do I have thoughts on that? I mean, do those, in an item like that, that is by all means controversial, do any of those conversations end up on a consent calendar?
Not, that, that, that might not be the right example. But there are, there are times when there's, when council has taken controversial actions and then the follow-ups get put on consent calendar because they're really, for example, I mean, for example, ordinances that are not, you know, we've had ordinances that have been adopted or introduced on a 3-2 vote. The second reading comes back on consent because it's a second reading. The decision by council's already been made. It's then been published and people have, essentially, people have two weeks or more to make legal challenges, at which point it's just a pro forma for council then to adopt the ordinance. Unless one of the council members who voted for the ordinance to introduce it has changed his or her mind and now says, I don't, you know, I made a mistake. I didn't mean to, I didn't want, I shouldn't have introduced that. There really isn't a reason to rehash the ordinance.
Yeah, so if it comes back and it's not, nobody's mind has changed, it's not going to go from a 3-2 to now a 3-2 in favor to a 3-2 opposed, would be no sense to pull that item and then debate it again.
Right.
Right, okay.
But I mean, those are prime examples, like you mentioned earlier. And I've done that, right, where I'd like to be recorded as a no vote.
Yes, and you've, yes, you've done that regularly.
I think maybe it's the term consent calendar for these kinds of items, right? That people read, well, there's actually consent amongst the council, even though there was a 3-2 vote behind it, right? So I think sometimes that it's, people read something differently in it than we intended on the consent calendar, especially in these kinds of examples.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah. I think, I'm talking about, I understand what you're saying and that's not really the example that I'm talking about. Let's say, for example, hail extension and there's a vote on it and then something comes back where, you know, oh, now it's going to be 300,000 more if we do whatever. I think that, while it is related to hail extension and while it has been voted on, I mean, now we're talking about, you know, there is some difference, I think, in those types of items. So I'm talking a little bit different than just kind of reviewing ordinance at the second reading.
And those, Yvonne, I think what we have all talked about here, those would be, those are the opportunities to in advance, talk to Christina about that and we may know, I mean, they might be able to answer the question before it needs to be pulled or in fact, agree that, yeah, we should pull that and talk about it.
Yeah, but it would just be great to have it not, you know, to not have to then police it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we, I think we absolutely hear you. And I think we can continue to look at those items and be aware of that and be really thoughtful about placing them on the agenda.
We, now, back to this section here, because I do think at some point here, we probably need to break for lunch and then do the committee assignments after. Okay. So what we do have here, though, is the thought of, we are beginning, based on our straw poll, Don. We are starting meetings at, considering starting meetings at 6:00, ending at 9:00 with a one-time vote to extend till 10:00.
And I just, I want to highlight that that would also be shortening our meetings by an hour.
Yep.
Which is another big change. So what I initially heard was we would end at 10:00 with a check-in at 9:00. And then maybe the possibility to extend to 11:00, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, is this, does this read that it's a, this currently goes from 7:00 to 11:00 with a check-in at 10:00?
Yes.
We should be consistent. So it should be 6:00 to 10:00 with a check-in at 9:00. That's really what it should be. Okay. Got it. I was confused, I'm sorry.
End past 10:00 or not.
Yes, yes. That makes sense. Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
And what's the consensus on extending?
I think it's a one-time, what I'm hearing and what we're all agreeable to is a, it's a one-time. We're going to extend it, whatever amount of time we agree to extend it to it.
Unless there's unusual circumstances.
Unless there's unusual, which was I was just about to say.
Excellent. Did you want to put in the hard end time like a couple had mentioned, or it's just we end at 10:00 with one extension?
Based on what we just said as far as, based on, you know, certain circumstances. So I think, though, it is, the spirit of the law here is that it's 6:00 to 10:00, check-in at 9:00. It's a one-time extension. We're done.
And it's okay to end before 10:00?
Yes.
I mean, 7:44 work.
Record-setting time. You call it beginner's luck.
All right.
I remember a 20-minute meeting.
Okay, that's my goal. All right, so shall we break for lunch?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to adjourn for lunch? Thank you. 30 minutes, is that what it is? 30-minute lunch? Okay, very good. All right.
Let's bowl, let's bowl, let's rock and roll. Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. Hey, come on, let's get this show on the road. Do we... Okay. All right, good afternoon, members of the community, teammates. Okay, so we have one more item in the sort of the policies area, and that is deadline for submission of supplements. This was an item that one of the council members requested on that follow-up list that we are bringing back. And should there be a deadline for submission of supplements? And so supplements come by way of members of the public sending in information or it could be members of staff. So if questions are asked and we think that, those are questions that are, items that all of the public and council members should benefit from the answers, we will supplement those responses to the questions. We might get, you know, letters from the public and so forth. And so the question is, should there be a deadline for submitting those supplements? And so Michelle, Don, and I spent some time, you know, looking at this and what we have in writing and what, you know, what can we do and should do from a legal perspective and just from a logistical perspective. And so right now, in policy 9701, there is a timeline noted if members of the public want to show something during the council meeting. So if they want to put up slides, we don't allow video, but a slide, that has to come to the city clerk by noon.
The day of the meeting.
The day of the meeting. And so I'm going to turn it over to Michelle and Michelle's going to pull up some potential language to think about. But what we want to do is sort of allow enough time for the public to submit comments. But what we have to be careful of is that if comments are submitted at 6:00 the day of the meeting, it is not feasible to get to the council as well as to the public and supplement them to the agenda. And so Michelle has come up with some language that I'm going to ask her to share. It's going to speak to those deadlines.
You want it up on the screen or do you want me to just read it?
Yeah, you can just read it. It's fine. And so, you know, the council sometimes is, you know, gets items that are brought to their attention. And it can be frustrating because you wish you would have had it at the time the agenda went out. But, you know, reality has it that members of the public see the item on the agenda, have something to send in. And those questions come from the council after the review of their topics, you know, that sort of thing. And so that's why things don't come as early as, you know, as desired.
Well, for me, the issue really is if they come too late, right? I might not be able to even look at them. But then they still get added the supplements to an agenda item, which then kind of triggers the perception that I saw all of that and I might not have been able to because they came in late. Sometimes we get all those updates just prior to the meeting start, right?
Yeah, and there's a, we have a, it's a balancing act because, especially, and I help on these quasi-judicial hearings because that's really where the risk comes in. And giving people, you know, giving people an opportunity to, especially if it's, if it's, you know, we get the lawyer letters that come in at, you know, 5:00 to 7:00 for the 7:00 o'clock meeting and it's really frustrating. If you think it's frustrating for you, it's extra frustrating because I have an obligation to respond to it and I don't have time. And that's frustrating. On the other hand, we have to make sure we're giving people adequate time to get their comments in. Whether or not you have time to read them, they become part of the record so that if your decisions are ever challenged, they're part of what is the record that would go to the court. And I think it's perfectly appropriate to express your frustrations at the last-minute correspondence and do that publicly and openly. And hopefully, you know, some of the regular contributors that send stuff in at the last minute will get the message that if they want you to consider it, they should think about submitting it earlier. But we also don't want to tell people, sorry, you can't, you know, there's a point at which, you know, you really can't look at it. But we don't, we want to make that point as, that time as late as possible. We don't want to tell the public, sorry, you're too late. You can't communicate with your council anymore.
But could there be a way to separate those that come in late from those that came in on time? Again, it sets, if they just get added the supplements like any other one that was sent in early, they expect or anticipate that we read and studied all before we even have the discussion.
Yeah, and that's what, I think that's what Michelle was saying.
So the language that we have drafted for your consideration to go into the policy and we might even add it to the agenda itself, which is what some cities do, is that you may submit comments on any agenda item in writing via email to the city clerk to the CC public comment email address or by mail. Please email your comments no later than 3:00 PM on Tuesday, the day before the council meeting. For your comments to be submitted to the members of the city council with sufficient time to review comments. Obviously, these timelines can be adjusted. You may continue to provide written comments up to noon on Wednesday, the day of the meeting. Please note that while these comments will be provided to the city council by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, the council members may not have sufficient time to review them before the meeting. And then we say written comments will not be read aloud and that they're posted on the website, so don't include personal information. And so those are the rough timelines we've come up with. We would still add them to the agenda as we do. And the other change that we're looking at making is adding the city council five email addresses to the CC public comment so that also as they're coming in, they're going directly to you and that you may have time to review them at your leisure. We will still send them out to you like we do to say, hey, here are supplements for items three, five, and seven. Because sometimes when the public emails it in, it's not clear which item it is. But you will be getting them directly and we will still follow our process.
So is that statement on our website already or is this something new?
No, this is a draft.
Oh, so this is what I asked for last year? Okay, good.
Yes, so we would propose putting this in the policy and on the agenda. And then it would go on our council agenda page as well.
And I totally agree with council member Spring. On the day of the meeting, especially, you know, late in the afternoon, I don't usually get to any of those supplements that I get in an email because I just, I have other things going. I may be still reviewing agenda items. So I completely agree with my colleague on that.
But could we, and I agree too, that I think the wording is nice. But could we then separate those that come in late from the ones that are, that came in? Because for me, the issue is, I don't want them to think I actually read them. And if they just get added the supplements to the agenda, the way we get them to the public, like any other ones, people don't know when they came in, right?
Yeah, so we, there isn't like a way to separate them. We could rename them, which might get confusing because we just have a way to attach them. So what, we could do a couple of things. Let's say five emails came in on noon the day of the meeting. So we could lump them all together into one PDF, like they would be separate, but in one document that says, "Supplements received, noon, day of the meeting for item X," and attach them. We could attach them individually and each one would say, you know, "Item 1, supplement 4, received noon of, day of the meeting." Like, so there are ways we could label them that way. Yeah.
In my personal opinion, it would make sense then to distinguish those late-in coming from those that took the time and courtesy to submit it early.
And do the timelines seem to make sense?
Yvonne?
So, I mean, I agree. It is frustrating because you're trying to read the supplements and actually be able to comment on them in a meaningful way. But I also think in fairness to the public that, I mean, you know, as I've said, people are very busy and they're doing lots of things. And we have the opportunity for public comment that we take right up at the item. And so I think, to be fair, you know, I mean, we're being equitable, that we give people that opportunity. They want to express themselves in email. It is their preferred way to do it. That they're able to do that. And maybe, maybe you could highlight those that came in that day. I mean, I love the idea that you said, because it used to be it would go to you and then you would kind of repackage it and organize it and send it to us. But if we could just get that timely, then that's helpful.
Yeah.
And then if you could maybe, you know, you could say, we had, I'm not sure if the council got a chance to see everything, but today, you know, afternoon or whatever, we had five supplements that came in so that we are aware that they came in because people are working and, you know, doing what they have to do. That, I think, could be helpful too, just so that we're highlighting so that people know, we got them. We got them late. Maybe not everybody reviewed them. And you could even, you know, just here they are. Or, I don't know, that we need to review each one, but just let us know, five of them came in.
But is that the same as in the wording that you just provided to us? It basically says, after 3:00, the council may or may not have a chance to review it. It doesn't say they can't provide the comments. It just means we may or may not have the chance to read them. And that seems reasonable to me, yeah. Because now if we say at the council meeting, you've got to tell us, oh, some came in, don't have yet, you know, now we're all looking around going, okay, oh, shoot, I didn't have a chance.
And it's more to track and another document to create to do that. If that's the will of the council, we can absolutely do it.
Well, I don't know if we want to do more work at that late hour.
I mean, I would just suggest, I'm not, you know, dead set on anything. There's also, if we're going to be, maybe, you know, somebody here could read the supplement for them during public comment. I don't know, but that was kind of my reason of just saying.
People can always come. There's nothing, like, so I want to be careful that we don't create a lot of new processes. The public is always welcome to come to the meeting and speak public comment, whether they emailed it and they want to read what they emailed, as long as it's within the three minutes. The beauty of email is you could probably say more than you might be able to say in three minutes. And we're not precluding them from sending anything. We're by no means saying, you, council will not get it, it will not be considered. We're just saying, we're going to send it to them. They just may not have time to review it. They may. It may be a quiet Wednesday and, you know, the girls are on a playdate and you've got time to dig in. And it might not be. It might be a day where you're screeching in because you're figuring it out, right?
Yeah.
So there's nothing, it's not changing our process. It's just really kind of, I think, encouraging the community and our team as well to be aware of some timelines for consideration for all of you.
Yeah, and I'd recommend we don't have someone read someone else's emails or comments. They could be here. I think they're sending them, again, they're emailing them in because it's convenient. It may be last minute. I think they get it.
And as we talk about efficiency of meetings, that could definitely add to the length of our meetings.
To me, that sounds good. You know, the issue is, and we had that, right, they actually, even worse than what you described, then they also speak up during meetings and say, I just said, I sent you a letter. Talking about because you just sent it five minutes ago, right? Those cases for me are a problem, right? Those cases for me are the problem, right?
Do your job, Renee, do your job.
That's right, you know what you signed up for.
Okay, so it sounds like we can go with it.
Yeah, is that likely? Is that good to work with that?
I'd like to track.
Okay, okay.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to move on.
Okay.
Okay, so before we get into the actual outside assignments itself, one of the suggestions on the council's outside assignments is a process to identify when an alternate is needed. And then in the follow-up list was how she council report back to council on what they're doing on outside assignments. And then a suggestion was share how they voted. So I want to give you a few of my thoughts on this and then have the council talk about it. So process to identify when an alternate is needed. So the best practice here is if you are assigned to a committee and you know that you cannot attend and there's an alternate, you notify that alternate as quickly as possible. So that's just done through phone call, email, text, and hopefully the alternate can go in your place. That is the best process on that. Reporting back to council. So right now, we have on the agenda a section that's been talked about this set today where one council member has three minutes and that rotates every meeting. And then each council member has a minute for other sort of reports. And that's really the best place to report out to council, you know, what those outside assignments were, any notable items from those meetings, anything that your fellow colleagues would want to hear about, the community would want to hear about as you're representing Morgan Hill, primarily in these regional committees. And then share how you voted. This one's a little bit more problematic. A lot of times these committees, they're not voting on anything specific. A lot of times it's informational updates and sharing. However, if there is a significant vote that would impact our city or the region, potentially that is something that could be shared during the report out to the council. So with that, want to turn it back over to you, Mark, there, to talk about what the council might want in this area.
All right. Any thoughts on this topic? Anybody? Gino?
Well, I, I'm pretty satisfied with my current committee assignments. And I feel I don't want to.
Those are all changing today, my friend.
No, I'm joking, I'm kidding. And I'm open to that.
No, I'm kidding.
But, and I don't want to overbear myself too much because some of these outside committees do take some time and energy. So I'm just sharing my thought about that, but I'm open to going through this and getting assigned. But I'd like to especially stay with my current ones because I'm just forming good relationships with them.
Right.
Right now.
Yep.
And, for example, the Logos Creek Flood Committee, you know, it's a committee that I've established good relationships with.
Sure.
I would hate to get moved out of that.
Right, right, makes sense. I do like the idea of council members, at least at one point in the, and we're typically having.
Little Logos Creek.
At least two meetings a month, that at some point in those meetings, they are reporting out.
On me?
On what they're, what happened at the committees that they're representing us at. And then, as Doug had mentioned, any other things that are going on in the community. But again, we do, certainly, we are all assigned to something we should be reporting back so that our colleagues all know what's going on. And I think Doug even mentioned, and I like this too, it may add a little bit more work or room on the agenda, but in go where they do list under each council member's name, the committees they're assigned to. So the public does know, you know.
And just so everybody here knows, on our website, go to city council, drop down, outside assignments, it's right there on our website.
Got it.
So it is visible.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Well, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I think having alternate is important, A, and especially I sit in a couple of boards where we sometimes struggle to get a quorum. And if the alternates are not being activated and show up, then you're wasting the time of everyone who actually took the courtesy to show up, as one thing. And if someone doesn't want to be on the list of alternate, then say so, then later on, then we go over the list. And yes, I think it's important to, if you want me to fill in for you, let me know early on. Don't tell me an hour prior to the meeting. Oh, that's just not going to fly. And, you know, Doug, we're here, made a comment, I thought we were told in past workshops not to comment on everything we're doing in the community, but to focus only on what we're doing with our assignments. But if there is no meeting, and that, like, that's what I had over the past few weeks, there's nothing for me to report. That doesn't mean I don't do anything, it's just, we were asked in this quarter, in the past, not to communicate every event we go to or else we are doing.
Makes sense, yeah.
So I just want to clarify why I, just as at one of the last meetings, reported the way I did, to limit myself.
Yes.
Otherwise, I could talk for 10 minutes, 20 minutes, right?
Yeah.
To say all the events I go to and so on, right?
I think we want to be focused on the committee assignments and reporting back on those. Should at some point we want to expand it, we can, but for now, I think it's important to report on those committee assignments and keep it to that.
But that's different than if I understood Doc's expectation, right?
Well, I understand, yeah. And again, I think, I think what we're asking here and what the council's agreeing to is reporting back on committee assignments.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to have that clarified.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
Anything further on this topic?
Anyone else? Marilyn, you good? Okay. Yvonne, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is our annual goal setting dates. So the council adopted the 2023 calendar, and part of that, we added on the 2024 workshop in January. And so the council adopted it, but we have a council member that wanted to revisit that schedule. And so in Policy 0602, it states the council will hold its annual goal setting retreat the last Friday and Saturday of the month. So for us, that would have been today and tomorrow. We didn't have all five available tomorrow, and we thought it was very important to have all five council members present and then to talk about going forward, do we look at a different weekend or do we just stick with Policy 0602? So that, it's just opening up the floor to talk about what the council wants to do. And so we are talking about 2024 in an existing policy.
Well, real quick, I do want to say I appreciate everybody's flexibility this year and your willingness to kind of break it up. So thank you for that. And from there, we'll have a discussion. Marilyn?
Yes, I just want to add, I've been in many goal setting retreats and I've actually run many. I feel that the consistency of two days is very important because you sort of get a rhythm going. And to break it up now, it's going to be five more weeks before we meet again, I think, is not meeting the goals of what we're trying to accomplish in these goal settings. So I would either, if it is already known that you cannot attend this particular weekend every year, that we change it to a weekend that everyone can attend every year and not break it up. I just find it's counterproductive.
Yes.
I completely agree with Marilyn just said, for the same purpose.
Yeah.
Furthermore, is again, Friday is a workday for me, and I have blocked out the Friday and the Saturday because we've known that for years now and those workshops are. And the change was made without even someone like me being asked. All of a sudden, you just get an information, well, the second meeting is going to be in March. Well, that means for me, I have to take another day off from my day job. And I wasn't even asked if I could do that.
Right.
So the decision was, and that didn't come across well with me. And especially, it's in violation of a policy in place. So I think we should have first consulted, is everyone okay with the dates? And I'm okay with another weekend if that works for everyone.
Yeah.
But just making the decision and asking us to change and then telling someone like me, well, these are the new dates, that was not well done. I don't know who makes that decision.
Real quickly, I take responsibility for that. And I apologize for the problematic cause for you. So I'll be more aware of that in the future as well and make sure that we get things out, information about that much further in advance so people can make adjustments. My apologies.
And I'm very flexible, you know, if someone says, Marilyn says, well, I can't do that, but I can do next week, I have no problem with that.
Right.
Consult me as well, not just those who can't come.
Yep, good point. My apologies.
Well, a way to, and I agree with Councilmember Spring, a way to get around that is either have the city attorney or the city manager send out a poll to us and say, is this okay or not? And then that way, they can get it back. But what Councilmember Spring is saying, we weren't included.
Got it.
Well, even worse, we have, we have a policy in place that defines when we meet.
Right, right. Yep, I get it. Anything else on that? Okay, Yvonne, anything?
Yeah, I agree with that. If, you know, we want to keep a weekend so that we keep, as you're saying, the momentum going, I think that's fine and I would be happy to do that. I, I'm wondering if we could do maybe one month later. I looked at it and I think, but I want to confirm with you, when we meet, it's what, the end of January, and then the workshop always kind of falls in August?
Typically.
The beginning in August. And we usually have July off, and that is kind of the start of us coming back. So I wondered when I looked at this, if we could maybe push everything back a month and even if we keep it, you know, the weekend, so it's the Friday, Saturday. But if everything goes back a month, then, I mean, we wouldn't start off with the workshop. We could actually return, because we don't return to council until the end of August. And everybody, we take off July and we have that vacation and then we don't really start council meetings until mid-August. So if we were able to push that back one month, then we could push it to September and to February. So I was wondering if that might be something that we could do.
Well, one of the issues is the assignments, right? That we'll talk about next. Because if we don't do that early and you have, especially when you have no members on the council, then we might not be represented on certain boards.
Yep, yep.
Well, I know Gilroy, I think they do, there's the beginning of February, I mean, we could borrow.
There's this tomorrow.
Yeah.
Just one day?
So I believe it is one day, yeah, yeah.
So I'll say.
Could we do the first weekend? Just for outside assignments, especially with the new council, we do it at a workshop so we have more time to really go through it and explain it. When it's set, it's something that we would evaluate probably in November or December. So that kind of is election driven and why we do it on a goal setting.
Yeah, that makes sense, yep. So currently, we have a policy. A policy calls out, it's the first for last Friday and Saturday of the month. So if we do make a change, we have to change the policy. And I think, now, if we do make this change, we are going to have to try to identify about 175 people, what is it, about 30 some people, right? Which, again, if we were planning this far enough in advance, we could probably do that. I don't know, is anybody dead set on making sure it's just this weekend or do, anybody want to make a change? It sounds like you'd be open to a change.
Yeah, I would, I would ask if we could make a change to another weekend, whatever, I don't know, would work for that.
And is it, are you looking for it to be much farther away or would the first weekend in February be acceptable?
Yeah, that would be fine.
So then, you know, I heard your concern about maybe, or suggestion about moving to February and September, we could look at just moving it even a week out to that first full weekend of February or something.
Whatever, yeah.
Whatever is.
I'm a little confused, why are we considering changing anything? I'm not sure why.
Well, I'm, I'm asking if we can change it. For the past four years, I have not, I am not able to make this weekend for personal reasons. I've, for the past four years, I have asked every year if we could change it. And so since we now have a new council, I'm wondering, is there any other weekend that we could do it?
Well, there's another option, can we move it a week up as opposed to out? But does the League of Cities, is the training that we go to, that always that week? Okay, so that wouldn't work.
That's something we'd have to look at. And so maybe the decision should be made that we look at another weekend or decide to stay with the same weekend and allow us to find out the details of different weekends.
Good point, yeah.
And just to, just to back up a little bit, because we have members of the community that are here and timeline wise, so we normally would have met today and tomorrow, one council person wasn't able to make it. So we polled the council for an alternative date and gave several options. And so March 3rd was selected as that second date. Okay.
Well, then with that, then, do, does the council here want to give direction to staff to begin looking at some alternative dates?
Well, for me, important, second what Marilyn said, again, it should be Friday, Saturday.
Right, right.
That's important for me.
Okay.
Marilyn said it well, whether it's last weekend in January or the first of February, I'm okay. You can pick the weekend, but the earlier we know, or I know, the better for me.
Yeah.
And again, the direction being that it is a Friday, Saturday, one day after the next, once we're, now again, that means you come back to us and say, hey, how's this date for everybody? And we've all got to take a look at that and provide feedback, yes, no, whatever.
I think it would be helpful if that's the direction that council wants, to kind of have a little of that now so that when we bring the policy back, it's, like, we will look at, does the new mayor conference, is that going to regularly conflict? Because I think it has moved around, I don't know that it's set.
I see, okay.
And so I think if you had, like, if you said, the last weekend in January absolutely doesn't work for me, we know, rather than bringing back the policy to learn that later.
Yeah, because for me, I personally would rather it's, do this meeting earlier than later, even if it's a week. But I'm flexible too. So then with that, then what we're, our direction to you is, let us know some dates. And again, you guys, if we said, if you could find the date being earlier and that works, you guys would be okay with a week earlier in January as opposed to the first weekend in February? Would you be okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, and I think earlier is somewhat better because of the assignments.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Just to clarify, we would, we would define in the policy which we.
Yes, yes.
It would be set.
Yeah, so we'll, exactly, we'll poll all of you, we'll figure out a week, you know, Friday, Saturday in general that works, and then we'll bring back for council adoption at a meeting, council policy 0602.
The other thing we have to be careful of, we don't set a precedent that every time a council member does have a conflict on a weekend of something like this, that we, oh, we got to make a change. So again, I think part of this is, part of this is understanding the sacrifice we as elected officials are making on behalf of the community, not, you know, even our families being affected by that sacrifice as well. So I think this is okay, let's do it. But once we set on that, it's going to have to be, that's how it is as we go forward. Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
And, you know, again, we've just voted on approving this policy at a time when we already, when I already knew we were in violation of our own policy, right? Which I asked to bring it up today. Either we have a policy that we follow or then let's remove the policy if we don't follow it. But making a decision that is in violation of a policy like that is not a good approach.
Right, right.
And, or definitely then all five should be participated in the decision-making process.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry that that impacted you that way. I mean, I actually, I'm looking at the third is a Friday. I mean, I would be open to doing a Saturday, the fourth, if that's more amenable to you, but I don't want to upset everything that we've got scheduled as well, so.
It is what it is then.
Okay, thank you.
So, and I just want to, you know, this is, again, something that's happened for the past four years, so it's not just a, you know, I want to shift it just for the one, so, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Yvonne. All right, next.
Okay, so now is the time for us to look at the different appointments, the outside agencies. And Michelle has a spreadsheet that sort of summarizes the longer detailed spreadsheet that you have in your packet that represents the outside assignments. And so our mayor will walk us through one by one. And we'll assist, you know, as far as, you know, if there's questions on what the committee does or anything like that.[1705.51]
Do you know what page in the packet?
Does anybody have it up? If not all, look.
Looks like page 35, let's see, 34? Looks like page 34 in the packet.
Yeah, but that's not the spreadsheet that.
No, it's a different, that's different than what we have in the packet.
Right, yes.
So we don't actually have that in the packet.
Yeah, so this is just a summary, for purposes of being able to show assignments that we're making today.
Because I would like to see what assignments I was on, you know.
Yeah.
I'm just going to pull them up differently. So this spreadsheet that we started using, I think maybe last year, we guys can see that. The bright yellow indicates where we have openings. At least on this big one, it's not really showing my shading. But we do have each of your appointments listed, and then kind of a tally over on the right of the total number of appointments.
And as far as the packet goes, it's page 34 that has the detail.
Yeah, but we don't have that in the packet.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, but it has the information that's in the packet, basically. Yeah. So for instance, if I'm on page 34, the very first one is countywide, Santa Clara County Library District JPA, which is what is row two, item number one on Michelle's spreadsheet. And so the first thing that we would look at is a primary for that. And then on the spreadsheet that we have, it's Borzioli, and you'll see that up there as well.
Right.
Okay.
So I'm the alternate on that one.
Correct.
On the, yeah, number one. So start there with the library district as a primary, that space is open, is anyone?
Well, I can do the primary, and somebody else can do the alternate, so I'm open to that, too.
Okay. Anyone feeling strongly about being the primary?
I can't read this, so I'm going to stand up.
Sure, sure, go right ahead.
So again, I'll do either or.
Okay. Let's, you know what, I think, was, was Rich?
Yes, yes.
And is it, is the mayor, does the mayor typically?
Typically, yeah. Before that, it was Steve Tate.
Okay. Gino, if you're okay, I'll take it, and you'll be the alternate? Would you be all right with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, next, okay, so the next opening is the alternate for Silicon Valley Interoperability Authority.
Yes, and this particular outside agency has existed for a while, and South County shares the seat. And so currently, Tom Klein has been assigned that from Gilroy, and so what we're looking for is an alternate from Morgan Hill. And so, where are my chiefs? I see one chief, there's my other chief. So help me out here, but this is basically a JPA that came to be to work on radio systems throughout the county to sync them up.
Yep, to include Fire Department, Public Safety Police Department, and Public Works Departments.
How often, thank you, Chief, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. How often does that?
So they meet, for 2023, they meet at 4:00 PM, and it looks like they meet February, March, May, July, September, and November. It's Thursdays. Say then?
Do you know where they meet?
So they meet in, hmm, they used to meet at the Santa Clara Police Department, and I assume that's still the case after Zoom, but I'm not 100% sure.
That's the last I knew.
But if we, let's see, okay, yeah, and I'll do the same.
Does anybody have any, any, pardon? Yeah. Does anyone have some thoughts about being that? That's the alternate we're looking for there.
Correct. I think their website's a little outdated. It is in San Jose somewhere. They're still virtual?
Okay.
Dawn says at this point, they're still virtual.
Okay. My guess is Tom's going to be pretty active and able to attend most of those, so. Anyone interested?
Yes.
Yeah, as alternate. You see all rushing to be that one.
What is the purpose of this committee?
So it's the radio systems for public safety, public services, and so it's the Oversight Board, basically, for it. And there's an Executive Director.
I'll take the alternate, I'll be the alternate. Tom, better not ever flake on me.
And then the next one we have is the Habitat Agency Implementation Board, second alternate. We have one, but we identified two. This is one of the boards that Renee was talking about, that we frequently have quorum issues. And they are still currently virtual, but when they do meet, they are here in the chamber.
Oh, okay. And Yvonne, you're the, you're the alternate one.
Yeah, I'm listed as an alternate, and I would like to be removed, please.
You have to be removed from that one?
If I can.
Okay, so we would need to find two alternates here. Anyone?
I think you're the primary on this, right?
So there's the governing board, where she is a primary, and there's the implementation board, where she's an alternate.
Well, but Renee is the primary.
But you're a second primary.
I see.
So we have two voting members on the governing board?
So it would be the Habitat, the implementation.
So the Habitat, governing, and implementation boards typically meet at the same time. They're usually joint meetings.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
It looks like one's quarterly and one's bimonthly.
So do you, are you not able to be the primary either?
Right.
Okay. So you don't want to be a primary or alternate?
Neither.
Okay.
All right.
Because they're related, they're.
So we need a new primary for the Habitat Governing Agency, so that does meet here in the council chamber, it is currently virtual. They do meet bimonthly and quarterly.
Wait, it meets here?
It meets here in the chamber. It's currently virtual, but when they go back in person, it's here in our chamber, and our clerk staff provides clerk services.
And I was just elected Chair of the governing board, and Jennifer is Vice Chair of the
Okay.
Okay, so Gino, you're the second alternate here, and we are looking for an alternate one. That alternate one also attends the meetings, am I hearing that right?
So the two primaries ideally would attend the meetings, and the alternates would only attend if the two primaries couldn't attend. So for example, let's say that Renee and Marilyn were the two primaries for the governing board, and Marilyn could not attend, and her alternate was Gino, she would ask Gino if he could attend in her place, even though Renee is also attending.
Sorry.
It's one of those weird countywide boards that has a weird quorum structure.
Yes.
So we do ideally need two primaries and two alternates for the first one, and then the implementation board, we need two alternates.
Okay, I suggest we come.
Really a challenge to get a quorum.
Yeah, I suggest we come back to that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see how we're doing to the rest of them.
Assuming there's no changes to the rest, we're looking at the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee?
So before we move on, I mean, do you want to talk about ones that are already filled?
Talking about ones that are already filled, what? Feel free.
No, I just, I mean.
If we've already.
The goal is to keep them as close to, you know, they are now, but there might be council members that are going to change things, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. As we go then down to the Silicon Valley Clean Energy.
Wait a minute, so did we choose anything for the Habitat?
No, we're going to come back to it.
Oh, we're going to come back to it?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. We'll come back to that one. But Yvonne, are you still okay with the Silicon Valley Clean Energy?
Yes, and if there is an alternate, then we ask that they make a two-year commitment, because it is a highly technical.
And the alternate is a city team.
Yeah, so we have Tanya.
Yeah. Oh, perfect.
Good there. Then the Paharo River Watershed Flood Protection currently is Renee?
Yeah, and I admit, I have never gone. And I learned from Gordon Seaver that he never went. I don't know why we even need to have someone there.
Do we need to have somebody?
We have no say.
We might need to come back. Chris just went into the lobby, and so he's the staff rep on that.
Optics discuss, it's so far away from Morgan Hill, and we don't even have a say. I don't know whether we're even participating.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have that, or the other one?
You can leave me on, but I tell you, I probably won't go.
Well, I said we'll leave you on. We'll get some more information from Chris.
Thanks, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that does make sense, what you're saying, no, Renee. Okay, the next one being the Santa Clara Valley Water District Elected Officials. Not seeing what that says after that, I'm sorry.
It's PL 566.
Oh. Renee, you're currently the primary on that. Gino, you're the primary, second primary, and then Yvonne, you're the alternate. Everybody, you good with that?
Fine.
Okay. Next one, Santa Clara Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee. We need a primary on that one.
If anybody's vying for it?
Yeah, that's right. And let's see, Yvonne, you're the alternate, Santa Clara Housing, Community Development.
What this meeting has needed mean?
I mean, I can do the primary, they don't meet very often, it's for the Community Block Grant. There's probably maybe one meeting a year or two, so I'm happy to do that, it's in housing. But we would still need to have somebody else, it's at County, Santa Fe, some heading.
And it will be in person, as the county has done away with virtual meetings.
Right, okay, Yvonne, we'll put you in as the primary, thank you for that.
And then an alternate.
I'll go alternate. It's not on.
Thank you, Marilyn. Next.
I do want to comment, there's very few openings for the primaries. And I see that, as mayor, you had the privilege of putting your name in.
I did.
Ahead of time, so.
Yep.
I just wanted to be clear.
I understand, I understand.
But to do primary on that one?
No, no, no. Go ahead, see what happens.
Oh, I'm serious, Marilyn, please speak up, if you're interested in any, or one of us filling in.
I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Not a problem.
I have done that, please don't.
Okay.
I really am happy if you want to do.
Yvonne, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, there's some other ones, I think, is where it's located.
Okay, so the next one is South County Joint Planning Advisory Committee, and so this one, you'll see strike-throughs in the agenda, and that's because that committee no longer meets.
Okay.
It's not on this list.
And I'm looking at what we have. Sure. Sorry. Yeah, so the next one that we're on is the South County Joint Planning Advisory Committee, and this committee no longer meets. It's, it doesn't meet anymore, so that's why we've taken it off.
I'll alternate back and forth, so we've just struck it out, and I recognize.
Maybe just make it a little bit bigger.
Maybe what we say is, for, if you're tracking this, we're on page 38.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on, C-School.
So C-School, we're looking for a second alternate, or second primary. So currently, Mayor Turner is a primary, and Councilmember Martinez Beltran and Borzioli are alternates, so we need a second primary.
I would like to be the second primary.
And which case, we would need another alternate.
Anyone interested in being an alternate? Okay, well, we'll come back then, at least we have the two primaries.
Okay. And then the next one is also shown with strike-through, because that also ended its time as being a group that meets, so that's the South County United for Health Leadership Team. They decided to no longer be a committee.
And that's page 40 of the packet.
And then after that, we have South County Youth Task Force, and typically, this has been the same.
I'll do the primary on that. Primary two. So it's Turner.
Okay, so Turner and Borzioli?
And Borzioli. If that's okay.
Before everyone already has an assignment, I'm saying, I think we should ask Marilyn.
Yes.
No, 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 just keep going.
We'll say that if you're interested in an assignment, you need to speak up, otherwise you will be passed up.
Again, that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understood.
And if you want the primary.
Absolutely not, thank you.
Okay. Borzioli is primary two.
Okay, so then we get to A-BAG. So we're looking, Yvonne is a primary, and we have an alternate seat open. Right, and I'll just say, this only meets one time a year. I'm already on A-BAG for Cities Association, so I'm there, but, you know, it's not a, I mean, it is, it is a drive, but. So you'll stay as primary, just represent? Yeah, I'm already going to be there, so. Okay, so we just need an alternate? But we do need an alternate, unless somebody else wants to be primary, I'm happy as well to do that.
Anybody? Okay, Yvonne, you remain as the primary, so we need an alternate. I thought I saw Jim Sergi raise his hand, Jim?
Great.
You know which finger that is? So we need an alternate, I forget where we're at here, on the.
A-BAG. One time a year, one time a year. You think that one time a year?
Probably not.
Where is lunch?
Yeah, where is it located?
Yeah, you said it's a drive.
San Francisco or Oakland.
Oh, wow.
It's a, it's a.
It is a drive, okay.
With a carpool with me.
Does the alternate go along to the meeting?
You can.
I see.
You ever have to?
Yeah, all right. Well, then we'll come back to that one as well. We're going to come back to a few of them, then, we'll at least try to get as many filled as we can.
Okay, so Cities Association, so that mayor and mayor pro tem take this role historically, so we fill those in. So what page were we on, then?
This would now be, we're on page 41.
That chart, that would be so very helpful.
So the Cities Association are traditionally held by the mayor and mayor pro tem, and there are three appointments. And then that would move us to the League Peninsula Division.
To the what?
So I'll do the alternate, is the alternate open on that one?
For Cities Association?
No.
For the League Peninsula Division.
Oh, before we go there, Cities Association, the mayor as mayor pro tem, we've slotted you in, are you okay with that?
Yeah, unless, again, someone else wants to, Marilyn is interested.
Well, he already said first, so.
No, no, he's talking about League of Cities, this is Cities Association, right.
Association, traditionally, the mayor has been the primary, and the mayor pro tem has been the alternate.
Right.
That's been our past practice.
I have no problem if someone else wants to be alternate.
Marilyn, would you?
I'll do alternate.
Okay.
For all three Cities Association?
Yeah.
So there's the Cities Association, City Selection Committee, the Legislative Action Committee, and then the Cities Association Board?
There's only one of the three is regular, the other one I just moved.
Yeah, they meet right before the regular meeting, if needed.
Yes, so I'm okay if I'm not to have.
Thank you, Renee, thank you, Marilyn. We have then the League of Cities Peninsula Division. Now, this one, Yvonne, you are currently.
Correct.
The primary. I'm inclined to leave you there as that, you've already, you've been in place. It's the alternate now. No, I, you know, the alternate, I know, Marilyn, you're interested in this, Gino's interested in this.
It would be a good one for Marilyn, but if you.
I'll take it.
Okay, Marilyn will go with that one, okay, very good, thank you, Gino.
Makes sense for me, Marilyn has been involved before.
Yep, yep.
Do you know where they meet?
Different cities.
Different cities?
Yeah.
Usually, San Jose and north. They don't typically meet down here.
Okay, Marilyn, thank you. Thank you, Yvonne. Caltrain Policymaker Group.
So this one, this one actually we have a correction on. So we have Turner on because he serves as the backup to Gilroy, so Marie Blenkley has the seat for VTA. And so then we put then Turner there. Now, Borghiole actually should state Yvonne on it. If we go to our outside assignment listing right now, you're on it. And so that was just, I think, a typo.
We're not looking at Caltrain local policy?
We are. Yeah, so right now, like, I'm on the website and it's Constantine and Martinez Beltran. But in the packet, it says Borghiole, and that's not correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Wondering, yeah.
Yeah, the alternate is Martinez Beltran.
But mayor will be.
Yeah, so he'll be the primary, and then we just.
Good, because it's in St. Carlos.
You turn your mic. On Yvonne?
Oh, it is.
Okay, maybe just pull it closer. Okay, thank you.
You'll be the primary, right?
Yes, I will, yeah. I'll be making that drive, yep.
Very good.
Unless we can keep him on Zoom for a little while longer. Okay, then we have the Comprehensive County, what is that one?
Expressway.
Comprehensive County Expressway Planning Study Policy Advisory Board. Two of these there. Primary and alternate.
Do an alternate on that one.
What is that one on?
It provides an elected official's forum for policy input into the expressway plan for 2040. It's a long-range plan for improvement and maintenance of eight county expressways in the Santa Teresa-Hale corridor.
It doesn't meet. It's met one time in the last five years, so I think it's still in place.
Sign me up.
It doesn't typically meet.
So Chris, should we put names by just in case?
They are updating an expressway plan, so I expect that there'll be like one meeting sometime in the next couple of years.
Good with that. Does that entice anyone? No? We'll come back to that one. Chris had stepped out. We thought we had a question for Chris on something. Was that the one?
The River Water.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah.
So it does meet, though, and we do need someone?
So, for which one?
The one you just talked about.
The County Expressway, we should have someone, it got called last time, it was called, was to evaluate Measure B expressway items. So we should have someone, so it'll be probably called for that same purpose again sometime down the road.
Okay.
Do you know a meeting time or anything?
No, it's only met once in the last, they just called it and put it together.
That makes it hard to sign up, and you don't know when that meeting is, in my conflict with another assignment or anything.
Four years from now.
The last meeting was, the last meeting, I think, was around one o'clock in the afternoon at the County Roads Headquarters in San Jose.
So it's one of those things, again, hey, get the alternate if you can't make it in four years. You get someone else to join you on that. Or, so if we have no interest, let's move on and we'll come back. I mean, if no one signs up, I'll take it. If it only meets every five years, I'm okay.
Let's put, let's put the mayor's, every one of those slots have been claimed one of two.
But I want to go back to the Pahuar Valley. Is that similar, that they'll meet every five years, or that?
No, it regularly meets.
Okay, Renee's concern was it's not relevant to.
Councilmember Spring.
Never attended.
Yeah, they, they meet a person typically down south, so what it is, we are not a voting member of that. We are like an ex-official member. The cities to the north, VTA's, yeah, Valley Water is the actual voting member. So we don't, we don't really get a vote, but we have one of our councilmembers, one of Gilroy's councilmembers on as non-voting members on that board.
I don't understand the per.
Yeah, is there a reason then?
It's primarily concerned with the Pahuar River and the flood protection stuff that's happening down south. The reason we're tied to it is all the water from Yaugus through Morgan Hill flows down and ends up getting in that river, and that's why we're tied as a member. If, I think, if someone wanted to sign up, I keep track of the meetings and the notes on the meetings, and if there was some need where we needed an elect official to attend the meeting, I could let you know after looking at the agendas, but I haven't seen the need.
I do get the agendas, and I, every time I look at it, I say, there's nothing in there of interest to me.
Correct. That's the case, Chris, and Renee said he's willing to remain there.
You can leave it.
Yeah.
For transparency, I have no intention to go unless I'm really needed.
And it sounds like what Chris is saying is he will let you know if you do need to be there for something, otherwise he'll track the meetings.
Okay, that's.
That work? Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, so does that get us to VTA PAC?
Yes.
Okay, and so we have in there Yvonne and Gino.
And I'll just mention, I was elected the vice chair, so if I could stay on that, that would be great.
Okay.
Which one, I'm sorry.
That's the.
Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee. And then the next one is the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, VTA Group Four, so this is the call, the Tuesday before the Thursday meeting. The mayor attends as a backup, but then we also assign a primary and an alternate, and these typically match up with a PAC. And so that's why we have Martinez and Borghiole here. And so, but we would only always have two councilmembers, no more.
Right. All right, next.
Okay, the next one is the Board of Directors. We've talked about that. Marie from Gilroy is the mayor, is the primary, Mark is the alternate. And then we have the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission, where we need a primary, and our alternate is Yvonne.
Marilyn, any interest?
I've done that, no.
Okay.
How often do they meet?
They used to meet about four o'clock, and it was a couple hours. And then sometimes they had daytime meetings, too.
They meet at four o'clock?
They used to, yeah, but things changed.
How often?
It doesn't say here how often.
They meet, you know, every, every month, every other month. Special meeting, I mean, right now, it's a lot with.
Is this connected to one of their Valley Waters Board meetings? Or is this even connected? Yeah, this is the Santa Clara Valley Water Commission.
It's not, yeah, it's not the board meeting.
Okay.
It's like advisory.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know on what day?
We could follow up with that. We have James and Tanya listed as the staff support. I don't know if James attends.
It's just an advisory commission to the Valley Water Board, so items will come to this commission. They'll make recommendations to the board, so it's an advisory commission.
So, so they meet at four o'clock, you said?
They used to. I don't know if they do now.
And do you know what day? You don't know what day.
So the last.
They're gonna find out. The last Water Commission was Wednesday at noon. Yeah, I went to that one.
Okay, so if it's Wednesday at noon, then I'll be happy to do the primary.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Gino.
Okay, next one is SCR, South County Regional Wastewater Authority. So this one requires two primaries, and then everybody gets to be on this because we have three alternates.
No.
I would love to do if the, if, you know, nobody else, I would love to do the primary on this. I've been trying to get on this one for a while.
So Renee, you're the primary.
Yeah.
On that.
There's two of us, but I'm one of them.
Okay, so we need to fill in who are the other, who's the other one? Yvonne saying she's willing?
John McKay used to be the other one.
Okay.
So in either case, somebody will be an alternate. Everybody's on this.
Everybody's on this. Who's the, I mean, so it sounds like there's two alternates?
There's three total and two primaries.
Right.
We just need to know who wants to be the second primary, who wants to be an alternate.
Okay, Yvonne, we'll put Yvonne down.
Is that okay, Marilyn?
Oh, yeah. Okay, Joint Water Resources Committee, and so this just matches up with what we have above. Because they meet right after the SCR meeting.
Okay, so we have, then we need to go back and look for some that we're trying to fill in.
Yeah, we're just, I think, left with the Habitat Agency.
Oh, that's the one we have left to fill?
An A-Bag alternate. And City School alternate.
Marilyn, would you be the City School alternate?
When do they meet?
Fridays, eight-thirty every other month.
And occasionally on a Thursday if there's a conflict on a Friday.
Okay, I'll take that. Who's the primary?
I am.
They're both raising their hands.
Mark and Yvonne.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
There's two primaries.
Interested in SCR?
So then we have the Governing Board, where we need another primary. And an alternate, and then the Implementation Board, that we need two alternates. And these both meet here.
The Governing Board.
For what?
For.
Habitat Agency, that was the seat you had that you.
I'm good.
Yeah.
See the scorecard there to the right?
I haven't tallied this up yet.
Oh, you haven't, okay, because I was looking at Marilyn going, wait, Marilyn has.
It's what? I thought you said it's free.
Okay, so we're looking at the, what does she have there? Again, Marilyn, I'll ask you, would you be willing to take that role?
For the Habitat?
Yeah.
Not my wheelhouse, I'll tell you that. I'm not interested in three-eyed frogs, so.
Yeah.
So.
It's okay if you don't want, I'm just asking.
I will say they typically are pretty quick meetings. At least they have historically been. They are still currently meeting on Zoom. They meet here in the council chamber when they meet. It's every other month on Thursdays at three.
Okay, put me down.
As the primary?
Yes.
And, yeah, and then we.
Well, then why didn't you take it?
He already is. There's two primaries.
Take which one? As the alternate? On that? Or there's, there's.
We still need, yeah, a couple alternates.
So help me understand, so on that one, Renee will attend, Marilyn will attend, and the first alternate also attends?
No, so the alternates are specific, so alternate one matches primary one. So let's say you are alternate one.
Yep.
Renee will call you if he cannot attend.
Got it.
If Marilyn cannot attend, she's gonna call Gino as the alternate.
Okay.
For the Habitat Agency Implementation Board, there's just one primary, and then we have two alternates just as a backup. And so in that case, either alternate could fill in for him. Right. But in either, yeah.
So they're specific, and they cannot only use specific alternate?
That's how that one is set up.
Okay, so it looks like we need to fill in alternate for the, two of those there for the Habitat Governing Board and Implementation Board. Right?
Yeah, I'll change the color just so it's easier to see which ones we need.
Okay, you can put me down for one of those alternates.
You have a preference?
Which one was fast?
Well, they're both, they meet, they, they, so.
Oh, they are, okay.
Makes sense that an alternate for one would be an alternate for another because they meet typically jointly. Yeah, they're very quick.
Put me down, I'll do it. What was that?
And then we need a second alternate for the Implementation Board. So we have staff appointed separately from these. These are elected official appointments.
Okay, so there, it looks like we're needing, it's Renee.
Would you be up, Gino, to be the second alternate for the other Habitat?
So in this particular case, it's, it's an alternate, so if.
And you're an alternate on the second.
Yeah, and the only problem I have is the Thursday timeframe.
Okay.
But if it's an alternate, I'll, I'll do it.
Right, we have staff appointees and elected appointees that are separate. This is all just the elected appointees. We don't list our staff appointments on here typically. So when you go to the Habitat, just how their bylaws are written. So for Habitat Agency, Jennifer is the staff primary and Edith is the alternate for Jennifer, but that doesn't replace the elected official appointments. They're separate. But they, the way the board is designated is that the alternates are specific. Edith could not be one of your alternates, just like neither of you could be one of her, like Jennifer's alternate. So that's why we request. Yes, because they're staff. If we don't want to appoint a second alternate, we can leave it blank.
Jennifer, please. So it does have to be elected, yeah. So Gino, I'm hearing that we could put your name, and in the unlikely event you're called, you'll find alternative plans.
Alternate, so we're gonna call, or Renee's gonna call Mark before he's gonna call you on this one.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
My number's just gonna forward to yours.
Circular reference. Okay, Michelle, is that everything?
No, we have A-Bag.
A-Bag, one time a month.
No, one time a year.
One time a year.
So alternate, okay.
And that one's in San Francisco.
How about if it involves a police escort?
I'm in, as long as it's the chief.
I'm trying to get an alternate here. San Francisco.
Put me down, I'll do it.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're done.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Let me just save this so I don't lose all this.
We're good?
Hard work.
Okay, so now we're sort of transitioning. We're a bit behind schedule, but we're gonna make up time here, guys, because we have to turn the floor over to Dawn no later than three to get everybody out of here by five. So the next item is our work plan, so I want to give you a page reference here. So in the packet, starting on page forty-nine, what we've done is we've updated our strategic work plan from the last time that you saw it. This document is kept up on our website. And so what the work plan represents are the staff's action items in furtherance of council's strategic priorities. It is not a listing of all of our day-to-day activities or even a listing of all of our projects. It's ones that are focused on the strategic priorities. And so what we do is we list them, we identify which strategic priority they're in furtherance of, they're organized by department. And then starting with COVID, we have an additional column if they're also related to COVID. Status is either marked as ongoing, or if it's something that actually has specific dates, then that's noticed. Either that's, we have commencing soon or in progress, and if the item is in progress, we have a bar that shows, are we twenty-five percent there or a hundred percent there? And then in addition to that, the last column has a estimated completion date. The intention is not to go through these one by one, but rather to answer any questions that council might have. If one is looking for a more exhaustive listing of our work plan items, you'd find that in the budget document by department. Questions, comments?
Anyone?
Yeah, the, I don't have it in front of me right now, the spreadsheet, but we talked about that, yeah, twenty-twenty, last time, the lobbying, and that's probably somewhere on there, right?
Yeah, so on there is, it captures an item about legislative items, and then in addition to that, it's on our follow-up list. And so why don't we take a couple minutes right now and talk about.
That's up to you, but I want to make sure we talk about.
Yeah.
The, it was brought up the other, one of the last meetings, and it's been important to me as well, but I always felt a little bit lonely, and maybe with the new council, make a stronger push on what we can do, right? I think Gino also had such a session in the past. And then the other one, I, I'm not clear yet, how important is light rail for us these days? It's been very quiet for a couple of years.
Oh, high-speed rail.
High-speed rail.
Because I'm like, whoa, that's a very critical hot topic. I didn't even see it say.
What did I say?
Light rail.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm calling it a high-speed rail. I've actually got a. Apologize for my accent. It won't change after twenty-five years, but, so that has been fairly quiet. Doesn't mean nothing is happening, but I, that makes me nervous when we don't hear it much.
Yeah, something, they're starting to brew again. I've got a meeting next week, you know, Leslie Miles, Leslie Miles, right? She's been tracking this. She's been paying close attention to it, and, yeah, and so she's, she's concerned about some things. I'm meeting with her. I do, I do think if, we do need to pay attention to that, because if and when that ever does come through, it is going to impact us in a negative way.
I think we always all had concerns, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's why I bring it up here. I don't think we should lose focus on that.
Right.
It's been quiet for a couple of years.
Yeah, okay, so I'm hearing legislation, and then you want to hear a little bit about high-speed rail?
Yes.
Okay, any other topics? If not, we'll jump into a little bit of detail on those, too.
Is there, can you show, can you show up there?
It is on, in your packet, it's page beginning.
It's just, I guess it's not gonna be any bigger, I'm so tiny, but.
Okay, so Edith. Let's hit a high-speed rail first. We're just gonna spend a couple minutes just talking about staff efforts, and what we're keeping an eye on, and what we've mostly recently responded to, and any updates that you're aware of.
Sure, thank you. High-speed rail is a topic that we, as staff, continue to track. With the Caltrain meetings, we often have a staff person from high-speed rail that provides us updates on the project. It is quiet here because there's no activity taking place that necessarily requires our engagement right now. The authority has selected a preferred alternative, right? That entire work program on the EIR has been completed. And at this point, the project itself continues to seek funding, and there is no active work that is taking place that would impact, or that would move the project specifically here within our community. Dawn, is there anything else you want to add?
Just that we have tried to engage high-speed rail on things, and they're essentially, their message to us is, we don't have any money to do the, the extension in Santa Clara County right now anyway, so we're not going to talk to you right now. If and when we get money, we'll talk to you.
Okay.
The, the project, the way that it landed at the end for their preferred alternative is at grade, within the right-of-way of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks with no grade separations. We tried at some point to advance a collaborative with high-speed rail to study grade separations, so it would position us to be able to, to secure or, or ask for funding or grants for those grade separations. We were unable to move that forward. However, separate but somewhat parallel, Caltrain, as you know, is advancing a study that is regional on the need for grade separations. And that work is currently underway.
Good, okay, thank you.
Edith, thank you. If there's nothing further, we're gonna quickly move on to the next.
I just want to ask, on grade separations, what is, I mean, how does that look for us? We definitely want to have that, but, I mean, what, what are we hearing now as far as the, you know, talking points for them?
Right.
Good, brief?
Brief.
Yep, and this will be the final question on that, because we do need to move on.
Okay.
Yep.
The authority has indicated that at this point, the project does not warrant a grade separation in our community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then the next item is legislation specifically around housing, and what we, just kind of quick sketch on what we did before the bills actually became law, and then what we've done since then and what we're planning to do.
Thank you. So for Councilmember Spring and for the rest of the council and for the community, the city does take an advocacy role when it comes down to legislation that is gonna impact our community. The advocacy takes place in different forms, from submitting letters, attending meetings, and engaging with our legislative representatives. When SB three-thirty was being looked at, we. When SB three-thirty was, uh, being looked at, we had executive team, um, including, at that time, Assistant City Manager Leslie Little and our City Manager Christina Turner go up to Sacramento and speak, um, on, on that issue. We often even hold meetings here where we tour our legislators and we make them aware of our community and make them aware that we are part of the solution, but are also being impacted by this legislation. Most recently, on October fifth of twenty-twenty-one, we hosted, uh, a number of legislators as part of the statewide housing tour, and we spoke about transportation issues, RDA, RDCS, and other housing, uh, success stories and impacts that we have. Now, this is sort of a outward set of activities, but you should know that behind the scenes and administratively, we're actively engaged to protect the community and, and protect, uh, um, what we're trying to accomplish here. Most recently, you heard from Jennifer Carmen, with even the housing element, the fact that she was part of the committee that was looking at the allocations, allowed us to, to, to protect this community with, with an allocation that is something that we can absorb already within the pipeline. It could have very likely, it could have been that we would have gotten three times the number of allocations. So again, administratively and behind the scenes, we're doing a number of activities. The housing element, the, um, IHO, our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that you recently approved, and the changes to that, allows us to shift the way we administer that program so we can advance the projects that are gonna allow us to meet the RENA numbers earlier. And again, as you heard at the last approval of the housing element, we are doing that good administrative work, and we expect that submitting the housing element and in the next annual report, we're going to be able to hopefully hear from the state that we are on track to, uh, to meeting their mandate earlier, and it will allow us to protect this community from projects, from SB thirty-five projects. Again, we are waiting from, from the state. So I want it bucketed in three ways. One is what we're doing that is visible, two, what we're doing behind the scenes, and three, the third bucket is what you are doing on behalf of the community by the actions that you take. The goal study session, your sustainable Morgan Hill has identified quality of life as one of the primary goals, and you do this through your budgetary decisions. The majority of our discretionary funds go to protect quality of life and public safety. So we're doing all those things. And then, then finally, um, the question is, what else can we do or what else can the community do? In our four-one-one, and thanks to our communications team, our website has a page dedicated so that the community can access and, and know how to contact the various elected officials that represent us, either regionally or at the state level. So when you get questions from the community, what are we doing? You can, you can also say, this is what we're doing locally, but if you want to reach out to your elected officials, this is how you can get ahold of them. And so with that, that is what we have and continue to do, and going forward, this next year, we will continue to advance not only this work, but also, uh, looking to figure out how to put together some sort of a roundtable so we can continue to bring our legislators here so that they can get to know us and get to know our community. And with that work, the reason why we didn't execute on that work at the end of the year last year, because we knew that there was gonna be change on elected officials, and we wanted to, to, to be ready once the, the change happened with the elections last year.
So, so when, when we discussed SB three-thirty and impacts, uh, some, some of you went, went, uh, to Sacramento or met with people from Sacramento, and I think even HCD, if I'm not mistaken, and, and my understanding was that they somehow indicated that if we were to meet our numbers, they might possibly be willing to work on a compromise with us. That was around twenty-twenty or so, twenty-twenty-one. The, and I've asked every year since then, do you have, have we followed up and, and gone back and shown our numbers? And again, we're doing the right thing, we're meeting, exceeding our numbers, uh, as we just learned the other night, but we're, we're not, we're still getting punished with all those bills like any other community that is not even close to meeting the numbers, and we're not getting any credit from the state for the good work we've been doing or for the work that has been mandated to us to be done. Uh, and so I think we're, I, I know, I was, and I remember the feedback, I go, well, we have to be very careful with how we ask things and so, but if we're just always nice and playing nice, I don't, I don't think we're being listened to, and you have to repeat a message over and over again and loud until you're being heard, that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And, and I, I don't think we do enough, to be, be honest, and I'm frustrated that we, and I mentioned it back then, I, I remember Rob Rivas was actually upset at me, uh, and he's now the, going to be the new speaker, um, and everyone said, well, he, he will help, but he tried to help, but I never saw that part. Uh, and I, but I wasn't part of the, the discussion then, so I, I, either we're getting the help or we go back and say, hey, you told us back then, whoever was in those meetings, but I think we should follow up, but, but I don't know.
Yeah, and, and once.
Chris, on that, though, Christina, real quick, I, I think, though, the, when it comes to the meetings with elected officials at the higher level, that really is the elected officials at this level, right? I mean, we're not gonna send staff into those meetings to start, you know, duking it out with state-level elected officials, is that correct?
Yeah, typically, it's elected, elected, and staff to staff, and so, like, when we have our legislative roundtable, we'll have both present.
Right.
Yeah, and the, the one thing I was gonna add is that once we have our housing element not only adopted by council, but then certified and then, you know, um, gone back to council, then we'll have a little bit more, um, yes, breathing room, um, to get into their offices and to let them know the great things that we've done, how we've met our numbers, and to see if, you know, we can, at some point, get back to where we were when we had RDCS.
Because I'm also sensing that there is some desire amongst this council, I'm being one of them, that want to meet with our state representatives to say, hey, we've, you know, we've, we've got to have this conversation.
Yeah, and the first venue that we're gonna recommend is our, is our roundtable.
Got it, okay.
And part of that also is, you know, being on the same page and having, you know, a strong voice.
Right, exactly. Yep.
The way people, I guess, there would be staff, I don't know if you were, that talked to HCD. I wasn't there.
Yeah, and, and people, it was Leslie Little and it was me, and, and I, I did want to correct, the, the direction wasn't, um, if we meet our RENA numbers, we're willing to talk to you. The concern we expressed under SB three-thirty is that we were going to lose our available lands for nonprofit affordable housing because, um, because SB three-thirty doesn't make a distinction between, um, for-profit unaffordable housing versus affordable housing. And, um, and what we were told is, look, if you, if you see that happening, come back and tell us, because, um, we don't want you to lose your available lands for nonprofit housing. They were also, the, the, the staff people we talked to were also, and, and, and their legislators that they worked for were also very sympathetic to the way that Morgan Hill has been able to get, um, affordable housing through our RDCS, and were willing to make a carve-out for us. Um, but when it got to the higher levels, um, you know, the leadership of the legislators and the, and the governor, they said, they didn't want to send a message that it was okay to have RDCS, and so that's why our amendment that we had proposed and that had been largely accepted, at least by, um, both the staff and, and many of the housing advocates, didn't get included in the legislation. So that's, that's where we were a few years ago, before SB three-thirty got adopted. But I, I don't wanna, I'd be out there like, I, I don't want the perception to be out there that anybody said, if we met our numbers, uh, anybody in the legislature said, if we met our numbers, we were gonna be, you know, we could come back and ask for changes, that's not what they said. I think our perspective is, we've been able to show we can do it, we can do, we can grow in a thoughtful and sensitive way and still meet our obligations, um, so we, we will be making that point that, that we can, that, that we think we can, there, there are better ways to meet our obligations to provide housing for all segments of our community, um, without the one-size-fits-all, but that's us, that's not the legislature.
Got it, thank you.
And, and as soon as SB three-thirty was, uh, approved, it, it immediately got extended another five years, right? So I, I think that the message what we're hearing is, we, we want to be proactive and continue to have more visibility and engagement from our elected officials so that we can voice to, to the state the impacts of their actions.
Right, yeah, thank you.
We hear you.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and, and this is an important topic to me, the, probably throughout this as well, but I, I think we also, and I mentioned it in years past, I think we should look into, uh, collaborating with other communities that struggle as well with, with all those mandates. Uh, we're, we're so overly cautious, that's my perception of, of, of speaking out loudly, uh, because we might piss off, excuse my language, someone up there in Sacramento, uh, but, you know, it goes both ways. I grew up in, in a tough neighborhood, when you bite me, I bite back, right?
So, um, I agree with councilmember, uh, Spring, and, uh, that's one of the reasons why I think, um, we need to form that working committee for SB three-thirty and try and reach out to other communities with, um, like concerns of ours and, um, and, and, and work with those other communities, uh, to move forward. Even if we do it in parallel with the city, um, I, I think we need, uh, a different focus and, and maybe even a stronger focus. Um, uh, and I, I think doing the working committee is, is going to accomplish that. I spoke to, at the JPA meeting, this past week, the Los, uh, Los Altos, um, council member, and, uh, she indicated a strong desire to work with us. So I think we just have to reach out to these communities with, you know, like-minded concerns and see if we can get something, you know, going forward, um, in addition to working with groups like Our Neighborhood Voices, so, um, anyway, I just wanted to share, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with you, I, I think we need a, a pretty strong folk, focus and, uh, and, and I think we can, we can get that strong focus by collaborating with other cities and going together with these other cities voicing our concerns.
Yeah, and for me, that goes to Cal cities too, I mentioned it the other evening, right? So, I, I mean, we pay a fee to that organization, but, but I don't think they, they really achieved too much, uh, lately. I guess that they make comments, but at the end of the day, they're not being listened to either.
Is that the League of Cities you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, they have, they have, it sounds like they have quite the advocacy group, but I know, um, yeah, Sacramento's got their own agenda, and when it comes to housing, they, they, they've got that agenda pretty well locked in. But we should still be voicing our concerns and our opinions and fighting against that as well.
And it's not, I don't know if we'll find a solution, and there's different paths to speak up and to work with, but I think we, we really need to, to speak up more strongly than we.
How do we, just, Christina, real quick, uh, Gino now has mentioned several times, this SB three-thirty working group or working committee. What would be the next step on that?
So the next steps are for us to figure out what the roundtable's gonna look like, and then for us to make some recommendations on what a working group would look like, separately talking with Gino about his ideas and conversations you've had with other cities, and then we'll bring that back for consideration.
Okay, I know we're running, again, up against the clock here, so.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry. On, go ahead.
Um, I know we're on a tight thing, there's, there's a lot of things here in this strategic priority, so I'm gonna start with, just with some of the, one, I'd like to hear something on the transportation master plan, if we could quickly on that. I would love to hear something on diversity, equity, and inclusion on that. I know that I've asked for years about talking about small businesses and women-owned businesses and our city contracting. Um, the others that I'll just come, those I'd like to have some, some kind of comment on. Uh, the others, as far as I think, what I want to make sure that we're highlighting on our priorities would be water, um, tax revenue and, and working group that's happening with the league. I think you're probably familiar with, with the effort that's going on there, but maybe we can get some attention put on that, uh, and the ability to raise taxes. You know, there's a bill now that's looking at, um, limiting cities' ability to raise taxes, and I think that's something that we need to have a very, um, in-detail conversation about to see where we land on these things. So as part of the League of Cities, we're, they're talking about all of these different priorities, and I think it would be really important to get the, the pulse of our council on those. And then I'm just gonna move to, quickly to housing. We just had our policy committee, which I'm the vice chair of that for housing, and I was here on, uh, Wednesday, but, you know, lots of this is, is something that we're talking about, and, um, there are initiatives on economic development, local control, protecting deed-restricted and affordable housing, building more housing and diversity of housing, and RENA reform, those are some of the things that we've been talking about in those, in that committee, um, and how we'll look at that. I, I'd like to highlight, when we talk about three-thirty, I'm not, I mean, I, I tend to be a little bit more worried about SB five and our urgency to hit our RENA, because then that exempts us from the SB five, is what I understand. Um, and so it looks like we're on target to do that, whereas SB three-thirty is more about locking in the fees, that's kind of, so if I'm missing something there, I'd like somebody to correct me on that, but SB thirty-five is where we're streamlining the process and things can just happen without our control, we kind of lose the discretion of what we can put in our community. And then, uh, the, the O and B, I, Our Neighborhood Voice, you know, initiative, we talked about this as well, and, um, I would like to see if we could have, we had a woman come in, and she was a legal expert who went through kind of all of that initiative, um, and it's not getting a whole lot, and there's a lot of reasons why, and I don't know if we could possibly have her come, because it sounds like the council's really interested in that, and I think it would be very informative for us to do that.
Yvonne, I just want to clarify too, what you're talking about here is future discussions, not necessarily today.
No, no, these are just things I want highlighted in the strategic plan. What I do want someone to comment on today quickly would be the transportation master plan, where are we, what's happening with that, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and then the, the business.
Okay, so DEI, so you heard in Edith's accomplishments, a mention of DEI and the work that we did on the survey. So the plan is to come back on March third for our second day of our goal-setting, and so we're gonna give council an update, and there might be a training component there as well.
Awesome, thank you.
And then the other item, um, you were asking about our procurement policy?
Yes.
And so I will reshare the, the memo that we've provided in the past regarding policies and what is allowable and what's not allowable.
Okay, and I'm specifically, having read that and going, I'd be interested to look at those professional services and see if we can look at, at doing something with that.
Yvonne, you, I think you asked too, where are we at with the transportation master plan, which?
That's the final one, yes.
Yeah, and I think it is that, it has now gone out, the RFP has now gone out.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, and you'll see in the follow-up listing that there's a few that say Gionni Master Plan, Spring twenty-twenty-three, because all those items are gonna be addressed through the master plan process.
Okay, do we have any kind of a timeline?
Sure.
Overarching timeline on that and what we can expect, when we'll see that RFP back, when we look to make the decision, all of that.
In fact, real quickly, though, can we, can we move that discussion to after the ethics training? Would you mind? Because those, all of that information is actually in the RFP. The RFP is available online, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And so that.
That is.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, we don't even know that, can we just get, what are the, maybe, next two dates?
Sure, 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 yeah.
So the RFP responses are due, um, February twenty-fourth, and then we would expect to come to council within a month or two following that with the, to.
Thank you.
Before the plan.
Cool, thanks.
So I, I have one more topic, if I may.
Sure, sure.
I'm not quite sure where, where and how it falls into, I briefly talked about that the other night in council meeting, the, given that, because of what we just discussed, all those state laws and having removed our RDCS control, the, uh, we're, we're really not aligned with what we had planned as part of the channel plan anymore in many areas, or, or we're reaching certain targets a lot earlier than anticipated, and, but we need, haven't really had a discussion yet, what, other than transportation, uh, what, what areas are impacted now, what do we need to tweak and, and work through? Well, prior to the next channel plan overhaul, and the initial always is, right, one of the findings we always have to make, we're aligned with the channel plan, but that, that finding gets harder and harder to be made, uh, the more we're out of sync with what we have planned. I, I don't, I'm sure you guys have discussed that, but I'm not quite. I'm sure you guys have discussed that, but I'm not quite clear where, how we address that and manage it. Also, that I know clearly, you know, is, are we still aligned or not, or where do we have an issue that, that a certain decision cannot be, the finding cannot be made anymore that it's aligned with the channel plan, because we haven't updated that.
So what we might want to do is, on that March 3rd, second day, look at our agenda and maybe plot that in and maybe take something off.
If it makes sense.
Yeah, oh yeah, so we can have a discussion on that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Renee.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Okay, so the next item is the future follow-up and future business items, and so, including the packet, is a list of follow-up items, and some of them are marked as to be determined, because what we want to do today is look at these five and get a thumbs up, thumbs down, to see if we have a majority of the council that wants us to agendize these for possible consideration at an upcoming council meeting. So the first is holding a summit of law enforcement agencies regarding cut-through traffic. Is this something that the council wants to hear about? And if so, you put your thumb up, if not, you put your thumb down. If you have questions on it, then let us know and we'll see if we can answer it.
So we'll walk through each one then and just go for it? These will be the five, again, thumbs up if you want it to go forward, thumbs down if we want it, we're not interested, right? Majority wins, and then, from there, let's say we do the first one, three say yes, two say no. What happens next? Does that come back in the future?
Yes, so it'll be agendized, and so we'll give you more information about it, and then kind of go from there.
Okay, so number one, holding a summit for law enforcement agencies regarding cut-through traffic, thumbs up if you want it, thumbs down if you're.
Can you take notes on this?
That's a four to one.
Okay, so that. So, excuse me, so where are you in the, are you going by?
Number, I'm on that list right there, future items for consideration, there's five.
Oh, okay, okay, so you're not following the, you're not following that?
Agenda, in there, no.
No, I'm sorry.
Going with what's on the screen there. Those are the five you had mentioned.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so these are marked as TBD on the future follow-up and business items.
Okay, so that passed four to one.
Okay.
All right.
The next is exploring if unclaimed funds can go into a community fund rather than the city's funds. So this is when we have, you know, say, small amounts of money, say $10, $15, where we have money held on behalf of others, and we've tried our best to reach out to them, and after all, efforts have been exhausted, they come back to the city's funds, and so the request was, hey, rather than going into the city's funds, should we look to put that into a community fund? Is that something that's of interest that staff would follow up on and come up with a recommendation on what that policy would look like?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Christina, refresh my memory, but I recall it has been a fairly small number.
Yes.
Like 1,600 or so?
Uh, yeah, well, 1,600?
Annually, about.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, otherwise I wouldn't disagree, but this is such a small number that I don't think it's even worth the effort.
Okay, so thumbs down if you're opposed, so thumbs up if you want to pursue that, see it. I've got three, it's a three to two. We are not going to pursue that.
Okay, discussion regarding recruitment of board of directors for the city's partner community group, so a little bit more context on this one, so this is partner groups, partners that we, Yvonne, this one was yours, so basically, if the city partners with a group, should the city have some sort of say in how the board of directors recruit, are recruited?
Yes, so organizations that are getting city funds, if we should have some say in how they were doing, how they are recruiting their board of directors, right?
Looking for more diversity, I think is.
So like Visit Morgan Hill or.
Yeah.
Anything?
She said Visit Morgan Hill, but, yeah, I mean, I think historical, society.
Visit Morgan Hill, Historical Society, all these organizations that are getting city funds.
So, a little more context, we have the community funding, so each year, council goes through and reviews applications and assigns amounts of money to different community groups.
Right.
And then, this would be if council wants a say in their board assignments.
Yeah, I get it, Marilyn?
For clarification, you would like a representative from the city to be in touch with that organization, whatever it might be, to give reports back to the council?
Now, it's not a liaison. If I hear you right, what you're saying is, she would like for the council to say, no, I'm sorry, you can't appoint that person, you need to appoint this person.
Similar to what we do with our commissions, how we have diversity, and we ensure that there's diversity within all of our planning, you know, our planning commission, our Parks and Rec, but we're doing the same with these organizations that are getting city funds, and that we're ensuring that they also have that diverse representation on their boards as well.
Yeah, good, well, that brings up the point, when we were going through committee assignments, there was always a council person at the downtown association board meeting, okay, but that's not a committee assignment, that's something totally different, I mean, yeah, that's different.
Again, though, what we're talking about here, though, that is a, that's an assignment to a committee, what this is talking about, what Yvonne's getting at is, that we would intervene in Visit Morgan Hill's ability to recruit board members.
And Visit Morgan Hill's not a good example.
Right, but it's anybody, it's any board member that we get some sort of funding from the city.
Yeah, so Historical Society, we provide funds, and so should the city of council have any sort of influence over their board of directors and that process?
Right, and my response to that, and again, maybe revealing my hand on yes or no, but I think each of these, each of these organizations are designed in a way that they know best what they're looking for. If we were sitting on that board or on that committee, we would have input, but we do, again, we leave it to organizations to do their best to run their organizations as well as they can. We expect that of them, and I think if we start intervening and saying, you need to have this person versus that person, are we then appointing someone based on qualifications or is it for some other reason? And so, if there are no other comments, I would say.
Well, I would say too, that there's a process, right, to that, that there's an established, transparent, and public process as to how they're recruiting their board members and who is being assigned to those board members, because it is funded by the city. So that's, you know, really getting to, rather than just, you appoint whoever, you decide how you do it, you come up with, I mean, if you're getting funded by the city, then I think the city should have some say in how that, what that process is and how we go about achieving those diverse goals. We've got where we have them write statements, but, you know, taking that further in lieu of, you know, under the auspices of our DEI efforts, that we're actually ensuring that that happens where our dollars are being spent of all the taxpayers.
Understood.
So, so you want the city to intervene in a private organization's decision-making process about their board of directors?
She's talking about an organization that's receiving funding from the city.
Correct, to have a process.
A private organization, still.
Instead of a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and it, what I'm trying to wrap my hands around here is, you know, we're going to, how, what are we going to tell? I mean, are we going to direct and actually direct and tell that organization who to bring on as a board member?
Yeah, again, I think that's, to some degree, that's where Yvonne's going with that, am I right?
Right, that we bring it back to have this discussion. I mean, this is really.
Actually, I want to vote now, yes or no. Do we want to pursue this, or don't we?
Yeah, so should the discussion continue?
This is.
Not right now, but at another point in time, do you want to talk about this issue in the future?
No, I want to vote on it now.
Yeah.
And so this will decide yes or no. I'm a thumbs down, so it's three to two.
Well, this, this is, I'm confused. I thought we were voting on.
Should this item come back to council for future council considerations? Should we put these items on a future agenda?
Okay.
We just voted no.
Yes.
Three to two.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Okay, number four, review of landscaping requirements on developments along the freeways and major arteries to include more trees. Is that something the council wants us to bring back?
Is that?
Was this requested?
Yes.
And is that within our purview, along the highways?
Yeah.
Can we plant trees as a city along?
Senator. This is about on the private development side, so we can't ask Caltrans to plant more trees, but on the development side.
Developments, I'm sorry, developments along the freeway, I see. Is that not already in landscape criteria?
We have, yeah, we do have existing requirements, so I think there was a question from one of the council members about reviewing what those requirements are and seeing if there's a change.
Oh, okay, so review those, okay. Any comments on that?
I think would be good to know, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So what was that? He said it would be good to know.
If there's requirements?
No, to review the, to review the landscaping, to review the requirements.
Okay. So that would just be a staff report?
Yes.
All in favor? Thumbs up, if not, thumbs down? How many do we have? I didn't see the thumbs here, so I've got one, two, three in favor, and if you're thumbs down, okay, you're in the, okay, so it passes anyway.
All right, the last one, do we want to have a discussion on local workforce project labor agreements?
Could you explain that?
Our city attorney wants to explain it.
So, the project labor agreements are agreements for developments, usually public works contract, public works contracts, and usually large public works contracts to, that require the contractor to have a labor peace agreement, essentially an agreement with their employees, that there aren't going to be any work stoppages, or, or things like that. And there's, we've had a request from the, one of the trade unions to adopt a policy on project labor agreements. Right now, we do those on a case-by-case basis, depending on the size of the project and the importance of the project.
So what this is asking is, we would have that discussion to do it across the board versus the case-by-case?
Correct.
Got it.
Is council interested in hearing that and having that discussion in the future?
Okay, three thumbs down, two up, that, we will not bring that back for discussion then.
Okay, moving on, okay, so before we get there, I just want to bring.
Christina, real quick though.
Yes.
Is there a, you know, these, these items get brought up at the end of every council meeting, we ask, is there any future agenda items that people like to talk about? We have a whole list.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if council would be open to doing the similar sort of a thing, when we do, when a council member brings up, hey, I'd like to talk about this, can we do a thumbs up, thumbs down on that, so that we decide then and there, as opposed to coming through a list of, you know, 15 items somewhere down the line?
Yeah, and as a matter of fact, I think City of Gilroy does that, so you write then and there, you would do the thumbs up, thumbs down, so that it doesn't get on a list, and then at some point later, you'd come back, or, you know, we ask you to, if you do want to have it considered.
Right.
So, if that's the will of the council, we can put that in place.
Is the council interested, yes, please.
Mayor, I'm not interested in doing that, I think, I actually think that this should not be something that we're talking about, if we don't have Zoom open for the public to be commenting on, and I think there would be a lot of people that have comments on a lot of these topics that we're just, you know, voting down. I mean, I think I voted up on all of them, whether or not I agreed with them, to give the opportunity for them to be heard, and I do wish that, you know, Dawn would have been here, I feel like we were doing some discussion here of agenda items. So I am not in favor of us just kind of running through and thumbs down, especially here where we don't have the public input.
No, but what I'm talking about is at a council meeting, let's say at a council meeting, I, at the end of, and I say, are there any future agenda items? Gino says, yeah, I want to learn about trees along the freeway. We would then there and say, does everybody want, want to bring that forward? We'd do a thumbs up, thumbs down vote right there. As opposed to getting in a situation like this, now we're looking through five or 10 of these, we could decide at the council meeting, do we want to bring it back for discussion?
What I'll say to that is often, this is the very last item on our agenda, and we usually do not have anybody with us at that point.
Got it. Well, then, how does this, how has this been handled in the past? I mean, you've got a list of however many items here, when does that get decided?
Yeah, so, the next item is, it's on page 52 of the packet, is the full list, so it's about two and a half pages.
Right.
And so basically, what we try to do is weave these and integrate them into our current work plan. So things, I mentioned the transportation master plan, so there's four or five items that will be considered and discussed as part of the transportation master plan. There are some, like we brought today, but we're not planning to bring these forward as part of another item, so we want to bring them to your attention to see if you're interested in having that discussion. And then other items, unfortunately, are on that list longer, time permitting, because we do have, as you saw, a pretty exhaustive work plan, and so adding some of them, it just takes a while to get to them.
But if a council member says, I'd like to have an item on, considered for future agenda, when does that get considered?
It, so it depends, you know, so on this chart, on page 52, we have dates on here, and so when we have our goal settings, we bring them forward to you to look at and to see the timelines that we have in place.
But that's every six months.
Right, yeah, and it is, and the clerk's office has a drop box, and so the council can see them, and we'll resend that out, because I know you two don't have it, but you can see where we have those slated.
So, so I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but he does have a real good point, and I actually brought this up at one time, is when a council member requests an item on a future agenda item, in many cases that I've seen over the last couple of years, it's months and months before it hits us. And I think, in a reasonable timeframe, for an example, if a council member puts something in at the beginning of the month, you know, within 60 days, some action should be taken on it to put it on an agenda within 90 days. You know, we have things on here for, you know, four, five, six months, and I don't think that's really being considerate of the council.
Well, okay, so a few things, so one that you specifically asked about was the legislative roundtable, and so Edith kind of explained why that, you asked for that in November, and these have slated on here in spring, and there's a reason for it, we have new electives here, we have new elected in Sacramento, so it didn't make sense to start those conversations with electives that were on their way out in Sacramento, you know, and so that's why that is slated for the spring. There's other items that are very time-intensive, and we're just trying to fit them in as best as we can with our given work plan. And to add to that, COVID really created a whole new work plan for all of us, and so there's items on there, like Renee, a long time ago, asked about what a smart city looks like, and so every six months, he sees that, we're not going to be talking about that until this year, because now we're able to say, okay, we have some time now to reflect upon what a smart city might look like. And so, last year, Renee could have said, this is, you know, I'd like to see this sooner, but he didn't, because he knows that, you know, we have an extensive work plan and there's only so much we can do. Or the council could decide to say, let's look at the work plan, and maybe there's items on there that we're just going to take off, so that we can hear the item that's very significant to you. I'm going to look to Chris and Edith right now, would you add anything else to timelines?
Very quick. Just a reminder, it's 2:55, we're going to want public comment, and the training will be two hours.
Yeah, I do, I think this is important, though, and one of the things that, Yvonne, if you'll let me, I have you here, we just voted on five items.
Yeah.
That I'm, if I'm not mistaken, at somewhere along the line over the last year, a council member said they wanted to see this for a future agenda item.
Yeah.
We just voted as a council whether to bring it forward or not. Now, there's other items here, how does this normally get handled? Is this, does the council normally vote on whether or not these come forward? So what I'm saying is, are we going to do that every six months?
Bring a staff report?
No, 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 so many of these items get taken care of. So this list was probably, if we didn't take anything off, was five pages, and so many items have been brought to council through regular staff.
Got it, okay.
Reports.
Yep.
And also through, some of them were taken care of through memos or other things. So this is just a subset of what's been asked of us. But also recognizing time is of the essence. Part of the procedure as well is, Gino asks for an item to come back. Staff does a very brief staff report to the rest of the council to say, hey, Gino asked that we look at trees on the side of the freeway. Council, is that the wish? Do you want staff to spend time looking at this? And then council votes at a later meeting.
Got it.
What you're suggesting is that you would vote right then when that suggestion is made, rather than staff spending time to draft a report and bring it back later.
That's my concern too.
And if I couldn't, one alternative action, you're saying you don't want to do it that night, because everybody's potentially laid hired and you don't have the community here, maybe at the next meeting, we revisit those items and don't have a full discussion, but do the quick discussion of yes or no.
See, that's not.
And that's what I was going to suggest, that perhaps this could be something that we put on the agenda every other month, or something where we have a few items like this, where we can go through in a public setting, where we have Zoom, we have the community, they can make public comment, and this way it's very transparent. But I'm very uncomfortable with us doing this with no Zoom, and, you know, it just feels very backdoor.
So I like the, I like the idea of doing this as we go forward with, if a, something's, at least at some point in one of the two monthly meetings, one of the two meetings we have that month, that we're talking about the most recent suggestion for a, for an item. And by that, again, thumbs up, do we want to bring it forward or not? Then we do know, by the time we, you know, the next month they come, we're done with that. It's off or we're moving forward with it.
Yeah, and we just, we, if there's going to be discussion to include public comment, it has to be agendized that way. So if you look at the face of the agenda for this meeting, it has all five of those things.
Do we typically have public comment on an item that a, that a council member suggests?
Not that I can recall, but.
Okay, so I'm not uncomfortable with that. I don't think anyone, you're mentioning it, you are uncomfortable with it.
No, having, no, I would much rather prefer the community see this. I mean, you know, rather than them saying, oh, why did you, you just voted? And nobody cared, nobody.
But the community has seen this. Again, this is a public meeting. And so they were welcome to be here. We would do this on a council meeting. Maybe there's different folks who would be in attendance. But I think we move forward with this and we go with what we said as far as each month, we're going to look at whatever it was that was presented the last month for consideration. We okay with that?
Yes, I, I think we need to clarify the process of this.
Doing half and half.
This is one of the very few times where we had a thumbs up. But some miraculously, some items make it into the work plan and others not. And there seems to be, I don't know, based upon what criteria, not based upon votes.
Right. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
And that leads to the frustration then, right? When you'd like, when you have an item or, I remember another one that I brought up was that I just wanted to have a discussion about term limits, right? That got shut down right there. We can't even talk about it.
Right.
And that is so wrong. And that's what.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Asking for, let's talk about it. But you already shut it down before you even had the discussion.
How did it get shut down?
With thumbs down.
Because we're not, these, that we.
We're not willing to have the conversation.
Not even willing to talk about items that are important to someone.
You asked for a, you know, to be agendized, did it for?
Ah, that's.
It was agendized at the last goal setting. And the council decided to not have a discussion.
Ah, okay, okay.
I got it.
So you see where the frustration sometimes comes from?
Yeah, yeah.
Where for some, where a majority, three, can say, well, let's discuss it.
Right.
And then if it's a topic that you're not quite as keen about, oh, no, we don't want to talk about it.
Got it, got it.
I'm going to go back to.
Five of us.
Oh, that makes sense. I get what you're saying.
You know, that we're going to try and open, we're going to try and listen. There are things that I'm not really particularly, quite frankly, interested in spending my time on. But sure, I'm willing to hear it. It's obviously important to somebody here.
Okay, that makes sense to me. I get it, I get it. With that, I mean, how do we want to go forward with these five items? Again, I'm comfortable leaving them as are, as they are. But if the resident council says, no, just bring them back and have a conversation, we can address this later, being open to the idea of doing that.
I think the last one for me is an important one to talk about, right? That impacts our local workforce.
Right, right.
And just saying, we don't even want to talk about it. I'm sorry, it just doesn't come across well with me. That there's community funds, it's not worth doing it for $1,600 per year. That's, there's not much to discuss other than that.
I'm fine, but number three, I absolutely do think, I mean, how are we saying that we're doing DEI, but then we have no process for organizations that are befunded with city funds?
Yeah, I agree with you in that way. It's a tricky one because, you know, every organization has to buy laws. So you would, that's not an easy one.
Mission is getting.
Yes, right here is the, this is it right here. This is the frustration you're talking about. You two are the ones now disagreeing on which ones we should be talking about. And so.
We can't even discuss it because you shut it down.
No, no, and this is the discussion, but you can see that.
Oh, we can't discuss it, mayor, here.
No, no, I get that. What I'm getting to is, you're saying number three is important to you. You're saying, eh, not so much. You're saying number five is important. Gina might, eh, not, I'm just saying, just using that for an examples now. But you two have just kind of really demonstrated to some degree what you're describing. You're not so much in favor of number three, you are.
What I'm saying is, I gave a yes to these, some of which are not, quite frankly, on my radar. But I understand that they are for others. And so that was why.
Right.
I was willing to do that.
So I, you know, I think we had a discussion. We did a straw vote. And I think we should move, you know, move on.
Right.
We're coming back and rehashing what we just did. It's just not productive. The other alternative is, you know, to scrap our straw vote and bring this back. I don't think we should do that. But I mean, I'm open to doing that. I just, just because I didn't agree with one of them, that doesn't mean the person who wanted it is right. And it doesn't mean I'm right. This is the way the council feels. So my suggestion is either we move on or we bring this, we table this for another meeting. Because it's just not productive right now.
No, I understand that. But my point being that they're both making comments that are resonating with me. And I'm open to the idea of, okay, that is something I didn't think of. And so it's perspective now that I'm willing to change my mind on. And so that's where I think we need to be open. We talked about being open minded and listening. You've made some good points. So that's all, that's all I'm getting at. I don't think necessarily my mind might change on those in the future, but is it worth having the discussion? And so maybe what we need to get to, and I'm willing to table this to bring it back for another time to discuss this, even with scrapping the straw vote and trying again, once we determine, how are we going to, how are we going to decide what comes back on an agenda and what doesn't? So are you guys all, would you be okay with that?
Yes, my add-on is there are a whole bunch of other items, including some I had asked for where we never voted on.
Right.
And they made it somehow on the list.
Right.
So all the other ones should be listed on the attachment, starting on page 52?
Criteria, how they made on the list is unclear, undefined.
The what is?
The criteria.
Why was those chosen? It's not, why wasn't his on the list?
Because some things were going to come back to you, even whether you asked for them or not.
Got it.
Oh, you mean how are these five chosen?
No, the ones that are on the list.
The whole bunch of items, including some I asked for, that we never had this thumbs up or down vote. But somehow they made it on the list.
Somehow they made it on an agenda, is what he's saying. Somehow they made it on an agenda.
Well, they made it on the agenda because it was requested.
We would bring them up anyway, or they went with another agenda item.
And these were requested too, and have never made it to an agenda.
These are on the list, right?
Yeah.
We bring back the ones that aren't. So, for example, we were going to do the transportation master plan, whether you asked for it or not. And some of the things council members asked for were going to be part of that transportation master plan. So they stay on the list because council members asked for them, but they're going to be addressed through that other mechanism. These five are things that were not going to come back to you unless the council, unless there was a majority of the council that said, we want these things to come back. They're not part of our work plan.
Okay, so I want to clarify. Typically, when a council member suggests an item to be brought back on a future agenda, there isn't typically a vote by other council members to make it happen, nor do we listen to public comments about it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Until it fits agenda.
What's going to help is Michelle pulling up this list. So this is on page 52 of your packet. This is the list that council sees every six months of the goal setting, and it's available in between. And so this list is where we're at now with all of the open follow-up and future business items. Okay? We always come to this meeting, we say, council, is this list complete? Have you asked for something as a follow-up item? And it's not reflected here. And so that's your time to say, I asked for XYZ, you know, why isn't on there? And then we're able to address that. This list, if we, we have a completed list. And so if I add this with a completed list, it's a lot longer. Because we've already addressed many items that council's brought forward. We've checked the box. We brought it to council as part of another item. We coupled it. Or it just came to council as an item because we were in a, or a memo. We were going to do it anyway.
Does that council member know then that that was an item suggested by them when it is brought forward?
No, we haven't, we haven't said council member, you know, spring requested this and here it is. We just bring it forward.
Well, he never really knows.
Well, he knows. He knows what he's asked for. I mean, you know, he knows what he's asked for.
Okay, well, you were saying, yeah, here magically appeared, is what you said, yeah.
Mentioned staff report.
Yeah, and that just hasn't been a process to put it in the staff report, right?
Okay, okay.
And so the five, and this was, this is at the top of it, TBD. City council to determine at goal setting a future agenda item. So there's TBD just on a few here. And council took a straw, straw vote today. So for instance, council member Martinez Beltran on November 16th requested a discussion on local workforce project labor agreements. It says TBD, so that was on your list today to do that.
And that's on of those five.
Got it, okay, so that's what I got there, got it.
Yeah, and then going on carpenters union, that's the same as the project labor group and so forth. So that's with the TBD. Otherwise, there's a date there when it's coming back. So you can expect on March 3rd, we're going to talk about donation and gift policies. You can expect Edith is going to do a SB 330 committee and collaborate with other cities. Something's going to come back. You're going to get a memo on e-bikes, which actually went out this morning, and so forth.
Okay, and I, I would suggest at this point then, because I still got more questions and we're going to go on all night. We bring this back for a discussion some other time, someplace else within the next 60 days. Can we do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then at that, it'll probably be a council meeting. And at that council meeting, we'll settle this once and for all.
Okay. I do want to ask one question. Actually, I have an agenda item that I want to bring forward. I was going to bring it forward at the next meeting. It will now go onto that list. And you will prioritize when I will get that staff report.
Mm-hmm.
So my colleagues, they don't get thumbs up, thumbs down.
It depends where it is, right? So if it's something to do with the transportation, I'm not going to do a separate item. It's going to be part of Chris's transportation master plan. Chris?
I was going to say, most of the things that come back are in a staff work plan. Like you'll see something on there for special events. We have a staff person working on special events. Some of these items don't have any, there's no work plan for them. So it, Christina has to either tell someone this is added to your work plan or figure out how it goes. So typically, if it's on someone's work plan, we're going to bring it back and tell you when we can bring it back because we're already, because we're working on it. But if it's something completely new, that's when it usually would go to the council to give you the thumbs up or thumbs down because it's going to cause, cause us a lot of extra work and likely could impact, say, if I take on something else, I'm not going to be able to do something I'm working on.
And we want to make sure a majority wants that item back.
Well, that's what I think we need to get into here is because this priority list that you guys have is unbelievable. 53 items? How is that even possible to keep track and then keep adding? If we added all five of those. So we either need to come up with, hey, if we put five on, we're taking five off. This is, it's just not reasonable to try to keep growing that list.
I would, I would tell you, when I worked for the city of Palo Alto, if a council member wanted a future agenda item, they had to tell us what to take off. So it was both, we want you to, we want you to come back with this. And then the council would have to vote on what we're not going to do in order to do what the council was requesting.
Well, I think a couple of important items. One, many of these items do come as a result of our meetings. So usually they're at the end of the meeting. There's been comments that have happened, public comments. There's issues that come up. And that's a lot of the time where many of these agenda items will come to the top. Two, I think it's, you know, when we've got a list of this magnitude, looking at it every six months, and I think this has been pretty much all council members, I think we can agree that six months has been a long time to hear a council member who's been elected by the city to bring forward issues like, you know, Marilyn saying, and to not hear anything for six months. I know Gina, you have said that before. You know, that I've asked for this and I've asked for this and it hasn't come back. So I think that's also something that's important. And if I could just pause you for a second. If there's something like that, then let me know. And just say, hey, I asked for this item. You know, and then I can give you insight into what we're thinking. Okay, but it would be great if there was some process because three, we've got, you know, there are things on here from 2019. And I mentioned that, that's the smart city. Right. So I'm just saying, you know, maybe at a council member, every, a council meeting, every other meeting, we address, you know, going back to the latest date. And we address those five. I mean, I think there's, there's even probably a few that are brought up by colleagues who aren't here anymore, so.
Okay, so we're going to, in the next 60 days, we're going to see this on a, on an agenda. And we're going to talk about figuring out some way of going forward with these or letting them go. You guys good?
I think, I think we should clarify the process and how to handle it before.
That'll be a part of the agenda item.
Yeah, that, yeah, that'll then be part of that discussion.
Otherwise, we'll end up with the same discussion.
Yeah, you're right, exactly. Right, right, that makes sense. Okay, so we'll, and we'll work through that. And everybody hasn't been understanding what that discussion's going to look like. Okay, you guys good? All right. Okay, thank you. Next.
Sustainable Water Hill. So Dawn, it's 3:12, but just a couple of minutes here. And then council could decide whether to have this conversation today. So this is Sustainable Water Hill that was adopted in January of '22. And this was intended to be a two-year document, listing the vision, the ongoing priorities and the strategic priorities. And so what we need to know is, does this continue to represent what council believes as its ongoing priorities and strategic priorities? Should we continue listing these in 2023?
I would like to add under the city council, ongoing priorities, some statement, you could figure it out much better than, than myself,[1468.92] you could figure it out much better than, than myself, is to focus on a sustainable quality of life. So something wordly like that in, in that section.
Anything else from the council?
I, I mean, to me, that's kind of the overarching of the whole thing, right, that we've defined here. You know, those are long-term goals, and I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, for me, that's covered. Those are long-term goals, and I just, I read it again, I, I think they're still valid. As, as, they're very open, right? You can read a lot into it, but they're still important.
Yep.
We just need to adjust the, the year, obviously, for the strategic priorities, but I wouldn't even change those. The only thing where I mentioned earlier, that whole general plan misalignment discussion, I think that somehow needs to, to be worded in. I don't know, up here or somewhere, but, but at some point, this is becoming an issue. I'm not quite sure how to figure that one out, but it probably should be a strategic priority for next year, too.
Mark?
Yes?
Mayor. I wonder if in our, the last bullet point, in light of recent events, we recognize that all these goals and priorities will be viewed through the lens of the global pandemic, and perhaps we should update that to.
What page was that? I'm sorry.
That's page 55.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at.
Very last statement, and it's really just nodding to the fact that this was all taken in consideration during COVID-19, but I would say maybe we could look at, we recognize that all of these goals and priorities will be viewed through the lens of the global pandemic. Maybe it should be recovery from the global pandemic. We have kind of changed where we are versus when we set this up, and so that we can be thinking fiscally and thinking more towards recovery.
In other words, just rewrite that sentence.
Yeah, or just.
I agree.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back with suggestive language.
If you also can come back with a suggestion on how to incorporate what we discussed earlier, you know, those whole lobbying efforts on state level.
Oh, is it a city priority?
Yeah, and we're working on the.
Strategic.
We're working on the definitions.
I think it should show up here, so that, that we know it's important to us and the public knows.
I agree.
That's a good point, yeah.
I agree.
Can I just add an object, please?
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right, Mr. Risk Manager. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just have a question for Don. Are we going to need our iPads for this training?
No.
Oh, okay, cool.
That is it, unless you're not paying attention to them, and you just flip it.
Either for the quiz at the end.
Oh, you do need it.
No, just kidding.
Well, then I'm closing it.
Christina, are we, where are we at? Now is it, we have public comment?
Yeah, public comment, and then determination if we'll take a break or not.
We're going to take just a quick, five-minute break.
After public comment.
Yep, before public comment.
Before public comment.
Yep, yep.
Don't go anywhere, public.
Five minutes, we're going to be brief. We are going to get started now, get restarted, I should say, and we're going to, we're going to now open this up to public comment, and then we'll move on to our ethics training. So I'm going to give the microphone back to Michelle, she'll manage the public comment.
And, and just so you guys know, you're welcome to safety ethics training, but that part's not live streamed and recorded.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you again for the time to speak. Just as an observation, I, I would think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the last conversation that we just had was absolutely just, it was, it may be dizzy, but what it did surface is I would recommend, and I do think Councilwoman Renee Spring had a good suggestion, we do need to put some clarity to items that are going to be on the future council meetings. If you look at that list of 53 items, and the timing and the sequencing, as well as the bandwidth and the capacity of the staff, as well as the energy for the community, understand that I would, and just based on the conversation we just heard, you truly need to absolutely, you set some clarity to that, some standards, some criteria, some eligibility, on really what should get brought to the council. Being, you know, a comment that comes from a, a citizen, or be it an individual opportunity that one of the council individuals would like to bring to the surface, there has to be some level of, of weight to that before it reaches a level where time and energy and dollars are spent on council meetings. So I really think Councilwoman Spring's suggestion is the right suggestion. You should really pull that together before it comes to the council meeting. If not, I would be concerned that you're going to have a similar conversation, and it actually, I, I don't think it would perform well as far as me having that received from the community. So that's just a suggestion, but that conversation just seemed to stumble a little bit, so I'm just being honest and transparent as I can. I do want to go back to a couple of initial slides. As far as the deadline for submission of supplements, I absolutely loved your suggestion as far as the language, just to give the council some insight for the community, as well as some of the partnerships, say, it'd be the Chamber of Commerce or the Downtown Association. We also, we see those packets, usually on a later Friday afternoon. I do my best, in this case, to try to review that packet no later than Monday, but in some cases where, say, the Chamber of Commerce wants to memorialize a statement, I have a board that I have to wrestle with as well, as far as making sure there's communication and dissemination of that information. It's a process for me as well, right? So if I see an agenda item that I really do want to make a formal statement, first I get my executive committee together, I get my committee chairs together, we have a recommendation, we'll go to the full board. That could take me a day and a half to get together. So some of our submissions are late, as far as in the packet, it may come on Wednesday. Now, we do, I think to your point, Councilwoman Beltran, we do ensure that if we're doing something like that, where the submission is late, that one of us from the executive committee will also be here in real time to be able to speak to that, but I do think that's the right recommendation to go for. And then maybe a clarification, I may look for Don. On the state agencies and the assignments, I have to take my glasses off so I can actually see you guys, I'm so sorry, as relates to the delegates, these are all important agencies that you have responsibilities for to sit on as a delegate for our community. Can I assume that, say, for the Chamber of Commerce, or for the Downtown Association, or for the Coanders or the Rotary, those liaison, those individuals that are delegated, say, to Cal Fire or Valley Water, can we have a direct relationship with them as a liaison to bring our team up to speed with the direction that they are going? Is that an opportunity for us to be able to connect with? Because there's a list of wonderful individuals and wonderful organizations, those agencies, that we can see, actually now, that we can help leverage for information, be it our Economic Development Committee, or Education Committee, or other programs that we're bringing up. But I'd like to be able to have a direct relationship, say, with one of my committee chairs, with the designee, say, for Valley Water, to make sure that we're understanding the direction of where Valley Water is going. I just wanted a clarification on that. All right, thank you, and thank you for your time today.
Anyone else? Hi, Don, how are you?
Hi. Three things, quick.